December 1st, regular city council meeting. May we start off with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Penrose. Oh, you muted yourself, Deborah, but I saw you. Councilmember Reddick.
Here.
Councilmember Roberta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
Mayor Eisen.
Here.
You have a quorum?
All right, excellent, thank you. And I just want to welcome a bunch of people from the county tonight. We're honored to have you here with us and appreciate your presence. And thank you for all you do. May we start off with right into public forum? And I just want to be very clear. These are for items that are not on the agenda. So if you do want to talk to an item that is on the agenda already, please wait until that item comes up on the agenda. So if people have anything they would like to discuss that is not on the agenda, feel free to raise your hand now. Jessica will call on you and you'll have three minutes to discuss anything again that is not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We will start with Marcia Moriarty. Marcia, you have three minutes.
Sorry, I already, I put that in before you said about the agenda. I'm speaking about the hotels.
No worries, no worries. I assume some of that will happen. And that's why I was trying to clarify. No, no problem. Please stay on because we do want to hear what you have to say.
I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcia. Next, we have Kristalyn from the Chamber of Farmers. Kristalyn, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to put a huge shout out out there for Nights of Lights. So this Friday at about six o'clock, we will do our annual tree lighting. We've changed Nights of Lights so that it's spread out over many Fridays to help comply with all of the health orders and not promote gatherings. So please don't rush to MacDutra. But we do want everybody to come by downtown at their leisure and check out the beautiful lights. Next Friday, we will have a menorah lighting from Coastside Jewish Community. And then on December 18th, we will have the nativity scene put together by Alas. And then a visit from Santa from the North Pole. And he will be receiving people's holiday gift lists that they could put in his mailbox for him to pick up when it's safe. But he will be there to ho, ho, ho them along. So please come and join us. And thank you to the city for doing a beautiful job lighting downtown. And it's been a real treat to watch that come together. And to all of our other sponsors, thank you, support and shout out.
Thanks, thanks, Kristalyn. Thanks for being supportive of Half Moon Bay. Appreciate the comments.
And next we have Michael Stockner. Michael, you have three minutes.
A little while to unmute. I know you all are very busy, so I'll be very precise and quick. I just wanted to offer an idea to the five council members. Because I think we understand regarding the Sandra Lee Harmon homicide and the Axon log records request. And I just wanted to thank you for responding back to me, Mr. Nesbit, so quickly. And that just makes, it turns out, it makes five of us that have requested the log records from the sheriff. I requested mine directly from the sheriff. And as usual, the sheriff refuses to respond to me. But I have an idea for you because I know David Oblovy has offered to sue the county if he has to. And I actually think you might want to consider suing the county yourself. And here's why. Four days ago, I sent an email to the only community I'm aware of that's running for sheriff in 2022, which is Mr. Mark Melville. And he already ran for sheriff back in 2018. And what I had asked him, I just told him that somebody had asked me to ask you, and I think you have already answered. But this is a little different question. And the question was, when you are elected sheriff of San Mateo County, will you release the Axon log records in the Sandra Harmon homicide right away? And he responded to me that same day. And he said, Michael, I can assure you unequivocally, I will release said records. There is absolutely no reason not to release those records. Transparency. So with that, I would just invite you to maybe have your attorney maybe meet with Mr. Melville, see if he would be willing to make that statement under oath. I'm confident he would. And there's no reason on earth that the sheriff of San Mateo County would not release the Axon log records. So thank you very much for your efforts to get to them. I'm confident we will get to them sooner or later, within two years for sure, at the latest, and hopefully sooner. Thank you so much. Have a great evening, guys.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks for consistently bringing this topic to us. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
And next we have Sean Pyle. Sean, I have to promote you to panelist for you to speak due to the Zoom version that you're using. So please make sure that your camera is turned off. Thanks.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, my, my, my name's Eric Pyle. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. I live south of Cameron's. And I'm, I'm calling in tonight regarding a traffic safety issue regarding the intersection where Main Street meets Highway 1 at the fire station where they're doing all the construction. And they've set up a bunch of barriers which have eliminated any access on the right-hand side of the road as you head north. And it's a real traffic safety issue with, with those barriers as you have a real obstructed view if you're coming out of the fire station heading south. And it really, if you have a low-riding car, the barriers have eliminated your view access to see oncoming traffic coming, and the cars are coming at about 40 to 50 miles an hour. And I know there's already been one accident there. And I know there's definitely going to, going to be more accidents there. And I think that this solution is that the, the traffic barriers that, that they put up, the concrete barriers need to be, they need to be moved back a little bit to allow bicycle access. But mainly, they need to be pushed back about eight to 12 feet so that the people coming out of the fire station, turning left, can see the oncoming traffic and they don't have an obstructed view. You know, if you're an SUV or a pickup, it's no issue. But if you have an older car, it's a lower-riding car, your vision is definitely impacted. So I'm requesting that the council take action there. And either speak to the developer or at least have someone from Caltrans or a traffic safety person come out and take a look at it. I encourage all of you to get in a low-riding car and attempt to make a left-hand turn out of the fire station. You'll see your traffic is definitely obstructed. Your, your, your view is obstructed. So it's a traffic safety issue. And I know they've put up signs there. But we need to have those barriers moved back to allow better access and bed, better vision at that intersection. Otherwise, there are multiple accidents for sure. And that's, that's really my comment. But it's definitely a safety issue. And it's, someone really needs to take another look at it. And that's what I've got.
Sean, thanks for bringing that to our attention. May we have our city manager do a quick response to that one? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Pyle, for bringing this up. I was going to make comments about this during my city manager update, which is a little later on the agenda. But obviously now it's appropriate to make those comments at this moment. So yes, we understand the comments that Mr. Pyle just made. We have been out on site and working with Caltrans. And we're in the process, or we already have proposed a change to Caltrans that they're reviewing. And what is being proposed at this time, at this, at that intersection is actually that we close, close that intersection and that turning movement from Main onto the highway and detour traffic down to Seymour. So that's what's being worked on right now. Initially, this was a consideration when the plant, the construction plan was put together for this construction project. And, and the concern was that the fire district, they do have other right there issues with that detour. But that has been worked out with them. So that's the direction it's heading. And Caltrans needs to approve it and then make that change. And we'll, we'll have more information when that decision's finalized. But in essence, it would close the intersection. We have to have, we have to allow the contractor to the room to do the project. And we would provide a detour for all users down Seymour Street. The other thing that's being worked on, I think the gentleman mentioned it as well, is cyclists. And that also is being looked at to provide an alternative route for cyclists who are traveling north on Highway 1 in that section where it narrows quite a bit because of the guardrails. And so those are the two things that are being worked on with Caltrans. It's their right of way. They have to approve, approve those operations. And that's what's being done right now. So appreciate the comment.
Okay, so Mr. Pyle, you're right on it. So thank you so much for bringing that up. Know that we're, we're working on it.
And next we have Eric Hollister. Eric, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much for your time. Listen, I'll make it quick. The delineated parking pilot program is fantastic. It's working relatively well throughout the neighborhood. However, there are a couple little discrepancies. One being that of the parking spaces that are not delineated, or I should say, the spaces in the bike lane that are not delineated parking spaces do not have red paint. Therefore deputies cannot ticket people there. So I'd like to see, I spoke with some of your wonderful city staff in email. And it seems as though the city council needs to enact or, or give permission or what have you to the deputies able to enforce that and give out tickets. I'd like to see if we can get a little closer to that so that we can, at least citizens and, you know, as a city council, be able to see some results of, of how much we, we would first of all, take in from parking tickets, but also how well it's working. Because at least in our driveway, it's, two days ago, we had to call a deputy because we couldn't get our F-250 into the driveway at an angle like we normally do. We had to come in straight. And even at that point, we had to bring in mirrors. And it was, it was relatively close to our neighbor's fence. So if we could look into that, I know there are a lot of neighbors that, that haven't the ability to speak tonight that would greatly appreciate that. So again, thank you so much for your time and, and I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Bob, can we roll that into, I mean, we have that agenda item coming up at some point.
We do. In a few minutes, Public Works Director Doughty is going to make some comments on that. The short answer is, as your council will remember, it's, it was, it's a pilot project, project. And it may be a very short pilot project because we are putting out a vote to the neighborhood to determine whether we even continue the project. And so if we don't continue the project, then the comments from Mr. Hollister are moot about red curbing. So I'll let Mr. Doughty fill that in in a few minutes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
And next we have John Olin. John, you have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is John Olin. We have Supervisor Horstly here tonight. And appreciate you being here, Mr. Horstly. You know, here for other reasons. But I would like to amplify on Mr. Stockner's concern about the log files. It is really a, a simple thing for the sheriff and the DA to show us those log files. And there is no, there is no issue here as far as tactics or revealing special secrets or special data or protected data. We just want to see for sure that the cam, the video that should exist doesn't exist. And it's a simple thing to prove. Yeah, as you can see, multiple attempts have been made to obtain that information. And no one's really given us any reason why it's not going to be provided other than you don't have to. Which is really a horrible attitude to take in this day when people's trust in government is so strained to begin with. When we're asked to have faith in what our leaders are telling us and to follow the recommendations that they give us. When yet, when simple little item like this, that would, you know, really clean up a big, big question that we all have about how this woman came to be shot in her back, isn't addressed in really a simple way. Instead, your attorneys at this county are doing everything they can to prevent that very small piece of information from coming out. And so I'm asking you, Mr. Horstly, Supervisor Horstly, to do, you know, use your influence. The county, the city has already asked for the state to look into the investigation. And as we know, it's a political question. And any help you can give to resolve that would really be appreciated. Also, I would like to pull item 1E from the consent agenda regarding the contract for technical support. Thank you.
Jessica, you got that?
Yeah, so our practice is to take public comments on consent calendar items during public forum.
Yeah, so do you, so can we do that right now? Or do we have to finish all public forum and then go back to it?
No, we could do that now.
John, are you willing to, to make your comment on 1E right now?
No, that's the way we should do it. I appreciate that. I'll keep that real short. That's an astounding amount of money, $180,000 a year. The way that works out too is you have approximately 40 employees there. I, I believe that you're paying something like $4,000 per year per employee for tech support. I've looked at the contract or at least not the staff report. And you're describing my job. I provide those same kind of services for approximately 50 people here in America. And I support people also over in Europe. Couple times a month, I might get to do something over in India. It's a, I, I support all the servers. I support all the laptops. I do the installations. I do training. I set up Zoom meetings. I set up team viewer meetings. I do all those things. Considerably less than $180,000 per year. And I don't think that you quite understand what it is you're paying for. Or at least it's not made clear in, in the staff report through all the different levels of services that you're paying for. You list off a lot of things that you've been done. But really, none of that is all that big a deal. And I'm not like a super A1, top-of-the-line-trained technician. But the stuff that they're doing for you is mundane. It's everyday kind of work. And $180,000 a year in this day of age, when everybody's taking a hit, I can tell you, they've even got me doing data entry for one of my customers. And we support people and we're giving 30% discounts because of COVID, because there's just a lot less to do. So I'd ask you to consider the looking at that contract a little bit harder. Maybe explain it better to the people who are paying for it as to what we're getting for $180,000 a year. That's, I would love that job. Thank you.
Uh, okay, let's just, I guess, was this, as we're, as, can we, should we continue to talk about that topic? Or should we bring it back as, as a different time? But should we pull it later?
When we get to the consent calendar, if any council members wish to pull it to further discuss, then you would pull it up at that time.
Let's do that. Okay, very good.
Okay. Next, we have Sid Young. Sid, you have three minutes.
Well, I didn't want three minutes. I was just going to say that I, I couldn't really see on my screen any participant. And that's where you usually can unmute yourself and raise your hand. So is this a different format?
It did show that your hand was raised?
Yeah, I did raise my hand to ask this question. There's not going to be, later, when we get to agenda items, there's not going to be a participant box where you can see how many people are here?
No, we don't, we don't have that. I can't tell you, there are 175 attendees right now.
Okay, in that case, since there's 175 and we have all these county people here, maybe you want to take that agenda item first. I'm just saying. But that's just my suggestion. It's up to you guys. Thanks.
Okay. And I don't know if this makes any difference or if you, if, yeah. But we are, our plan is to take that item first. Or that's how the agenda is set up. We have to go through all these other protocols first to get there. But it is the first item of discussion.
And next we have Carol Black. Carol, you have three minutes.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, as you, as you all may recall, I own property in Cypress Cove. I'll be real quick. Those, that description of those Christmas surprises and activities sound lovely. I just hope that, and I assume that appropriate COVID restrictions or protections are in place. The one thing I've observed, and it's not just here, is there's what I would call a little bit of magical thinking at times, I think, outside when people wear masks, but then they think they're six feet away. So they aren't wearing masks. And in downtown, I would imagine that could be a potential challenge. So just, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate the input.
Next, we have Joaquin Jimenez. Joaquin, go ahead.
Good evening. I would like to talk about a pandemic that we have in Half Moon Bay. And we've been having it for a while. And I think we forgot about it. You know, we are worried about COVID right now. But there's another pandemic that we've been fighting for a few years. And this is the opioid use in our community. Right now, we have a lot of young adults, you know, that are becoming addicted to, to these opioids, especially fentanyl. In the last eight months, you know, we had a, I believe it's five deaths, you know, of young adults in, in our community. And we are not addressing that. You know, I, I think we should do something. We should educate our parents. I've done presentations for our farmworker community about the use of the opioids, you know, the, the prescriptions that are given by your, by their doctors. I gave them a list for them to take home and check all the medications. But right now, the, the use of fentanyl that has been mixed with all the, all the drugs, you know, they missed, it's been mixed with crystal meth, with cocaine, with marijuana, you know, with other drugs. And this is, these drugs are in our streets. Or children, you know, or kids, you know, young adults are using them, you know, in their own home. The last kid that passed, 24 years old, I believe he was dropped off at the hospital by a vehicle. And we are not addressing this. A lot of kids are worried. A lot of their friends, you know, they buried, you know, four, four young adults, you know, in the last seven months. And, and the city of Half Moon Bay or the county is not addressing this. And I think we should. I think we should educate our community about the use of the opioids, you know, what's going on, the pandemic that nobody's talking about. We need programs, you know, especially right now that our kids are home, you know, homeschool, you know, they're using the Zoom classes. Let's find a way to educate them, you know, educate our parents. Check the cabinets. And the thing is, you know, the more we ask questions, the more we're finding out hitting everybody's home. And we're not, we're not addressing that. But what can we do to address this pandemic? You know, the opiate, the opioid in our pandemic? How many more young adults have to die before we address this? I'm worried. I am worried. You know, we, we have, you know, Captain Lopez. I mean, he's experienced, the expertise, you know, to educate us. He's done this for, for a long time. So please, you know, let's educate our parents. Let's find more information about what's going on with our young adults. And now finding out that these kids in the elementary level now smoking marijuana. You know, the skateboard park, isn't that even safe anymore? I've had to chase a few kids, you know, from under a tree. I don't know what they were doing, but I told them, hey, you're not safe over here. So please, let's do something about this pandemic. It's killing our community, our young adults. Thank you.
Thanks, Joaquin. Appreciate the concern.
Next, we have Charles Nelson. Charles?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I have two points really quickly. First is another format question. I'm seeing two people identified as Don Horstly. I'm seeing two people identified as Don Horstle on my screen. Does anyone else see that? One, one actually looks like Don Horstle.
Yeah, sometimes people are logged in under his, uh, under his name.
Okay.
For reason. But yeah, Don Horstle is definitely here, and then there's a few other people that might be listed as him.
All right. I, I just wanted to make sure there weren't any imposters in tonight's meeting.
I think, I think all those people, I'm just gonna say, report to him, and maybe, Don, you can quickly.
I just changed the name. That's Chris Hunter, who works for Supervisor Horstle.
Perfect.
Um, the actual topic that I wanted to talk about really quickly is the construction at the intersection by the fire station. I came north today on Highway One and noticed that there is a sign that says, "Right-hand lane closed ahead." Actually, the right-hand lane isn't closed ahead. But if people that don't know that area move over to the left at that point, they have the danger of getting into that protected lane that protects people pulling out to Highway One from Cameron's and turning left, if you can follow me there. So I think that sign that's indicating that the right-hand lane is closed should be turned off. It's, it looks like it's one of the electronic signs. And that was the only comment that I wanted to make.
Very good. And I think, well, yeah, we're addressing those, but very, very good comment. Thank you for your, for your consideration on those.
And next we have Kent Miller. Kent, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, I, I am in complete agreement with, with Joaquin Jimenez on the, um, the opioid crisis. My son came close to dying from opioids. He's thirty years old, and I now, um, um, really am happy that he's been sober for three years. Uh, and, um, you, you guys have no idea, no idea how powerful and how addictive this drug is, and you gotta get your shit together. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Good, good, good feedback. All right. Uh, are there any other people for public comments?
I don't see any other hands raised, Mayor.
Me neither. Okay, very good. Uh, moving on to proclamation, pro- proclamations and presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll introduce our guests from the county tonight. That's a uh, interesting evening with lots of, uh, support from the county, and I think it demonstrates the great working relationship we have with the county and, and all the great work going on on the coast side. Tonight, I'm gonna introduce a couple of members of our health system at San Mateo County. They are here at the request of, uh, some of the council members who wanted to understand more the process for contact tracing related to, uh, individuals that test positive for COVID. And, uh, as you know, we've been working very hard to do lots of testing here on the coast with the support of the county. And I think this is an important piece to understand, so people know what to do and, and how we, it, it's addressed. So I'd like to introduce, uh, Cassius Lockett, who's the Director of Public Health Policy and Planning at the county. And presenting tonight is Carly Bach, and she's the Communicable Disease Program Services Manager. Carly?
So thank you. Um, this is Cassius. Just wanted to thank everybody for having us here this evening, uh, to discuss contact tracing. Um, my role in the county is I'm the Division Director of Public Health Policy and Planning. And, um, I would also like to thank our board of supervisors and county manager, Mike Calagie, for kindly providing, um, our division with the infrastructure necessary to conduct contact tracing work. And, uh, for example, for a county our size, uh, we should have approximately a hundred and fifteen contact tracers. Uh, we have over that amount, um, but we are actively still trying to identify and recruit additional contact tracers as we are experiencing a surge right now at the moment, uh, to cover weekends and holidays. Uh, with that said, um, we're in a surge, and I'm happy, really happy and proud to then Carly Bach, who is the Program Services Manager for Public Health Policy and Planning. And she's over all aspects of contact tracing. And in fact, Carly has been involved in CD control since 2010. And she's had many different roles, many different hats, um, in this organization. Uh, and, and I consider her an expert. She's very passionate and detailed about her work. And, uh, you know, it's just an honor to work with her, um, every single day. And so with that said, Carly, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna try to share my screen. Can you see that okay?
Can.
Okay, great. And can you hear me okay?
Very well.
Great. Well, thank you so much, and I want to say a special thanks to Cassius and all the, the rest of the leadership here in San Mateo County. Because this has been a really huge lift, and the, the support from within the county and from all of our partners outside has been really amazing to experience and see. And so again, I'm Carly. I'm the manager of the Communicable Disease Control Program here in San Mateo County. And I was asked to give a, a brief overview of COVID and that tracing and what that looks like. I wanted to start, um, by saying that contact tracing is not something new. It's something that has been around for many years. It's an intervention, um, that has been used in public health for a very long time. And even before COVID, we use it very regularly for a lot of different diseases that we work with. And we use contact tracing for measles, tuberculosis, salmonella, a lot of different diseases, um, both within our team and in other teams across the county and in other jurisdictions. So it's definitely not something new, um, but it's on a scale that we definitely have not seen before. Um, within our communicable disease control program, we usually deal with more than eighty different diseases that are reportable in, in the state of California. And we have a small team. Usually we're about eight, um, to ten people, depending on what's going on, and if we have some additional staff helping us out. But right now, as I'm sure you've seen this chart before, this is, um, from our, our data dashboard. Uh, the volume quickly expanded beyond what our small team could handle. Um, so we've been very lucky to get, um, you know, the hundred and fifteen contact tracers, um, even more than that from across county departments who have come to help us with these endeavors. We've done a huge amount of training with all of the new staff who have joined us from other programs. Um, and there's also a lot of other county staff helping support other aspects of the COVID response just beyond, beyond contact tracing. So I'm sure you're experiencing this right now, but I think you can probably see on this chart. You know, we saw cases start picking up, um, in March, and we had a, a surge during the summer months in July. And we're in the midst of another big surge right now. Um, these are the numbers actually from, from yesterday, and this chart always legs a few days behind as cases get recorded and added. Um, so actually, as of today, we're over fourteen thousand six hundred cases. I believe we're at fourteen thousand six hundred and fourteen. So this is really, you know, it takes a village to do contact tracing. It's really a lot of work. And, and we're very lucky to have all of, uh, these folks helping us with contact tracing. But before we delve into what exactly contact tracing is, I just wanted to level set with a couple terms that you might hear me mention. Uh, the first term is case. Uh, so if you look at the image, um, on this slide, this is just kind of a, a social network. It's friends and family. And a case might be somebody who's in, in red color, somebody who is actually infected with COVID nineteen. So they got the infection, maybe they're sick, they tested positive. We think they're infectious and they can expose other people. So when someone's infected, we usually place them on isolation, so we ask them to stay home, stay away from other people to help avoid giving the virus to other people. The other term is contact, um, and a contact might be all those other, um, you know, people on the side, the people in blue, green, yellow, orange. Those are the people who are, they're healthy, they're okay. They may have spent some time with the person while they were infectious with the case. Uh, but they're okay, they're not sick right now, but because they were exposed, we think that they might get sick in the next, you know, week or two. Um, and so we need to keep a close eye on them, make sure that they know they were exposed, and what to do, um, to stay away from other people. We place people who are exposed on quarantine so that they're not accidentally exposing somebody else if they were to get sick or develop this infection. So that's really this process. Contact tracing is where we're identifying people who may have been exposed to a communicable disease like COVID nineteen. We're making sure they know about their exposure and that they know what to do to keep themselves healthy and keep the people around them healthy if they were to develop an infection. Really the goal of contact tracing, what we're trying to do here every day is to break these chains of transmission. So if you look at the, the picture on the top, um, so this is kind of assuming, say, one person who's infected with COVID nineteen. They typically might transmit it to two other people. With COVID, the number is probably a little bit lower than that, but for this, if you can see, if you're, each person passes it on to two other people, you can see how quickly that grows and how widely and it can spread through the community. So what we're trying to do is really catch that transmission. So if we can get a hold of that person who has COVID nineteen very quickly, make sure they know to stay home and to isolate, we can hopefully break that chain of transmission. So you can see on the bottom, if they stay home, they know, don't go visit their aunt while they're infectious and transmit to her. We can actually stop that and keep a lot less people, um, from getting sick. So that's really what we're trying to do every day is we're trying to reach people, make sure they know what to do to stop these chains of transmission. So what does this usually look like? Um, there is a whole process in place for COVID nineteen and for, for a lot of other communicable diseases as well. When somebody gets sick with COVID nineteen, they go to the doctor or they go to a testing site and they get tested and find out that they're positive for COVID nineteen. There's actually a, a legal requirement in the state of California for the doctor who diagnoses the person and the laboratory to notify public health of that positive result um, for COVID nineteen and these other eighty diseases that are reportable in California. From there, when we get that information, we have a contact tracer called the person who is sick or who tested positive to interview them, talk to them about their symptoms and what they've been up to, where they've been, who they're worried about, who we may be able to offer some support to. We also talk to them about isolation, what they need to do to stay home, stay away from other people and help interrupt that chain of transmission. And then we also talk to them quite a bit about the people they've been around, what they've been doing, um, to help us identify people or places where we can really intervene, make sure they know what to do to stay home. Once we talk to the patient and go over kind of that basic interm- information and, and do the full interview, then we're calling and reaching out to the other people who may have been exposed to do a confidential notification. So, so one of the important things that we're able to do in public health is be kind of a neutral third party. So we can make sure that people know they were exposed and know what to do to keep them healthy. We can give them this timely information um, that doesn't rely on, you know, one person telling another person that they were exposed, because it can be very uncomfortable in some situations to, um, tell somebody the details of your health information you may, may want not want to. So our contact tracers can do this in a confidential manner where we don't have to identify anything about the person who is sick, but we can still make sure that people who were exposed know that they had any exposure and what to do to keep themselves and other people healthy. So what this looks like on a day-to-day basis, our contact tracers, they're mostly working remotely, but they're spending a lot of time on their phone trying to reach people. So usually we're using information reported to us by the laboratory or the doctor. So it's the information that the person gave when they were getting tested for COVID nineteen to get their results or, or other advice from their doctor. So we're calling, we're sending texts to try to get a hold of people, we're sending emails, we're using whatever contact information we have. Try to get a hold of people. When we're calling or texting, our contact tracers always identify themselves as a contact tracer from San Mateo County Health. Um, and we do ask for some basic information when we get a hold of somebody. So we might ask them for their name, their date of birth, or their address. And this is really important to help make sure that we're talking to the right person. We are dealing with very confidential health information. We wouldn't wanna accidentally talk about somebody's health, uh, their positive result with the wrong person. So that's why it's so important that we ask these questions, and we always make sure that we have reached the right person and are talking to the right person before we discuss anything confidential. We do not ask for social security numbers or financial information. And, um, we have heard about some scams out there trying to take advantage of contact tracing, so we try to be very clear anytime we're reaching out to somebody. You know, the things that we will ask for and why, and the things that we do not ask for. When we're actually talking to the patient or the case, the person who tested positive with COVID nineteen, there's a lot of information we cover. So we are having pretty long conversations with people about their symptoms, where they think they may have been exposed, we're trying to trace back where they could have gotten the virus. We're also providing education about COVID nineteen and talking about steps to protect themselves and help their family members protect themselves. And we're talking about all the things they did while they may have been infectious. So we're looking at the details of their symptoms, really trying to iron out the timeline for when we think they might have been infected. And then kind of going through day by day, figuring out, you know, did you go to work today? What were you doing this day? Trying to help identify different people that they should be concerned about and just help people remember what they were doing. We do try to get the names and phone numbers of people who they're concerned about, who they were supposed to contact. Who we think may have been exposed, so that we can reach out to them separately and do those confidential notifications. We also spend a lot of time explaining isolation and talking about some of the practical ways to appropriately isolate, um, through the end of being infectious period to make sure we're not accidentally exposing more people and and we can avoid additional people getting sick and really break that chain of transmission. And this is where we're also looking for barriers, things that could keep people from being able to isolate effectively. And we might provide some resources and referrals to help support them. So this is where our contact tracers, we're really talking to people about, okay, you need to stay home for the next week, for the next two weeks, depending on the situation. Do you have enough food on hand? Or do you have someone who could drop off groceries on their doorstep? No, you shouldn't answer the door when they come, but have them even outside. You can become a factor if they're gone, so that we're avoiding contact. We're really going through those practical things about how can you realistically stay home and stay away from other people during this isolation period. From there, our contact tracers are reaching out to do the confidential notification to the people who are exposed, who are concerned about, um, who may or may not be sick at this point. So we're reaching out to them in a very similar manner to the cases. We're calling, texting, emailing, sending letters, trying to get a hold of them. Um, but when we reach people, we do not share any details about the case, who it was, who they were around, who was sick. Or other contacts you were reaching out to. We really talk to the person about their specific situation. The person gives us, you know, explicit permission to talk to, you know, their, their household member or something like that. We, we are very careful about the privacy piece and making sure that we're only talking to the person about their own health information. With these exposed individuals, we're also giving them a lot of information about COVID nineteen, the steps to take, to protect themselves and protect the people around them. And then we're talking to them about quarantine. And quarantine, again, it looks a lot like isolation, but we use this different word for context because they're not sick, they're not infectious. Most of the time, if someone is sick, then we're helping connect them to medical care to get tested or evaluated themselves. So we're talking to them about quarantine and staying home and that we think, you know, because they had this significant exposure, that they could get sick, they could become infectious. And this is how we stay home and avoid exposing other people and help us break this chain of transmission. And just like for cases, we're talking to contacts about some of the logistics, you know, do you have a room you can stay in by yourself? Are you sharing a bathroom? Do you have a way to get food? Do you have any prescription medication? Going through some of those logistics just to help people really successfully quarantine or isolate as a situation may be. So this is really our priority. We're really trying to reach cases, reach and help people realistically break this chain of transmission. From there, we also do collect information, you know, we do have some data that we collect and enter into an electronic database. And this helps us not only navigate these individual situations, but helps us track data, produce the dashboards, so we can see what's happening in our community and at the local, state, and national level to really see what's happening, who is being impacted, how can we better respond to this pandemic and control transmission of this disease. And when we get up to the, the larger levels, like the state and national level, a lot of times that information is de-identified. So there's no way to really identify who the specific person was, but it gives us that big population level data to help us know how we're doing overall and help us view our jobs better. Things that I just wanna highlight, um, one of the things we're really excited about is how much support we've gotten to really help people successfully. This can be really difficult. We have a lot of variety within our county, a lot of different situations and different levels of one of the, the big things that we encounter quite a bit when our contact tracers are talking is not having a physical space to isolate or quarantine. Maybe you have, you know, almost like an emotional family all in one home. You have, you know, six people living in one bedroom. There's a lot of variety in our housing situation. So we do have um a limited number of hotel rooms that we've been able to offer individuals who need to isolate or quarantine. We just don't really have any other place to stay and successfully do this. We've also on occasion been able to, you know, someone doesn't have enough food, have a way to get food delivered, there's a family in the area to drop off, we have been able to. Make some arrangements for food and medication delivery. A lot of this is actually coordinated through a community-based organization that we've partnered with. Um, where we do get consent if people are interested and they agree to let us share their information with this nonprofit. Um, we can send their information over and they can help arrange their grocery delivery so that someone, you know, they're going to run out of food three days into their quarantine. But we can get them those groceries to really get through that quarantine period without having to go out. There's also um some assistance this this organization has been able to offer. Like helping people who really get stuck in a hard spot, you know, pay rent, they need to stay home, they're not going to get paid. So we could. On occasion, help people with rent for other bills to just bridge this gap and really make it realistic for somebody to stay home and help protect the people around them. We also have tracers, red letters for the people who stay home from work school or other activities, helping to get a change of course to leave or. Or stay home and have the employer know that, you know, it's not that they're trying to dodge work that we're really, you know, public health is saying this is important and we need to stay home. We also help connect people to a lot of other resources. So this is more where we're pointing them in the right direction and they can reach out if they want more support. For things like eating shelter, signing up for health insurance, you know, concerns about eviction or housing, mental health support. They know this pandemic has been really hard on everyone um and it writes. So we have a lot of other referrals that we can send if people. If they need some additional support for CM, that we can really provide. Well, I'll stop there. Um, but thank you so much. It's really exciting to see so many people interested in what contact tracing is and how it works. Huge endeavor and we're really lucky to have all of this support.
Very good. I think we might have lost you at the last second, but thank you so much for that very fantastic and detailed presentation. Uh, are there any other proclamations and presentations? All right, well, that was an excellent one and very timely indeed. Uh, all right. Uh, I'm going to move on to report out from recent closed session meetings. Uh, I'll look to Catherine for that.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session earlier this evening to discuss um three items. Uh, the items were the annual performance evaluation of uh city manager Bob Nisbet. Um, a second item, conference with labor negotiator, um, to have a conference with the city's designated labor representative. Um, myself, Catherine Engberg, city attorney, uh, to provide instructions regarding negotiations related to Mr. Nisbet. And then finally, um, the council considered a third item, the annual performance evaluation of uh the city attorney, myself. Um, this council took no reportable actions.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that, Catherine. And I'll move on to city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items and we can actually skip both items in the spirit of time. We have a very. Big item, as we know, there are a hundred and eighty people in the audience. And so we we are recommending as staff. Uh, to skip both CM updates uh today if that's okay with council.
Okay.
I do have one agenda management announcement, and that is also in the spirit of time, we're recommending that item three B. Be continued until um January or a date uncertain. That item is a proposal to create an economic recovery task force. Uh, this is something we think is very important. We want to spend some time with council on it. Uh, again, given the. The item on it'll and we, it'd be better that conversation in January. There's no rush on that. Uh, the proposal is to create this task force uh for recovery, having to do with the pandemic. And the idea is that this task force could could be seated a year or two. So plenty of time. And we recommend that that item be continued until January.
Okay. Excellent. All right, then I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. Uh, are there any items anybody would like to pull? Uh, I I've out of a, just out of abundance of curiosity, I'll pull item one E and discuss it real fast, uh, which was the item John Ullman pulled up.
Uh, actually, actually, I I don't want to just treat it lightly and quickly. I'd like to know more about it. So if we pull it, I'd like to just move it to the back of the agenda.
Excellent. Is that, is that doable?
M- Mr. Mayor, happy to trail one E to the, trail it to the end of the agenda tonight.
Beautiful. I think that's a good move.
Give us lots of time to prepare our remarks.
Exactly, plenty of time. Uh, I appreciate that. Uh, well, in that case, then may we entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item one A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item one B, San Mateo County mosquito and vector control district board of trustees appointment. Item one C, approve city's response to the October seven, twenty twenty grand jury report entitled ransomware. It is not enough to think you are protected. Item one D, AB sixteen hundred report on development impact fees for fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty. Item one F, twenty twenty one residential dwelling unit allocation pursuant to Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen dot zero six, measure D. Item one G, first amendment to the Half Moon Bay History Association lease agreement for five oh three Johnston Street. And that's it.
I'll second.
Beautiful. Jessica, will you come lead the round?
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, excellent. Great job, everybody. We got through the consent calendar. Let's move on to the next item with the. Ordinances and public hearings, but I don't believe there are any listed on the on the on our agenda. So I'll move on to resolutions and staff reports. We are going to start off with item three A. Which is the proposed acquisition of the uh. Proposed acquisition of the Coastside Inn by the county of San Mateo for use as an emergency homeless shelter. And just before we start that. I have a few things to discuss real quick. Uh, first of all, as we go through it, if you wouldn't mind right now, if you would like to discuss this item, start raising your hand. I'm going to give a minute for that to go on. We're going to get a real decent count. How many people want to talk to this topic? We're going to go through the whole item, but just to get a sense of how many people are going to want to talk to this topic. So we can make sure that we allocate the time accordingly. And also, uh, I am going to, hold on. I'm going to introduce the topic now. So. I just want to reiterate that this is a recommendation, the recommendation is to receive a report on the county's proposed acquisition. The Coastside Inn located at two thirty Cabrillo Highway South in Half Moon Bay. An emergency shelter for homeless residents on the coast side during the COVID-19 pandemic. The future uses to be determined. I want to say a few things before we get off to the presentation and hear from the county officials who kindly agreed to present and be here tonight. First, I want to say that the overall goal of the acquisition is to alleviate homelessness. This is a statewide priority of our governor as well as our county and here in Half Moon Bay. The council has established affordable housing and combating homelessness as council priorities for several years in a row. This proposal is in line with these priorities. Second, the county is now only focusing on the Coastside Inn. Not the Quality Inn as discussed at the November nineteenth meeting. I'm sure you all read that in the staff report. Third, I want to make it clear that this is a county project. The city is not contributing any funds to the acquisition. Nor does the city have any local approval authority. The state law that applies to the county's acquisition provides. Removes the city's permitting authority. It's health and safety code section. I'm going to read off a bunch of numbers if you're interested in looking it up. Here's the language in the code. Any project that uses funds received from the coronavirus relief fund. Shall be deemed consistent and in court conformity with any applicable local plan, standard or requirement. And allowed a permitted use within the zone in which the structure is located. And shall not be subject to a conditional use permanent permit, discretionary permit, or to any other discretionary reviews or approvals. So when people talk about, do we need sequel, we need this, do we need this and that approval to make this happen? The answer is no, there's no approvals needed for any of those things. We are, however, in a position to partner with the county to help ensure that the project will be successful. To that end, we are holding this meeting tonight and the special meeting on November nineteenth previously to hear community feedback. We are asking the county to agree to several key issues identified by our community and staff is in active discussions with the county on these items. These topics so far include financial impact to the city from the lost transient occupancy tax, TOT and hotel tax revenue. Selection criteria for operators, ongoing operational oversight, coordination with local nonprofits and businesses in providing support. Prioritization to house coast siders, to house coast siders, long-term commitment to convert the hotel to permanent housing. We look forward to hearing more from the community tonight. Before we begin, I understand that the city attorney wants to make a few remarks regarding city council member conflicts. And then we will have the city manager kick off the staff presentation. With that, I'll kick it over to our to our 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 uh city attorney to address.
Great. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as um those of you who are at the November nineteenth meeting recall, um, the uh. Fair Political Practices Act um does require um councilors to recuse. Um, uh, when they have a financial conflict of interest, which is a general matter, um, it comes up when they own a home. Um, within five hundred feet of a proposed project. And so at the last meeting, um. With respect to the Quality Inn, um, councilmember Brownstone um is within five hundred feet of that site and um therefore. Recused for that portion of the discussion. Um, I will note that since the Quality Inn is no longer on the table, um, he will be participating in the full item tonight. Uh, the, um, however, with respect to um the Coastside Inn, uh, uh, councilmember Rarback is within five hundred feet of that location. Um, he recused at the last meeting and um and and since that time actually sought advice from the FPPC. Um, to determine um whether there an exception might apply to that five hundred foot rule. Um, there was not sufficient time for the FPPC to issue a formal opinion, but we did get informal advice um from the FPPC. Um, that um he should recuse um from the discussion with respect to the Coastside Inn, which is now, of course, the only item um being discussed. And so um, so with that, it's my understanding, um, councilmember Rarback will recuse this evening. Um, and the procedures for that in our Zoom world are that he may um either leave the meeting completely or he can simply. Turn off his camera and mute himself and we will be sure to call him back um at the end of the item. Um, so with that, I guess, um, and councilmember Rarback, if you want to say anything on on that before you recuse, um, you can feel free and then we'll turn it over for the staff presentation.
Excellent. And and before we go to, I have one one more thing. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Uh, so, uh, before we go into the uh presentation, I just want to. Just want to also note that uh as the public speaks, um, the practice that we're going to use is. We are going to have uh some note takers taking notes. And after everybody's spoken, we are going to have response. To what you are, what you are asking or saying or whatever it may be. So, once you make your comment, please stay. Uh, if you want to hear a response to your comment. Now, all these things will be taken. Again, we're going to let the entire public speak. And then we'll respond to to each person's um uh question or comment uh as we go through. Um, the answers at that point. And then we'll go into deliberations uh from there. We're really talking about it from council. Uh, Vice Mayor, did you want to make a note?
Yeah, I I know you're going to bring this up later, but I just thinking sooner might be good. A lot of people. May have some prepared remarks. And due to the number of folks, I thought it might be a good time to say that we'll be using a. Two-minute speaking versus three, because some people might want to consolidate their notes a little bit or be ready for that.
That's good. Actually, that's smart. I was going to do that before, but it's it's brilliant to bring that up now. So people have. Before, as we're going through the staff presentation, you might have a little bit of time to consolidate your comments. Uh, because we're definitely going to go to two minutes as we have at least fifty speakers, it looks like right now, uh, that would like to talk. So. Uh, and we do want to hear from everybody. So, uh, absolutely. Um, and with that, let's move over to our staff presentation. Uh, we'll go through that and then we'll open it up to the public.
Uh, excuse me, when do I recuse myself?
Now, now would be a good time.
Now's the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to the staff for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will begin. Bob Nisbet, city manager. Um, thank you, members of the county for attending tonight. And thank you, members of the public. I understand if you're in the audience, you can't see who's there and you can't tell how many people are there. Uh, there are two hundred and two of you in the audience right now. And uh, if we were in our Ted Adcock Center, uh, we would not be able to accommodate that many people. Um, so I would like to do a short intro and then we will follow the same format as last time. The only exception is that. Uh, deputy city manager Matthew Chittister will also make a few comments after me before we turn it over to the um county team. Um, so for my intro, yes, we, this has happened at quite a pace. Uh, the council had a special meeting on November nineteenth. Uh, that's just under two weeks ago. And that is when this proposition was um. Was made to the city and to the community. And the point of that meeting was to hear it out and give us some time to think about it. This is a regular meeting of the city council, December first. It's technically our second to last meeting of the year. Uh, the last meeting, December fifteenth. Uh, is a formality where we do our reorganization. Uh, we were tasked with some items from the meeting of of November nineteenth. Uh, I I received a task, Matthew received some tasks, the county certainly received some tasks. And of course, we've been spending the entire time as staff answering questions, talking to members of the public. Doing our best to get information out there about this proposition. So the comment I want to make before I turn it over to Matthew is is on the pace. And what I have have kind of experienced and learned in the last two weeks from a meeting with county staff and so forth. And that is, there have been obvious comments that this this is happening very fast. And that um certainly um the county could have, could have done it at a slower pace. Or certainly this could have, why didn't this come up a few months ago? And I, and these questions came up on the nineteenth and they've continued to come up. And I I I wanted to respond to those uh from what I've seen in in the last couple of weeks. And that is that, you know, this is a very abnormal time. And my experience with the county staff in the last two weeks have been that they have been extremely responsive. Willing to answer every question that they can answer. And some questions um may not have answers. But every question that they can answer, they have been working with us to answer. They're here tonight. They're prepared to listen to all the community comment and answer all the questions they hear. And I can tell that they're committed. To make sure that this is a success, should they proceed with it. Um, but the comments on the pace, remember. Uh, the the lockdown was mid-March. That's seven and a half uh months ago. Uh, the stimulus package did not come out till maybe April. And by the time the ca- the money started to flow to to states and counties. And by the time the, the money started to flow to, to states and counties, maybe it was May or June. Uh, it's complicated, uh, it's a big package. There's lots of different buckets that the county staff had to go through and decide how to allocate funds to attack this pandemic. Um, and part of that was to then respond, um, in a manner that they hit the most important things first. And we all know that they started to spend money by initially renting hotel rooms. Um, and, and they were using money and going at a very fast pace. And then it probably, you know, came to their attention that the money was available to actually purchase, uh, facilities and do other things. And so my point in all this is that, uh, you can just imagine that, that, that it is not a lot of time. I mean, we're talking several months and the county has been working non-stop to do what they can to combat this pandemic and utilize the federal and state dollars that have been granted to them to do the best things that are in the community's interest. And so this idea, this proposition that they could purchase hotels for both quarantining and our vulnerable populations, uh, I just don't see how they could have done it at any different pace. Um, they did the best they can, could. Buying hotels is not simple. You have to have a willing seller. You have to be thoughtful about where you place these facilities. I really believe the county has been doing all that. So the first I heard about it was when I said I heard about it from the county administrator two weeks ago. Uh, that's how fast it came up and we're playing, they're playing the hand that they're dealt. And they do have an opportunity to use these funds in a positive way. That's what you heard from them on November nineteenth, and that is the deadline that we're up against. Um, so I just wanted to make those comments that that's been my experience. We will certainly hear comments about the process and the pace, et cetera. And the county staff is happy to answer all those questions. But if you really look back at what has happened in the last six months, I think it's pretty clear that there is no other pace that it could have gone at. There, it, it wasn't possible that the city, the county could have come up with this opportunity earlier. It came up when it came up. And so, uh, that's my experience, we're here to not answer all those questions. And with that, I want to turn it over to Matthew. Uh, he also followed up on some very specific tasks from last, from last meeting. He'll make those comments and then we'll turn it over to the county staff.
Thank you, Bob. And, uh, that's a great summary of the timeline. And, and I'll just add to that, right in the middle of all of that, the county, city, the county manager's office, the Human Services Agency, the, the very folks that are dealing with this issue right now, uh, had to divert their attention to the largest wildfire we've ever had in San Mateo County. Um, and, and that affected thousands of residents, many of which, um, are, are probably with us tonight. And, and so I think, uh, we, we have to take all of this context together. Um, I'll try to be brief. Um, I, I think I have a unique perspective here, uh, born and raised in this community. I worked for the county for fourteen years before coming to Half Moon Bay. Um, and so, uh, you know, these are folks that I've been working with for a very long time and I have relationships with and I know them and, and their character and, and the work that they do. Also, um, in my role here at the city, I'm the, the lead, uh, staff member in my team in working with the homeless and working with the county and the nonprofit service providers that serve that population here. We led, uh, what we believe was a successful effort to close a large encampment a couple of years ago. Um, and, and that was all in collaboration with the service providers we're going to be talking about tonight and the county. But I think importantly, through this process and the work that we've done the last several years, I've gotten to know a lot of the homeless, um, personally and, um, as individuals. And they truly are individuals, unique individuals. Each one has a different story, a different experience, different struggles, different challenges, different hopes and aspirations. And so I think, um, it's dangerous for, to, for us, uh, as a community to generalize who these people are and what they're experiencing and what they do. They are truly individuals living in our community, uh, just under really, really bad circumstances. And what I can say is I know that, um, things have changed over the last several years. And I think that the coast side and Half Moon Bay are much better positioned to, to serve this population right now than we've ever been. We have incredible nonprofits with a, a large support network that provide the exact services that are needed to help these individuals. Um, many of them are already helping these individuals. I think the thing that we've been lacking is a place, a safe place for these individuals to live. And I, I think this is really a key and a moment for us to, to have an opportunity to fill that gap. And, and by providing this option to be housed on the coast, while continuing to receive these services and continue to receive additional services, uh, this is the best opportunity to help these people change for, for the future and, um, and overcome homelessness. What we've been doing before is, is dealing with symptoms. And we finally have a way to, to actually cure the disease. And, uh, I'm grateful to be part of this process. I know that the community is concerned. But I just want to commit myself and my team, uh, to be supportive and work with the county throughout this. If they choose to move forward with this acquisition, uh, we will be dedicated to making it successful for this community. Um, and, and, you know, we all have a personal stake in this. And, uh, I, I really hope that this is something that is positive. And when we look back in a few years, we see that this was the right thing. And, and, uh, we've really helped a lot of people and made our community better. One of the things I was tasked with, uh, was to answer or try to help answer the question. You know, how many of our local individuals that are experiencing homelessness would actually take advantage of something like this? I think there's concerns that if the county acquires this hotel, that, uh, new people are going to be introduced to our community, that other, other communities' issues are going to be brought to us and we're going to have to bear the brunt of that. And so one of the things we've done, uh, you know, we work really closely with Abundant Grace and Eric Dubode, and he'll be speaking tonight, I'm sure. Um, and, and he's in contact with many of, uh, the members of our community experiencing homelessness. Uh, but on, on Monday, yesterday morning, uh, before many of them go out and do the work that, uh, is provided through Abundant Grace, uh, we met with, uh, a, a small group of folks. I, I counted fifteen total throughout the, throughout the morning. And we talked about this opportunity. And we talked about the dynamics of, of, you know, what it would be like to have this here. And, and most importantly, if it happened, would they be willing to, to, to pick up and move into this facility and receive services here? And, uh, to, to a person, they all, uh, were very excited and understood that there would be rules and constraints. And all of them were interested in committing themselves to that and, uh, holding each other accountable to make this successful. Now, that's not all the homeless in our community. I, I don't believe that every single person that is experiencing homelessness right now is in a position to, to take advantage of this. Uh, but I think we have a good sampling of folks that, uh, are excited and ready to take this challenge on and to take this opportunity in their lives. And I think that, uh, there's many more out there that, that would do the same. So, uh, really grateful to, to be part of this process, really grateful to the county for their, uh, willingness to invest in the community. And, uh, again, pledging our support and our commitment to work with them on making this successful. Uh, with that, um, I've got, uh, Mike Callagie's, uh, screen, uh, his, uh, presentation here. Uh, Mike, are you ready to present?
Yes, um, before I do, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members and Mr. Nesbit and Mr. Chittister for this opportunity, let, let me, uh, first see if Supervisor Horsley would like to make any comments before I begin this short presentation.
Uh, maybe, well, thanks, Mike. Uh, you know, I really appreciate the comments from both, uh, your mayor, Adam Eisen, and as well as the city manager, Bob Nesbit. And I don't think I could have said it any better than, uh, Matthew Chittister. Uh, Matthew, Matthew, uh, was really, he was the workhorse behind that, um, I think it was, uh, twenty nineteen, when there's somewhere never been but forty-some of people living in the creek behind Safeway. He really put together a program, took several months to get all those people out there, clean that up. I just want to point out though, that, uh, you know, I've been on the board of supervisors for ten years. My first assignment was working with homelessness. So I've been working on this for ten years. And, and, you know, and I've worked with, uh, with the city of, of Half Moon Bay for, just, but basically that whole time about homeless issues. I just pointed out that in the past, there was a citizens group. So we work with, um, or I work with, it was composed of both citizens and some community-based organizations and sheriff's department on dealing with homelessness and trying to figure out, you know, how to deal with that, uh, issue, how to find some kind of a facility and how to, uh, really clean up some of the areas of where they're living, both in campments and also creeks. There were subsequent to that, there were about three different attempts at getting a facility someplace. Two of them were, as I recall, on Main Street and it was in a funding for it. And so nothing ever really happened. And there was another, uh, attempt to, um, locate a homeless facility behind the Catholic church off of Kelly Street. Again, that didn't work out either. This, uh, program, it was really the governor's, uh, determination to home, to deal with homelessness in the state of California. It really presented us with a unique opportunity to do something. And knowing that there is a significant homeless population in Half Moon Bay and knowing that there was a significant effort on the part of both the council and citizens to deal with this, this I thought was a great opportunity for us to, to deal with people who are essentially living unsheltered in your creeks and, uh, encampments and panhandling on the street. And I just want to assure you that the county, if this, uh, project actually moves forward, we're not going to abandon it. We're not going to walk away from it. We are going to make sure that we continue to, we're going to make sure that we do consult with citizens, that this, the council's going to have some input and looking at, when we do find a, a manager for the facility. Usually it's a, one of the organizations that we work with is, uh, uh, Life Moves, and you may have, some of you may have know, know their work. We also work with Samaritan House. And so we will find a, an operator like, um, Life Moves or Samaritan House. There will be round-the-clock security. And I think our staff can answer a lot of the questions that people have about how these facilities are, are operating. It's not a free hotel room where somebody could do whatever they want. There, there's really a lot of controls. And, and I, I, I think, you know, some of the information you're going to get from our staff should reassure people. I don't know that we can answer all of your questions tonight, but we certainly would, are interested in hearing your thoughts or concerns and your questions. And we will get back, if we can't answer it tonight, we could, we'll certainly make sure that they're answered, you know, at some point before the project actually is completed. So without any, I turn it back to, uh, Mike and Kent Cole from our staff.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Horsley. And, uh, let me just start by saying that we are talking about one location. You know, we heard comments from the council, uh, about two weeks ago and we went back and reflected. And, um, it made a lot of sense to really focus on, on one location. We picked the dislocation because of its proximity to services and transportation. Um, but as, uh, as Mr. Nesbit and Mr. Chittister so eloquently indicated, um, this is not an ideal situation for us. Uh, if, you know, it's, it's a large purchase. The, the Board of Supervisors, um, just gave, uh, me authority to, um, close a, a deal on two hotels tomorrow. Um, totally, you know, over fifty million dollars that, uh, was made possible by, uh, by the program Home Key. Um, but we had to move at breakneck speed to, to close those and to close this deal too, as we progressed to try to close this deal. We've got one other one in the mix too. It's been just an unbearable pace for our staff also, so we don't take this lightly. We are going into it. We are using, uh, due diligence to, to make sure that we, we check everything out. I just also want to say that, um, this, that we're not inexperienced in doing this. Uh, we've been doing, uh, you know, hotel stays for those experiencing homeless for a long period of time. Um, it's, it's a, a way we regularly get folks off the street, especially those who are vulnerable, who may be ill and in need of shelter. And, uh, this is no different during COVID hit. Um, we, uh, you know, about six, seven months ago, we took over an entire hotel, uh, for the homeless and we've been housing them there. It's about double this size, I believe, or close to double this size. Um, and, uh, we've had staff there and security and, and, and wraparound services. And, uh, it's worked out quite well. We, we, uh, in various hotels around the county, we have about two hundred people housed right now, uh, supplying them with services. But it's, it's cost prohibitive and it doesn't make good financial sense to continue down this path. And for COVID-related purposes and long-term, uh, long-range goals of us to try to get to a functional zero homelessness in this county, this makes sense. And this was something, quite frankly, that we were looking at, um, you know, prior to COVID nineteen, u- utilizing hotels to try to get to functional zero. And it's just fortuitous really that there's funding available to do this. Um, so that was a little bit of the background. And if we can go ahead to the next slide, I think that'd be great. So, so why is a shelter needed in Half Moon Bay? And if you, uh, look back at the latest, uh, shelter, I mean, the homeless count, uh, which was a one-day count, uh, you, you could see there was two hundred and thirty people. And this is not, you know, extremely accurate. I believe there's more than that. Uh, two hundred and thirty people that are unsheltered on the coast. And that would be, you know, Half Moon Bay, Pacifica, unincorporated communities of the coast. Uh, and there are no shelter options on the coast side now. And this is something Supervisor Horsley and I have talked about, uh, often. He's often, you know, asked me to look for different options, uh, on the coast for many years now, um, because of this situation. And this is not a new situation, of course, that all of you who live out there, uh, understand that. So, uh, the, uh, the unsheltered coast residents, we've approached them and, and certainly the staff of, uh, Half Moon Bay have approached them. And, uh, they do not want to come over the hill and accept services on the other side. They would rather live in the creek or, or, uh, outdoors, uh, instead of coming over to the coast. So this really gives them an opportunity to be sheltered in a healthier and much safer, um, location with wraparound services, because our whole goal here, believe me, is not to keep this as a shelter forever. Uh, we want people to transition out of this transitional housing opportunity to permanent shelter. And that's what we'll be looking for. We can go to the next slide. So what, what is the plan for the Half Moon Bay shelter? Um, obviously we're, we're focused on, uh, the coast side inn property, uh, which will be operated. And this is, and Supervisor Horsley indicated, this is not a free-for-all. This is a place where it's going to be, uh, operated by a vendor who are very, very experienced doing this. And, and we have, you know, like the supervisor indicated, we have both, um, Samaritan House and, um, uh, other vendors working right now, uh, with us at, uh, at various shelters, um, and, and doing a great job. They do an absolutely great job. This is a fifty-two-room, uh, hotel, uh, and the number of residents will really be based on the staff there. So, you know, uh, it's, it's not that we're, we may not have all fifty-two rooms, um, filled, uh, depending on, on the staff. But, uh, we'll also staff it on the needs of, uh, of those individuals. We'd love to see every room occupied all the time. The priority will be those residents of the coast. Um, they'll be staffed there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, uh, you know, and of course, that'll be twenty-four seven. Um, and, and the nice thing about this is really the case management piece of this. Everyone who comes in will be assessed. There'll be, there'll be, uh, a case opened on them. And really, the, the case managers will look at what is needed to make this person successful and get them out of that, um, that, uh, where they're experiencing homeless now, homelessness now, into more permanent housing. And that's what we're really looking for. And as you know, as you all know out there, there's some great services right there, very close to this hotel. And we'll look to partnership with Abundant Grace and Coastside Hope and, uh, Allahs and Coastside Clinic and Health Central, that, uh, Liberty and the community resources for additional support for residents. I mean, these are all, um, uh, nonprofits that, that we partner with regularly and, and they're familiar with the clientele out there. And they help them on a regular basis. Um, so people ask, well, how much is, is the city going to have to put in? Because, you know, we're already stretched. Um, and the real answer to that is the county, this is a county operation. It will be funded by the county. This is what we do every day in regard to the, to the homeless. Um, through federal grants and state grants and local funds earmarked to assist the homeless residents, um, we're going to be operating, uh, this, uh, hotel in conjunction with the vendor. And as Supervisor Horsley indicated, this is not something we're going to walk away from. This is a commitment for as long as it takes to address the needs out there. Uh, and, and there's strict, uh, you know, residential rules that are, that are in play here. And, uh, you know, we've asked people to leave and we'll ask people to leave if they, if they violate the rules. There are people who want to get, uh, out of homelessness permanently. They want a roof over their head and they will follow the rules or, uh, they will be asked to leave. Um, and some of those rules, uh, you know, they're going to have to keep the rooms. And I'm sorry if we go to the next slide. Some of those rules are they're going to have to keep their rooms, uh, clean and in good shape. Uh, visitors, uh, are not allowed without prior approval. So it's not like people are coming and going, uh, at all hours of the night. That is not allowed and that is a, uh, a cause for, um, for eviction. On the quiet hours between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, there's no loitering on adjacent properties or businesses for COVID safety purposes, you know, all the things we ask everyone, the social distancing, the, the mask-wearing, the daily temperature checks. That's something that we do when we bring around food. We check the, the temperature to the three meals that they get a day. There's no smoking in the rooms, and that'll only be allowed in designated areas. And of course, drugs or alcohol are not permitted on-site, and you know, our purpose there is to get those who have addiction issues off of, of whatever substance they're abusing, because that is what's prohibiting in many cases them from progressing out of homelessness. And we are a housing-first county. We know that until folks have a roof over their head, they're not able to take care of their mental or physical health. They're not able to hold a job. They're not able to, to beat addiction. They're not able to become financially secure without that residence first. That's where it all starts. If we try to do that while they're homeless, in many, many, many cases, it's, it's just you know, a waste of money. So we, we try to get that housing first. So the rules are enforced by the shelter operator, and support and oversight is really done by the county. We go to the next slide. Who resides to the shelter? San Mateo County residents who are experiencing homelessness really are the ones who are going to be residing there. Of course, we're going to give a preference to those on the coast, those in Half Moon Bay. We'd, we'd love to see them all from the coast, be there and, and receive the wraparound services and transition out of homeless. Some of these people I've seen firsthand. Some of them have been homeless for many, many, many years, transition out, and it's remarkable to see them have their own place someday and, and get back into society in a meaningful way. The elderly homeless adults and those with medical conditions, you know, one of the hotels, the board just authorized me to accept the certificate for purchase is one that we're going to be exclusively for seniors. And we have needs certainly for senior housing throughout the county, and we'll continue to have that as our generation and our population ages in place. Homeless adults who abide by the faculty rules and work with their case managers to move toward permanent housing. These are folks that are in the community now who we, that Mr. Chitester talked about, who want to get on that track to permanent housing. And many of these residents may be employed. In fact, if you look at the Maple Street Shelter, and I think that this astonishes many people. Fifty percent of those people are employing good work every day. They just don't make a wage that will allow them to afford the median-priced apartment in this, in this county, which is $2,700. These are folks that, that work in a lot of essential services jobs in our, in our supermarkets, in our restaurants, in our coffee shops, in our gas stations, and and, and all those other businesses in between that you can imagine, that you see people every day working in that you rely on. We can go to the next slide, please. The building purchase, it's fully funded by the CARES Act, and as both Nesbit and Mr. Nesbit and Mr. Chitester alluded to, these are funds that were, you know, they were shifting funds that, you know, we were trying to, we're giving this pot of money to try to stretch out over a period of time, and you had to deal with all the COVID-related expenses and PPE and, and testing and everything else we did, and all the, the extra nurses and doctors and hospitals and setting up beds. All that had to be stretched out, and it was constantly, and all the money that the board gave away to the different causes. So we're constantly trying to balance that and reconcile that, so we make sure that we don't end up in that we expend all that money by the time period that needs to be expended, and that's the end of this year. So the funds have to be spent by December 30th, 2020. At one point in time, we thought that that'd be extended, and it just never was. That never came to fruition. So we're stuck at this point with, and it's, it's a good thing to be, you know, to have, to have money that you have to spend, but it has caused this rush. And certainly, there's no city participation. We're not asking the city to participate in the purchase or the operation, the ongoing cost of this. And it really is a unique opportunity, as many of the prior speakers have indicated, to a long, to a long stemming problem in the community of homelessness. This is really something that I think that, you know, many have hoped for, for a long period of time to find this this housing for these individuals in an effort to get them out of homelessness. If we go to the next slide, please. We'll talk about the timeline really quick here. The hotel purchase would have to close by December, by the end of December. Planning for the shelter will begin soon, and that is, we'd love to see the, the establishment of a community advisory committee, so we can talk about this. We want to partner with the community to make this successful. This is not something that the county wants to do in a vacuum. We want to make sure that the community is involved, and all the services that we can bring to bear in dealing with this homelessness issue are utilized. And after that, we will certainly have ongoing meetings. We've got a great relationship, a great partnership with your city. I mean, you guys have been terrific on many, many different fronts in the past, and we expect this to go the same way, and we want to make sure this is a partnership. And I think that that's the way we've operated consistently in the past, and we will in the future. And then the selection operator, you know, and to the extent possible, we'd love the city to be involved in that and in the interviewing process with us to make sure that we pick the right vendor for this, this, this very critical need and, and Life Moves, you know, we've had a great relationship with them. We've had a great relationship with Samaritan House. I would imagine to be many people interested in this opportunity. And then the resident occupancy is not expected till at least March or possibly later. So I've had the opportunity to speak to some of the residents of Half Moon Bay who've called me or emailed, and I tried to address some of the, the constant theme questions that we, that I heard during those conversations. I'm sure there's many more. There's, there's a question about police and fire, and we don't expect there to be an increase in police and fire service or sheriff services over what has been experienced now with the homeless population you have there now. We, we hope that'll decrease actually, in that we won't utilize the resources of the city that are needed because of the homeless population being spread out in different areas and all those problems that come along with that. So with that, I know that Ken is available. Ken Cole is the director, incredible director of the Human Services Agency. He's got a long history background in dealing with those who have experience in homelessness. And he's available to answer any questions also, but let me leave it there.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Mike, and appreciate that, that overview and information. Are we, let me just check in real quick. Ken, is there anything you want to say before we move into the, anything else?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, your city manager staff. So just by a quick introduction, I'm, as Mike said, I'm the agency director for the human services. And for those of you who aren't familiar with county government, the Human Services Agency is really the, the welfare agency for the county. So we're here to take care of people, particularly people with special needs and circumstances. So homelessness falls into our purview. We have an excellent center on homelessness. We have a great, great staff, a great group of nonprofit providers who have on-the-ground experience. I'm really here tonight again to listen, and after the first session that we had on this subject, we created an FAQ list, which has been published and posted. I expect I'll hear additional questions tonight. We'll add those to our FAQs. I'll take some notes here for either things that Mike can speak to, or I can speak to following your, your public comment. I just appreciate this opportunity.
Okay. And just, just so I'm not missing anybody, is there anybody else I should be acknowledging before we open up the next portion? From the county, per se?
I think that's it from the county.
We have Benson, our deputy county, county manager with us as well.
That's right.
All right, perfect. Just, just wanted to make sure everybody was in it. All right. Now, it looks like we have, where are we now? I'm going to get back to this. About 57 people. So we're going to ask that people keep it to two minutes in terms of their comments. I'm going to ask that Jessica call on people, and then with one minute and 30 seconds left, we're going to ask you to wrap it up at that point. There's, we want to hear from everybody, but we also want to make sure that we get through this in in a timely manner. And then we want to address, again, we're going to take all the notes, and then all the responses are going to come at the end. And that may take, we might even need to take a little break in between the time where everybody speaks and just the notes get gathered and, and the responses come. So this could be a little bit of a lengthy process. Bear with us. We are excited to hear from you. And with that, let's please get, I, I guess I should ask, does council want to make any comments before we open it up to public comment? No? Ready to go? Thank you. And so let's open it up for public comment. And Jessica, we kindly do the honors.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And just to clarify, I will give a 30-second wrap-up. So when there are 30 seconds left, I will let you know to wrap up your comments. Okay, David Blobby, you have two minutes.
Okay, great. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good. Apologies for the speed here. Far be it for me to claim victory, but as the other online polls and posts will undoubtedly be presented here tonight, I want to claim victory right here and now. That's what I started last week on Nextdoor. It should be declared the outright winner with 294 total responses and 118 likes. Those responses from people in support and against are as legitimate as anything you will be presented tonight, which is to say they are completely meaningless. We do not govern our community by internet poll, posts, or God forbid, tweets. To the people waiting in line to speak here tonight, I have to ask you this. What are you doing here? The city has about as much chance of affecting the county's purchase of the hotel as Austria had in 1938, when Germany knocked on the door and said, hi there. The words online that presumably brought you here are filled with outright falsehoods and misstatements of facts, not to mention moderately ugly expressions of hatred and intolerance directed at our homeless population. Despite countless attempts to direct individuals to the resources that are readily available to educate themselves, the tidal wave of ignorance and anger has continued to grow. The big question I have, though, is why are you speaking here about why you want the project stopped? A far more impactful approach would be to speak about how you want the city to work with the county to assure a positive outcome for the public, all of us, whether with a home or without. As I've said since the first post in that thread I mentioned earlier, we have a unique opportunity to make something good from what is, by all accounts, a horrible circumstance. And even if that wasn't true, what the council doesn't have is any mechanism to stop the purchase or the project. So please, focus on the problem. Thanks. The one you can help solve, not the clickbait that has been served up over the past couple of weeks. So that's basically it. If you've got some BS poll filled with people who don't exist and focused on stopping the project, you are completely missing the point of this meeting. You can add your experience, wisdom, creativity, and passion to help our community make this project a success, or you can whine to a council that has no power to stop the purchase about how you want them to stop the purchase. As always, it's up to all of us to make our community better for all of us. I hope that's what we focus on here tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, David.
Next, we have Eric DeBode. Eric, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Eric DeBode, and I'm the executive director of Abundant Grace Coastside Worker. I would like to thank you, City Council, for your, the last meeting that you had. I thought I was so impressed by the last meeting, and also to our county supervisor and Ken Cole and Mr. Gallagher was excellent, really in-depth knowledge of the homelessness issue, housing. Everyone's comments have been careful and compassionate, and I really appreciate the moral leadership. Abundant Grace works with approximately 70 people experiencing homelessness every year, and we do employment programming. We take people to work at Patrero Nuevo Farm and also the Coastside Clean Team. The majority of the folks we work with and see are Bay Area residents, and a lot of them come from the coast side. We offer work five days every week, and our work records show how many, many people come regularly. I've worked with the homeless for about 30 years. Only in the last nine years since I've been here have we been doing employment work, and it has totally transformed me and my sense of the dignity of work. And it's changed my relationships with folks who are experiencing homelessness. We've been able to involve people in team-building projects and success, and there's all kinds of really good outcomes for folks. People want to work. They want to stay busy and productive. They want to feel successful and good about themselves, just like you and me. So I'm very supportive of the proposal to purchase the coast side in and use it to house the homeless community. I also share a lot of the concerns of other residents, and I'm confident that it will be run very well, clean, safe, and secure. I too am a supporter of the Housing First model, providing safe shelter for people and working up from there on issues of health, work, permanent housing, and other supportive services. As Matthew mentioned, we had a meeting yesterday at Abundant Grace with a group of our workers who are, I'm sorry. And most interestingly, they voiced the same concerns as the larger community. How can I be sure it's going to be safe and secure? How is it going to be kept clean, right? People were excited about the possibility of sleeping in a bed, using a shower and a bathroom, to be able to lock the door and feel safe. So I'm going to move to the end of my written notes here. So I signed the petition from the Coastside Families Taking Action. And I agree with, I support this program. I do think that some concerns need to be nailed down, particularly, I think Half Moon Bay is a very delicate social system, and we need to be cognizant of that, of really making a priority to serve folks that are already here who are experiencing homelessness and living in campers and cars, couch surfing, and so on and so forth. Finally, I want to thank you again. This issue has been near and dear to my heart for most of my life, and I think if we work hard together and we ensure high-quality programming in a safe environment, I think we will surely see many people taking important steps in their lives and making the changes that they've been wanting for many years. These are hard-working, wonderful people, full of potential, and worth every bit of our efforts. Thank you very much.
Eric, for all the work you do.
Next, we have Brian Greenberg. Brian, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm vice president over programs and services at Life Moves, and I'm in support of the project. I want to say that interim housing like that included in this proposal can be operated in a way that's a real asset to the community. And concerns about loitering and panhandling and drug use can successfully be addressed with 24-hour-a-day staffing, with strict rules of behavior, with intensive case management, and good community relations. These really do make a difference. And shelter, successful shelter operators, we're aware that stakeholders are not only individuals experiencing homelessness, but local merchants and residents and law enforcement, among others. My staff are familiar with the challenges of homeless folks west of the coastal range. You'll hear from a couple tonight. We, it's important that it's a broad collaborative with Allahs and Abundant Grace, Coastside Hope. And finally, the site would not just be a three-hots-in-a-cot overnight shelter, but offer a real return to housing. The operator would coordinate with county-coordinated entry to prioritize local admissions, provide a broad range of services. And this is a model we've implemented at other sites. It has a proven track record for over 40 years, and we urge the council to support the project, and we're so happy that the county is bringing it to the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Carrie McIntosh. Carrie, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I live in Highland Park. I oppose this project. The county says this project is free because it will pay for everything. Well, I'm sorry, but there's no such thing as a free lunch. Half Moon Bay is a tourist town, and taking a hotel out of service will damage our local economy. Will the county compensate local businesses for the losses they sustain when thousands of tourists can no longer occupy a hotel located in the heart of town? No. And if these businesses lay off employees... employees, will the county pay a living wage to them? No. Will the county compensate the city for sales tax losses? No. These and other impacts should be studied. They have not been. Alternatives to buying this hotel should have been explored. They have not been. So City Council members, you represent us. Please, don't just roll over and say there's nothing you can do. You can oppose this project. You can litigate. Other cities have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Frazier. Scott, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Scott Frazier. I'm a longtime Half Moon Bay resident. I also operate several units up in Calaveras County, of which I've put 11 and given to Calaveras County to operate similar programs. Additionally, in Half Moon Bay, I've converted one of my units to affordable housing programs. So I'm completely familiar with how successful a noble goal like this can be. Similarly, I am very experienced in some of the disruptions and externalities of rushing into one of these type of programs. So I guess what I'd like to urge everyone is to consider making a temporary solution out of this instead of a permanent solution and spending some time to vet it as a permanent solution and involving the community, both all of San Mateo and Half Moon Bay. I think that would be wise for our Half Moon Bay planning efforts as well as good community development. So again, I support this as a temporary solution, which could develop into a permanent solution, but as far as a permanent acquisition at this time, I think it's important that we consider taking small steps. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And next, we have Sid Young. Sid, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, there we go. I couldn't find the unmute. Sorry about that. Who's taking the notes? Can they take quick notes, or shall I email you the rest if I don't get through on my two minutes?
We can take them.
Okay, so it sounds like you're going to do it, no matter what the community says. But because of the other two sales, is that why the coast side was more of an afterthought, which makes the community feel like this is being rammed through for us too quickly? Here's my other questions. Who decided on the locations to be acquired? Please describe that process. Why were two hotels presented, then one pulled back and not acted on? Who set or determine the acquisition price, meaning the offer price versus the asking price that the seller wanted? What, if anything, was negotiated? Take it as is? Take all the defects and the deferred maintenance to be the county's responsibility post-sale? Did the county do any previous due diligence on the property, like pre-inspections, or find out if the place needs a new roof or has any remaining life on the current roof since it was built in 91? At minimum, have there been any professional walkthroughs to visually spot problems? How did they select the seller? I think that's what a lot of people are asking since two hotels by the same person were selected initially. I wondered if there was a bank appraisal had been done to verify the value yet. Do you have any comps on the property? What's the cap rate on the property? If the county buys a property, how will the annual property taxes be apportioned? Is the county exempt? Currently, the property taxes are $52,467, and that's including all the school bonds and special assessments. Loss of ad valorem income alone is $30,000 to the city, and loss to the school district is about three, over $3,000. Community College District 644, Fire District 105, Sewer, $18,498. So I'd like to know who's, if the county's exempt, who's going to take over all those other fees? Regarding the resale, will the county later sell it back to Keaton Ernhander? Will he be exempt from repurchasing it down the road if it doesn't work out? What's being done to provide parking for vehicle dwellers? There's a 48-space RV park being proposed on December 9th to the Planning Commission up at the harbor. Maybe you could designate like 12 spots, be always approved for the vehicle dwellers that are parking out on Airport Boulevard. Because I couldn't see on any of these things where the other concerns of the community have been addressed, such as, what's your success rate of conversion from streets to permanent housing? What about the RVs? They, in your last count, homeless count, they outnumbered the street and tent campers. Families, why are you exempting families from this facility? And what are you doing for, to place homeless families in this, in the coast side area? Because of proximity to schools, will there be any background checks? If booted out of the program, where are they going to go? Just back out onto the street right here in Half Moon Bay? Regarding drugs, as Joaquin mentioned, in the city, fentanyl is killing the homeless more than COVID is. It also creates crimes such as shoplifting auto break-ins to support habits. I'm talking about the city, but it could happen here, too. I don't know, because I don't live right in Half Moon Bay. And what's the determination of the cause of death of the South San Francisco woman who was living in her RV and passed away in the Straw Flower parking lot last November? And why weren't any of the Straw Flower business owners notified? Thank you.
Oh, perfect.
I know you probably couldn't read them all, write them all down that fast. So if you give me somebody to email this to respond at the end, I can send it now.
You're keeping us busy. Why don't you send it to Jessica Blair? Do you have her email address?
Not sure. Hold on a minute.
It's J. Blair, B.L.A.I.R., at hmbcity.com.
Okay, B.L.A.I.R., like Blair Witch?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I didn't mean it like that, but thank you.
Thanks.
All good. Thank you. Great comments. Thanks for all that.
Next, we have Carrie Andor Marta.
Hi, this is Carrie Lobell. Thanks for calling on me. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council, Supervisor Horsley, city and county staff, and also members of our beloved community. I'm here tonight to talk in support of the project, and I sent my written comments earlier, so I won't repeat them. But I will say this, I think most of our faith traditions call on us to love the stranger, welcome the stranger. And for me, what's important is the homeless in our community, the temporarily unhoused people in our community are our neighbors. They're our friends. They're people that we see every day. I think that COVID-19, which has been such a calamity around the country and the world, has provided us with such a unique opportunity to solve a problem that has persisted in the 20 years that I've lived in the coast side, first in Pescadero as the Director of Puente, and now in Half Moon Bay. The need has been there. For the 14 years I've been involved in conversations about homelessness, many groups have met, many solutions have been proposed, as Supervisor Horsley said. And there's always been a problem. This isn't a new issue, but this is a new opportunity to really take action on a problem. I've worked with so many members of the county staff and the service providers around the county for almost 15 years, and they are the best. They're the best that we can find, who have a commitment to homeless people, to the communities in which they serve. They are, they are truly, truly the best. The needs here, the opportunities here, the experience to solve the problem is here, and I really urge you to move forward on this project as soon as you can. Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Jessica?
Yes, the timer was going off, so I was trying to stop it. Next, we have Luke Tara. Luke, you have two minutes.
Thanks very much, and thanks to our City Council, to our county staff and representatives for being with us and for moving this project forward. I'm proud to speak in favor of this project. I didn't prepare a statement, which I think is just as well, because I don't think I could possibly improve on the contributions of folks like Mr. Chittister and Brian at Life Moves and Eric at Abundant Grace and Carrie, who just spoke. I'm proud to speak in favor of this. I live a few blocks from the coast side in. I'd be happy to welcome these new neighbors as they transition to permanent housing. Seems for us, particularly in this moment when COVID has laid bare so many of the inequalities and challenges disproportionately facing the unhoused and other vulnerable members of our community, our role, our responsibility is to seek solutions, and this seems like a viable one that we should embrace. I feel confident in the providers like Life Moves, who can provide the kind of wraparound services to ensure a safe and secure environment. And just want to thank again everyone for, for their really creativity and willingness to dive in and dig in, even at a rapid pace, to try to make this kind of a solution possible. Thank you.
Very nice. Nicely said.
Mark Ebert, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Ebert, and I've lived in Half Moon Bay for 25 years. This council should fight Horsley's proposal to put a homeless shelter in the heart of our town, because the overwhelming majority of local voters and taxpayers are vehemently opposed to it. We've presented you a petition with about 1,900 signatures of people who want this thing stopped. That's almost equal to the total number of people who voted for all three candidates for City Council last month combined. It wasn't easy getting those signatures. We had to act in only three days over Thanksgiving weekend, and virtually nobody we reached out to had even heard of this scheme. The county is trying to act before residents and stakeholders in the community can even find out what's going on. Yesterday, the administration of Hatch Elementary School let us know that they haven't even been told by either the county or the city that there's a proposal to put a homeless shelter with services for drug addicts and mentally ill people just one block from their elementary school. The City of Novato threatened to sue Marin County over a similar proposal, and the county backed off. The City of Half Moon Bay can do the same. Then, when the holidays are over, we can have a genuine, well-reasoned, well-studied, and, this is important, democratic discussion about how to help our local homeless. This is not Democrat. All we are asking this council to do is your jobs. Fight back against this abuse of power for us. Thank you.
Well stated. Very nice. Good comments. Thank you.
Anne Martin, you have two minutes.
Good evening. Housing 52 single adults in the heart of downtown will bring a relatively large concentration of transients into our small business district and our residential neighborhoods and beaches. This is going to create more problems than it solves. The threat to public safety. In the last two weeks, the media reported on an attack in a San Jose homeless shelter. Where a homeless individual with prior violent felony convictions stabbed five people, killing two. The county has still not answered my questions about how it's going to be screening these shelter occupants. Will people with a history of violent criminal convictions be admitted? Will people with prior sexual assault convictions be admitted? Second problem I see, coastal homelessness will increase. Some of our local homeless will choose not to move to the shelter, and the county will fill the beds with people from other communities. Additionally, there will be those evicted for not complying with the rules. They can remain in our community and camp out. And so in addition to 52 shelter occupants, we'll still have the local homeless who resist moving and those who are evicted. A very strong possibility that our homeless population will increase, not decrease, as hoped. And finally, this could be irreversible for the City of Half Moon Bay. This is a county-owned and managed facility. What happens? Big question here. County, what happens if this shelter winds up having a negative impact, impacts, negatively impacting our tourist industry?
30 seconds.
Our business community, our public safety, our crime rate? We, as Half Moon Bay, won't have the freedom to close it or repurpose it. We'll have to negotiate. And I'm sorry, in my experience, the county hasn't shown a lot of interest in our needs of the coast side. We urge the council to lead to the coast side community first and say no, just say no, to this county shelter and create your own, your own coast side solution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Cassandra Garcia, you have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassandra Garcia, and I work for Life Moves as a homeless outreach case manager for the City of Half Moon Bay. I outreach and support the homeless population in the City of Half Moon Bay. I know this population very well. I have clients on the bike path trail by the creek behind CBS and other various locations. I know that my clients would benefit from a shelter-in-place hotel in order to motivate and better themselves into permanent housing. I know the struggle of offering shelter to my clients only to be denied due to my clients not wanting to come over the hill to Redwood City or South City for shelter. All my clients state that their comfort is on the coast. I recently had a client who accepted shelter in Redwood City while we worked on finding housing. He was unable to focus and stated he felt uncomfortable in Redwood City. Therefore, he left the shelter and came back to the coast, where it took me about two weeks to locate him on the bike path under Highway 1. Once I was able to locate him, we were able to work on his housing plan. The client is now successfully housed in Pacifica. I know that if there was a shelter on the coast during his transition, my client would have benefited from it. I have seen the fear and the concerns of community members when I have engaged with my clients on the bike path under Highway 1 and surrounding encampments. I have seen the looks and the body language of unease. If a shelter was available, the bike paths and encampments would not be as prevalent. Clients would be in a hotel working on their case plans. The county has a similar hotel program in Burlingame that has been beneficial to our clients. It has not brought unwanted issues or attention to the surrounding neighborhood. Clients are given three meals a day and snacks, so there's no need to panhandle in the surrounding area. There is a mobile street medicine van that comes out to support the clients.
30 seconds.
Case managers like myself have an easier time locating clients if we can find them in a hotel. I can understand the worry and doubt with a hotel that serves homeless population. However, the clients in Half Moon Bay will greatly benefit from having stability to work on housing and work on bettering themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra.
Next, we have Donald Page. Donald, you have two minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'm a 25-year resident here in Miramar. Thank you, City Council, mayors, coastiders. On November 19th, the coast side was blindsided with the new, now famous motel-on-Cabrio Highway Plan. Our petition launched last Wednesday, which now has almost 2,000 signatures, is a demand for the county to stop, to allow we coastiders alone to develop a plan which fits this community, and a call to action from our elected City Council. This is huge. This is bigger than the outcry which saved part of our north coast wilderness from a freeway. Thank goodness we won that fight. Not Coastside Coalition or anyone else wants to ignore the homeless anymore. Let's be clear. This is a call to action, to stop a terrible plan, actually no plan at all, and most importantly, to avoid unintended consequences. Unlike the freight train of county and state politicians, our City Council lives here. They love this coast.
30 seconds.
They are community with our children. They depend on a robust tourist economy, and they must stand for our autonomy. To all who have differing opinions, we welcome debate, but we need time for that debate to take place. After all, we all want the same thing, a workable solution to our homeless problem. And by the way, when somebody gets kicked out of this program, where do they go? They go back to the creek. Thank you.
Next, we have Ellen Young.
Hello, thank you for having me. I just wanted to come on today and voice my support of this proposal. I'm a professor of biology at Kenyatta College and an avid birder, and I have often thought that birding along the creeks would be very nice here in this community and have often felt often felt concerned about the homeless encampments' impact on the water quality in the local area. So it is to me just another added benefit of this program that potentially we may have cleaner watersheds. It's something that additionally, I just would be curious to see if we could partner with Abundant Grace to add that as something that they might be able to do with their wonderful cleanup crew. And I just also wanted to share an anecdote of I have a friend who experienced homelessness in San Francisco and was living out of his car. And then was moved to some public housing and seeing the transition in his health and well-being and state of mind. It just really was transformative, and I'm really excited to see that happen for some of the people here on the coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Maria Farisa, you have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm dialed in as well on my phone. I was wondering if we could unmute my phone.
Jessica, we have.
It's 818.
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. You can.
Okay, well, let me. I'll hang up on my phone and I'll speak through my computer.
Yeah, I don't see the phone. Sorry.
All right. So, good evening. My name is Maria. I live in East Miramar, and I strongly oppose this proposal. I'm sure you have, you have heard a lot of feedback from the community by now. And I'm confident my reasons have been represented in some shape or form. My focus today is the bottom line. To keep it simple, I've broken it down to three themes. Cost to community, cost to businesses, and the actual efficacy of the program. Under the umbrella of cost to community, I'd like us to monitor crime rates, and this includes analysis on severity, type, and frequency. Emergency response call rates and response times, and this, and the same thing applies here. Incremental spend for public and supporting services that includes hospitals, law enforcement, and the fire department. Impact to traffic conditions, changes in well-being and lifestyle. For example, will the cost of living in this neighborhood go up, or will my insurance premiums go up? On the actual efficacy of the program, these come to mind. Homeless rates, timeline on return on investment, cost benefit of the program, and dollar purpose spent. This list is not, is by no means exhaustive. However, this would be some of the metrics I would hold you accountable to being city officials executing on the proposal. If any of these indicators is impacted negatively, either individually, in combination, or as a whole, I believe this community is entitled to see what what Plan B would look like. On top of that, I would like to know how the success or failure of this program will be measured. By the same token, I'd like to emphasize this point as well. The fact that other cities across the country are running similar programs and services in their neighborhoods for years now only serves to prove that the problem is systematic, is systemic, and that this is a Band-Aid solution at best. At the end of the day, if this should be looked upon as a solution to our community's problems, then let's come together as a community to understand those problems, how to address them, and what it will cost us. It's easy to dismiss each other and box us all into corners with labels and generalizations based on our views on the method. But I believe it's how we show up at the table that makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Marcia, you have two minutes.
Marcia, I believe you're still on mute.
Marcia Moriarty?
Yep.
Yes, thanks.
Good evening. I am Marcia Moriarty, a resident of Montero for the past 18-plus years and a CPA with a professional practice located in South San Francisco in San Mateo County for the past more than 40 years. As such, I don't usually come to Half Moon Bay meetings. However, I am appalled at the speed and manner in which this decision has been made by the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors and attempted to be forced on the citizens of Half Moon Bay and indeed on the entire coast side without adequate vetting, due diligence, or resident taxpayer input. I think one open meeting with short notice just before the Thanksgiving holiday gives the appearance that this is a done-deal decision already having been made by the county supervisors and with the Half Moon Bay City Council in the role of making it look like citizens were consulted and then rubber-stamping the decision made across the hill by the board of supervisors. I'm aware that faulty decisions were made in Sacramento to waive normal zoning, environmental, and coastal review processes in order to facilitate exactly this kind of forcing Governor Newsom's program on communities. If normal procedures were followed, months, if not years, of planning would have been directed at just such a decision of this nature. Some of the questions that I would like answered are: When was this acquisition negotiation begun and by who? Why Half Moon Bay? Indeed, why the San Mateo coast? How many other San Mateo County motels have been consulted? Finally, as a person who makes a great effort to support local businesses in Half Moon Bay and on the coast, I know for me that my doing so will likely be altered if I can expect to be faced with the kind of possible crime and filth that San Mateo, that San Francisco has become famous for as a result of its following this kind of homeless program. I've already limited the amount I will expose myself to, no longer shopping at Safeway or CVS due to the approaches made at Strawflower by the homeless residing there behind Safeway. I do not believe that I'm alone in this decision process. Half Moon Bay businesses will be negatively impacted in addition to the city loss of tax revenues and the inevitable increased costs the city will incur if this program takes place. I strongly urge the city council, if it has any ability to do so, to reject this program and to seek other means of handling the homeless population here. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Marcia.
Sherry Mendez, you have two minutes.
Sure, I believe you're still on mute. Sure, I believe you're still on mute. I'll give you 10 seconds. All right, Sherry, we're gonna move on.
Aleen Sager, you have two minutes.
Yes, I'm a 11-year resident of Half Moon Bay, and I want to speak in support of this acquisition of the property. I commend the county for working so diligently under very difficult circumstances. This is an opportunity that we really can't afford not to take advantage of. The financial assistance from the federal government is critical. If we delay this, if the county delays this, nothing will happen for years because of the county's budgetary problems due to COVID. And I think we've got to take advantage of this to accomplish the goals that Eric DeBode so, so particularly spoke about. So I thank the county for their efforts, and I fully support the acquisition of the property.
All right.
Thank you.
Brian Douglas, you have two minutes.
Thanks, Jessica. I'd like to talk about process because I think others have spoken pretty well of the homeless. And let's assume that the homeless shelter is, is a good objective to do. On the process side, two things bother me. One is that we're using this AB 83 state initiative to get around normal zoning and public input because of the crisis, but the pandemic crisis isn't really being applied here. What we're really doing is buying a hotel. And I think that's a long-term, very different thing, and I think that's something that, you know, deserves public input. The other process part that a couple of people have alluded to is how do we buy a going business as a county? I've bought and sold a couple of businesses, and I, I understand how those markets normally work, and I'm trying to wrap my head around how would you do this as a government? And I had asked Don Horstley's office if they had an answer, and haven't heard from them yet. I'm sure the county manager may have an idea. Don may have an idea. But it seems to me that if this wasn't rushed and you wanted to buy an ongoing business, not just a piece of land and buildings, that you'd probably send RFPs to every mid-level hotel in the county and create markets. So those are the two questions that are top of mind to me, whether we go ahead with this or not. But I think that the process certainly needs some examination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lita Wallach, you have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Lita Wallach. I live in Half Moon Bay, and thank you for my, my two minute. And thank you to all the members of the county and the city for allowing this process tonight. I want to state upfront that I'm not against the intent. I'm against the selection of the hotel. So all the wonderful comments from all those amazing people who work in the field of helping the homeless, they are stating good things. It sounds like they are really trusted, knowledgeable individuals doing great work. So my hat is off to them. What I'm concerned about is something that Brian just mentioned, who spoke before me, is the process. And it is short-circuited. It's rushed, and it's not a process that makes me feel as a Half Moon Bay resident that I have a voice in my own community, and we have lost that voice. So again, I just want to reiterate, I am very much supportive of the intent. And like Brian mentioned and others before him, I would be just thrilled if this community stepped forward to look at how to handle the homeless in this community. And I understand we're missing, quote, that opportunity of this rushed, let's chase the federal dollars process. And I have worked in healthcare and public health for over 30 years, and I have seen a rushed process fail when money planning is set aside to chase the almighty dollar. And I'm just concerned
Thirty seconds.
about that. So again, I do want to reiterate, I am not sure. I've been checking about the, the school situation. There's three schools close by. There must be another alternative, but we must also address this issue, but not in this fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sam Modest, you have two minutes.
Hello, everybody. I am very, very grateful to get to be a part of this process. And I'm a resident and homeowner in Half Moon Bay on Cypress Avenue, so just a few blocks from where the coast side in is. And I'm calling in just to say how much I support what, what this initiative is outlining. I judge, I judge the strength of a community based on the well-being of the most vulnerable people within that community. Whether those are the students in my classroom, whether those are my friends on a hike, and whoever's going the slowest, we move at their pace, or if we're talking about as a whole town. And, and I see that the homeless residents in our town have the least, least services provided despite, you know, all the nonprofits and everyone who's done so much. They still, they still need so much, and this seems like an amazing opportunity to try to treat that need. And I, I'm really impressed with how, how much dedication I hear from so many of the council members on this issue and how many years they've put into this issue themselves. And I trust that this is a process and that by buying this hotel, we will continue to address the needs and the problems because I get that it's through a rush process, we're going to need to problem solve as we go. And, and I trust that the people involved are going to be able to do that. And, and I really appreciate the opportunity to share my, my feelings. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Phoebe Barelli? You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a resident and property owner on Kelly Avenue in Pillar Cedars, which is about a block away from the proposed site. And I want to vehemently state that I am in opposition to this program. And I am just incredulous that there has been no social, economic, or criminal impact studies done for this. And I feel that ramrodding this just because we're chasing federal dollars because it's free money doesn't mean that we're going to get it right. So I think everybody should take a seat and, and sit back and come up with a proper plan, and we can spend our money our way. So I am imploring the mayor and the council to oppose it, and if they must, litigate it. And I am also willing to put my hat in the ring to help oppose anybody that is a proponent of this in their next candidacy. And they can contact me at vic@vicborrelli.com. That's V I C at V I C B O R E L L I dot com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Allet Eisen, you have two minutes.
Yes, hi. Everybody, and I'm, I'm so glad that this got delayed rather than a decision finalized November 19th because obviously there was a need for a great deal of public input. Seven people at the last meeting was not enough to, you know, to give the county a sense of how people on the coast feel about this project. Honestly, I, you know, have mixed feelings because I, I do believe in the housing-first model. I just don't believe the housing first in Half Moon Bay because we are a very small community. When you're talking about places like Burlingame, Redwood City, et cetera, I mean, we're talking about thousands and thousands more people. We're talking about cities that have hospitals, places that are, you know, services and places that these people need. And we don't have it here. And so I feel that this is, yes, being rushed into, and of course, the money aspect of it is being rushed in. There are so many things about this, so many of the details that, you know, are not being addressed. Some of the speakers fortunately have asked some very important questions. I don't understand why you keep
Thirty seconds.
Temporary or transitional housing. What are you going to do with the people who are housed in this, who don't want to leave the coast, no matter what? They'll, they'll rather live in the creek. So this way, they have a room with a bathroom. They're on the coast. They've got what they need. They have three meals a day. They, they're not going to be leaving. And the idea of 50% employed at this Redwood City shelter, that's the problem. Putting people, homeless people in high-priced real estate does not speak to transitioning them to jobs and housing because what are they going to do? Of course, the 50% employed are still living at the shelter in, in Redwood City because as you said, they're not going to be able to afford housing in Redwood City, San Mateo, Half Moon Bay, or any of the places in San Mateo County. So yes, I agree with Anne Martin. This is a Band-Aid. And I don't think Gavin Newsom has done a good job when it comes to homelessness altogether. So yeah, that's where I'm coming from. It's, it's, it's a tough situation, no question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Juan Castillo, you have two minutes.
Hey, good evening. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So just wanted to, my, my wife and I moved, moved to Half Moon Bay in Miramar approximately two years ago. I am currently in law enforcement in the Bay Area, and I, I actually am detailed to a homeless unit within this large department. And needless to say, I do have some concerns. The, the unit I'm on was a voluntary unit. So I, I, you know, I, I left normal patrol to make a difference in other ways as a police officer. I wanted to, you know, be able to connect people with, you know, who are struggling and not necessarily, in my opinion, handcuffs and jail time is not always the solution. That being said, a, a facility of this size and, and with the speed it's going, I understand the constraints that, you know, the city and county are working on. I just feel like it's being rushed. The, the infrastructure I don't think is here, you know, I, I know everyone wants to kind of dismiss the, the police aspect to it as a, you know, police will be there. And we'll have the police, or we don't need the police. You know, I beg to differ. Uh, you know, we have two ways in and two ways out. We don't have a hospital on the coast. You know, if, if an officer has to 5150 somebody, that takes them off the streets for, you know, a few hours at minimum to do with that issue. If there's a major assault, someone spoke about what happened in San Jose. You know, back, you know, a few weeks ago, you know, it, it can change, it can change the gravitude, the gravity of the outcome of the, the party, all parties involved. It changes charges from, you know, assault to possibly murder, you know, not having
Thirty seconds.
Facilities on the coast to, uh, to support, uh, an incident of that matter. Now, do I think it's going to happen all the time? And does it happen all the time? No. But there, there's always that, you know, coming again with the law enforcement background and, and my experience, it does happen. So, you know, that, that's just something I wanted to bring up and, and why I'm not necessarily opposed to helping the, the homeless. But as this plan is constructed now, I, I do have my concerns about the execution and the longevity and the safety of, of everyone involved.
Thank you.
Victoria Asfor, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Eisen, members of the council. My name is Victoria Asfor and I'm the program director for the homeless outreach team at Life Moves. Thank you for the opportunity to address the accusation of Coastide Inn. I oversee the homeless outreach team that consists of six case managers serving all San Mateo County, including a case manager that serves Half Moon Bay. We collaborate with our community partners and local stakeholders to support our clients in the community. Our outreach efforts include locating and connecting clients to resources to meet their needs with the end goal of moving clients towards self-sufficiency and permanent housing. Our experiences tell us that our clients enjoy greater success when they have access to resources and case management services in a shelter setting in the very community that they call home and are familiar with. We have also found that are most likely to accept services and comply with their caselands when they feel safe in a stable situation. The Coastside Inn would provide many individuals the opportunity to escape homelessness and get off the streets. And at the same time, these individuals will have access to services that will enhance their transition to permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much for the time and for your commitment to this issue. I'm also a resident and homeowner near the proposed site and I fully support this initiative. I'm an elementary school educator and this year in particular with our students, we speak all the time about community and how we care for all those in our community, especially those in need. And in the pandemic, this has just been accentuated. And one of the greatest silver linings we've been able to point out to our students has been the recognition, the lesson of seeing a deeper commitment to how we show up for our community, how we show up for each other, how we recognize vulnerability and support those in greater need. Whether that means sheltering in place to support those in our greater community, whether that means bringing food to neighbors who have to quarantine or who are struggling because of the economic impacts, or supporting kids who can't go to school directly, whether that means providing shelter for those who are in greatest need. And those who are homeless right now are truly those in greatest need. There is an urgency. And, and I also would say, uh, we speak so often and there's such an importance to seeing beyond stereotypes and assumptions that so often come with poverty and homelessness. Poverty and homelessness do not equal criminal action. And I would just urge us all to really think as, as an educator, I have thought so often about who, how I want to be remembered for how I act during this time of this pandemic. We are called at this time to think about that. And I want you to know that when my children were toddlers, I lived as a direct neighbor of a transitional housing project. And this was a housing project that would take those who take in those who could not find refuge elsewhere. And I was a teacher in, within a block of the same transitional housing space. And this was not a place of violence. It was a transformational space. It allowed people to live with basic resources and the dignity to work towards independence. And that is what happened time and time again. People found their way off the streets. People found their way out of prisons, into housing, into jobs, into new lives, into second chances. Often the, the reasons they ended up in a position of homelessness was out of their control or a mistake they made when they were very young. And they learned and they became such incredible members of our community, contributing members. And I would say, at the same time, these services did not draw down the gifts of our community. They didn't threaten our local tourism. Instead, it, they transformed the lives of numerous people. And, and there was an economic benefit for our community because of the costs of the services. And, and maybe much more, there was sort of a, a, a deeper transformation for those in our, in our community that were affected. I would just say one more time, we are in a pandemic. There is true urgency. And I, I really appreciate the, the call to not only move quickly with this initiative, but to keep the spotlight on this initiative, to make sure that this is a time that we act and we act fast and we put this in place and we take pride in who we are as a community. Because even as a small town, let me tell you, there was so much pride we could put in being a part of this community in this way. And let's keep the pressure on. And continue to let this be who we are.
All right. Let's move on. Thank you.
Brian or Christina Kates, you have two minutes.
Just like, would like to thank first of all, all the people that have commented before us. And thank you for Mr. Supervisor Horstley for staying on. Regrettably, the county manager who presented to us is no longer, I don't see him on, but had just a couple of questions. I mean, first of all, I, I, I see how the funds are being used under the, the guidance of, of COVID-19. Um, and I'm, I'm a little bit confused about, you know, I, I get that the homeless are vulnerable. But I haven't heard anything about the 3,000 plus students in the Cabrillo district that haven't been in school for seven plus months. And I think that money could be repurposed a little bit better. The other unanswered question that I didn't see in the planner, and thank you, Mr. Horstley, for responding to my wife's email earlier this, today, was the long-term plan. What, after COVID, what, what's the plan? And then, you know, again, um, I get that there's a, a preference to people on the coast side. But that didn't necessarily eliminate the possibility of people coming in from over the hill. And, uh, you know, again, um, under, understand that people don't want to be relocated. So what happens to those folks that if we do bring people in from over the hill? You know, what do, to, to another person's point earlier, does our homeless population increase unfortunately as a result of this plan? Those are my questions and I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lynette Kerthoyes, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I am a resident of Half Moon Bay and I've lived on the coast for 24 years and I live less than a mile from the Coastside Inn. My kids went to Hatch and I've got one at Cunha. And I would really love this, this opportunity to express my support for this project. I know the timeline is rushed and that is difficult, but it's rushed because we have this opportunity and need to act. I am so grateful that the county is including the coast in its efforts to reach its compassionate goal of zero homeless residents in the county. And I'm just confident in our town that we can work together to address the valid community concerns and work together to take advantages of, of this opportunity and take care of our homeless residents. I'm also confident we can hold the county to their commitment through, we've got smart attorneys, if we need an MOU, whatever it is, to get the commitment to take the necessary tasks, to work with our local nonprofits, to provide the necessary support services. And I just, I, I have high confidence that we can work out the details and take advantage of this opportunity that we've really had a hard time doing on our own. We haven't been able to find this level of solution. And it may not be perfect, but I think it has the opportunity to be a great resource for our community. I appreciate everyone's remarks and I 100% agree that providing housing first is the way to start with addressing the many complex. And I really appreciate Matthew Tragister's
Thirty seconds.
Individual challenges of these people who have all their own individual issues. And the very first thing we need is a roof over their heads and a place to rest and be safe. So thank you for the opportunity to support this project.
All right. Thank you.
Mary Bernier, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to speak to Mark and Ann and Donald and Maria and Lita. I hope this makes some sense and doesn't sound too self-contained or whatever. In the past six months, you may have seen a woman passing out flyers advertising the free COVID testing in town to folks who are most at risk to get the disease, our Latino community. If you use the Main Street Higgins Canyon Road entrance onto Highway One, you may have noticed four good handmade poster board signs warning drivers of the danger of getting onto Highway One because smaller cars heading north are hidden by the newly erected concrete barriers. There was an almost fatal accident there two weeks ago. These are worthwhile services similar to others I've done since 64. Although I have an MPH because of my volunteer work, I was homeless on and off for about 10 years. I, um, I don't know, but Don Horstley, I'm grateful for your help before, sir. I used to come with you trying to save those floating homes in Dock Town. And believe it or not, I'm still a teeny bit at it, but more focused now on the COVID. I just, I just hope people realize that because a person is homeless does not mean they're worthless. There's a whole hell of a lot of reasons how people get to be homeless. And, and you've just got to keep your heart and, and, and believe that. And I know it's easy to get scared of stuff that we don't know about. But I've lived in my car a lot. I, as
Thirty seconds.
Thanks, hon. As Supervisor Horstley knows, Dock Town Marina was right next to the Maple Street homeless shelter. I got to know a lot of the people in the shelter. There was a lot of really great people there, exactly as was said, 50% of whom are working, essential workers. Please, please don't be frightened, frightened of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Justine Kimball, you have two minutes.
Hi, um, thank you. I'm a Half Moon Bay resident and I grew up here and attended the local schools. Like many of the comments that you've heard, I also have mixed feelings. But I also, that include a lot of concerns. I'll make my comments really brief and focus on the one major concern that I have, which is bringing in non-coastide homeless to the coast. A quote from Supervisor Horstley stated that 11% of the homeless live on the coast side already, despite only having 7% of the county population. This to me means that the coast side is already shouldering a larger proportion of the homeless in San Mateo County. I'm concerned that bringing in and housing non-local homeless to the coast will result in an increase of homelessness to the coast as they transition out of temporary housing and are unable to find jobs or permanent housing. There's already a scarcity of jobs, services, healthcare, infrastructure and housing on the coast. So it doesn't seem like the ideal location to be increasing the number of homelessness. In my opinion, every community should address their own homeless and transporting them to another community doesn't make any sense and shifts the burden unfairly to those communities that don't have the political clout to resist. The comments that I've heard in support of this plan have all addressed the local homelessness population. And I believe that we have a duty there. But some of them even want, they said that
Thirty seconds.
That the coastal homeless didn't want to go over the hill to the shelter. So I don't understand why we should expect the bayside homeless to want to come to the coast. So my suggestion would be that if this plan goes forward, only coastal homeless be eligible. And then I would also like to suggest that you allow dogs and families if it does go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Owens, you have two minutes.
Yeah, hi. My name is Pat Owens. Thanks for letting, uh, let me talk. So I, I guess I have a few questions. One of the questions I had is, when is the county, because the city doesn't seem to have any say in this. When is the county going to share the protocol or the decision matrix for who can and who cannot stay at the shelter? So that would be one question. Boy, I'd love to hear your response, Supervisor Horstley. But this isn't real time in a way. I'd like to thank David at the beginning for letting me know that, uh, that this is not a voting session. I, I think the, the responses have been pretty, pretty evenly heard that you've got a large, large group of folks that are doing unbelievably selfless work in trying to help the homeless population. And you've got a lot of, lot of Half Moon Bay residents who I do believe, if you were to have a poll right now, that this, and, and this was put to the vote, that it would not pass. Now, that's not how we work. We've elected you fine people in the county to make this decision.
Thirty seconds.
But I have to say that there's just so many different things that, that haven't been addressed. There's so many concerns that I just have to say that this is, I think, ill-conceived and should not be put through. So thanks for hearing me out. Listen to your voters. Take it easy.
All right. Thanks. And Pat, just a reminder, uh, we will be getting answers at the end of all these, all these comments and questions.
So, yeah, understood, but it's, it's really, you know, again, you have to under, you know, agree that this is not a give and take format. It's a very difficult thing to get that kind of through. Anyway, thanks a lot. I've taken people's time.
Whoever is on is Life Moves. You have two minutes.
Thanks, Jessica. This is Bruce Ives. I'm on my work account. I'm the CEO at Life Moves. As many of you know, we're the largest provider of homeless shelter and services in Silicon Valley. We have a number of shelters that we're operating on the bayside. And as you heard earlier tonight, we partner with the county to run the homeless outreach teams across San Mateo County, including on the coast side. And what we know from over 40 years of experience in San Mateo County is that temporary shelters and interim housing sites, like the one that's being proposed for the Coastside Inn, can be run very safely and very effectively. And a site like this would be a huge benefit to the Half Moon Bay community because it would allow for prioritizing local people who are already living in Half Moon Bay unsheltered to get services. And it would thereby reduce emergency calls that can be generated repeatedly for folks who are living unsheltered in a community. We know from our work with the city of Half Moon Bay on the former encampment behind the Safeway, that a safe location like the Coastside Inn would reduce health and safety risks for clients and for the community. And having a central location would allow for really easy collaboration with coast side service providers. Folks we already work with, like the wonderful people at Abundant Grace who work with Eric DeBode there, or the folks at Coastside Hope. And the city of Half Moon Bay itself, which has been a great partner with us in the fight against homelessness. Moon Bay itself, which has been a great partner with us in the fight against homelessness. We operate the hot team on the
Thirty seconds.
Heard, and we know how much the people we serve there would benefit from this. And I think it's been said before too, a site like this would not just be an overnight shelter, but it would really be a program that would return people to stable housing and self-sufficiency. And that means as people move back to housing, you could turn the room over and serve more people. It would not be unrealistic to see 100 or 150 clients served in the first year alone at a site like this. So, we think that a site with 24/7 staffing and security, rules of behavior, with case management, and good neighborhood relations can really make a visible impact on homelessness in Half Moon Bay. And we'll do all that we can to support the site and make it successful for the entire community. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dan Hagerty, you have two minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for, uh, opportunity to speak. I want to, um, my name's Dan Hagerty. I live in El Granada. I want to make it very clear that I totally support providing services to our local homeless community. I am not sure what is the best approach for these services at this time. And I understand that there's a wide variety of needs. What I'd like to see is a comparison of costs of different approaches to this issue in addition to the overall cost of the current plan. I believe that the homeless need will be increasing in the coming months. And I'd like to feel that whatever plan is decided on will be able to accommodate the future needs at a cost-effective model. I've learned about some different homeless help models in Oregon and other states, um, you know, that have the residents help with basic responsibilities at a lower cost. One example in mind is squareonevillage.com, I'm sorry, dot org, squareonevillage.org. That's just one example. There's a lot of different models out there. I'm very concerned with the deadline of this CARES Act funds. Please ask for an extension so that our community can plan this out better.
Thirty seconds.
So that our community can plan this out better as a community and understand the overall costs involved specifically for sustainability, to be able to, there's going to be all kinds of other needs coming in the future. So, we need to move forward at a sustainable, um, approach. You know, I'd like to see that the best decision can be made by our community. And by this rush mode, it's, it's not really allowing for the complete input from, from the complete community. I believe that the federal government, the state government, and the county government has known about the needs to provide services for the homeless for a long time. There is, it's not, it's, 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 they didn't learn this last night. So, um, you know, there, there, there should be no need for a deadline. They, they have the responsibility
Dan, Dan, thank you.
The state and county has the responsibility to provide funds for these services. I, 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 I don't believe that the deadline is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Annam Tara, you have two minutes.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, I'd like to first thank you for your time. I am really happy to be able to speak with all of you. I am a high school student and I live just blocks away from the proposed site. Like many have already said, I think this is an opportunity that is necessary, that we just cannot take for granted. We need to show up for our fellow community members. I think I've heard a lot about this, like, possible financial burden, and I think that's one that we just cannot let outweigh the value of this opportunity. I think we owe it to our community members to give the support where it's needed. And I'm not going to go into any specific points, but I did want to address some points that I've heard made by other speakers. So, first of all, I think that Mark described this kind of facility as an abuse of power. I'd rather like to turn that around and argue that rather than it being an abuse of power to put this in place, we as privileged community members with homes, with access to these services already, it is an abuse of our power to not take on this opportunity, to not provide these same services and opportunities to our fellow community members. Secondly, I would like to add that each of these individuals, the reasons behind their homelessness are unique. And like I think others have said, we as a community cannot criminalize these individuals. We know nothing about their specific situations or their histories. And then I also heard Marcia mention a concern
Thirty seconds.
Not hearing any voices of specific citizens. So, I would like to speak to your concern and say that as a citizen, I am directly in support of this and will do everything in my power to make sure this is a success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rosalyn Ramsey. Rosalyn? There you go.
Okay, um, you know, I just want to say I'm a 40-year resident at Half Moon Bay and I went to high school here and I'm very, very proud of the city council and I'm proud of the county for addressing this issue. It's a long time coming. I'm in full support of it. I live in Miramar. I was in full support of it being at the Quality Inn, if that's where it needed to be. You know, it did come on very quickly and I understand people's concern about that, but we do have $20 million to put towards a huge problem in our community and every single one of us citizens have a responsibility to take care of all of our members of this community. And I am just thrilled that we are finally addressing this. And, um, the homeless people in this community, um, some of them grew up in this community. Some of them went to high school in this community. Some of them have lived here a very long time. And, um, our community, we want everyone to be, um, to look at Half Moon Bay and say, wow, look at this great job they're doing for every member of their community. Thank you so much and continue the good work.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Virginia Turzen, you have two minutes.
Thank you and good evening. I thank you all for the thoughtful presentations, which addressed many of the key issues. And I'm pleased that, that an organization is experienced in shelter and housing as Life Moves will be closely involved. The homeless are in our community now and have been for some time. It is our responsibility to figure out how to make this work for the benefit of the homeless and Half Moon Bay residents. I am a nearby resident to the coast side inn in Arletter Park for the past eight years. Each community must do its fair share. If not for the grace of God, this could be any one of us. We must open our hearts. A solution is long overdue and as this is happening, we should focus on ensuring the county covers all costs and addresses the concerns of coast side residents as much as possible. There's never a perfect solution and federal funds are available to address this problem. Despite all of the good intentions of community members and various organizations, this is the first attempt at an actual solution. I strongly wish to state this should only be for our coast side homeless population. The unfortunate reality is this is a fait accompli in a compressed timeframe, so we must work to make it as strong as possible. And I thank Don Horsley and our city council members for opening this up to us in such a short timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Marina Balakina, you have two minutes. Marina?
Marina, we'll give you five seconds and, uh, move onward. All right, next.
Okay, Anne Green, go ahead.
Hi, um, okay. City council members, city councilor-elect, city manager, deputy city mayor, and city attorney, I've emailed every single one of you and the entire San Mateo County Board of Supervisors regarding my concerns and opposition to the county's purchase of the coast side inn. The only one of you to even acknowledge receiving my email is the current mayor, Adam Eisen. That speaks volumes to how much you value the opinion of your constituents. Your job is to represent and protect the interests of those who elected you into office. To say I'm disappointed in the lack of response from you would be an understatement paid staff and elected officials alike. I just want to say that the Pacifica homeless that have been mentioned several times in the homeless count are a completely different community and not considered part of the coast from Ontario to Pescadero. And I also think that we should discount all of the comments and commercials from the Life Moves employees on this call. They're not coast side residents. They'll financially benefit from this purchase and the potential contract they're winning. And honestly, they're just mouthpieces in this conversation. I'd like to know who informed you all of this call and invited so many of you to speak and take a valuable time from the actual stakeholders here, the residents and taxpayers. I grew up on the coast. My parents moved here in 1986 when I was four years old. After college, I chose to move back to the coast because the community in a safe and small environment that I wanted to raise a family in, and I purchased a home here. The key components of that statement are safe and small. We simply do not have the infrastructure to run a transitional housing center
Thirty seconds.
We have no hospital, so at any given time, we have one ambulance. Our limited share of presence is already spread thin. The county has given nothing but empty promises. They allegedly will pay for wraparound services, but with no plan. They allegedly will work hand in hand with local agencies that house our homeless population, but again, no details. The location is within two blocks of three different schools and a Boys and Girls Club is absolutely inappropriate. Kids are our most vulnerable population and subjecting them to the potentially unknown, unvetted, and unpredictable population is inconscionable. We keep talking about a vulnerable population and you're forgetting and neglecting them. Our future is a hotel in the epicenter of our schools, the right place to put a large homeless population? I encourage all of you to please read the email I took the time to send you in order to read more reasons why I oppose the county's purchase of the shelter. Please follow through with your elected duty and represent the interests of the overwhelming majority of coast side residents, not just the few speaking on this call who oppose the county's purchase of the coast side inn for a homeless shelter. That's it.
Thank you.
Jennifer Jay, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer and I moved to the coast a year ago. Thank you for the time that we speak. I didn't prepare a statement, but I learned a lot from this conversation. I really appreciate everyone's comments and also presentations the gentlemen's have done. I learned a lot. Thank you for that. First, let me say that I support the community's effort to address the homeless issue in the coastal area, but at the same time, I oppose this, this purchase because like everyone, like a lot of people said, it is too rushed. And I, I believe, just like one of the gentlemen said, there's so many different reasons why some people become homeless in a period of life. It could be some families, you know, lost their job, get kicked out of their Palmer. It could be someone with mental issues. It could be someone saying that they prefer the outdoor, carefree lifestyle. So, what exactly are this facility going, who is going, this facility is going to help? I really want to see more studies about the coast side homeless population. I think they are different versus say over the hill, you know, homeless population in Palo Alto or in Redwood City. So, rush through this purchase and, and it's million dollar, over a million dollar. When I buy my house, it take a lot of consideration, different evaluation. I just don't know if any other facilities has been considered.
Thirty seconds.
We should match whatever facilities we choose to the needs of the coast side, you know, homeless population to really solve the issue. We should invest the public's funds to do, do good projects, not feel-good projects. And this project so far, I, I feel it's more like feel-good. We did something, but do we really solve the issue here on the coast side? I, I just, I'm not convinced. That's why I hope we don't rush to the conclusion, maybe lease the property versus buying a property could be one solution. So, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
GB, you have two minutes.
Hi, this is Gina. I live in the Highland Pacific Ridge area. I oppose this very negligent plan. I speak as a realist, not from, from personal experience, not from the need to win, as I think our first resident speaker stated, not from virtue signaling, not from an organization who will benefit from this transaction such as Life Moves, who was on this call, and clearly a conflict of interest, not from the desire to unload a property or to partake in a federal fund's grab. I have a drug-addicted brother who has been in and out of homeless facilities for more than 25 years. It is a revolving door process and my argument is about the majority who do not rehabilitate, especially those who don't follow the rules. Many, not all of the homeless are mentally ill and self-medicating. Building upon Joaquin's opioid drug concern, the non-rehabilitative ones are most often on hard drugs and leave the hotels on their own accord to avoid confinement and take back to the freedom of the streets. It is proven it causes littering in the streets, the creek, shops, alleys, door fronts, beach fronts, et cetera, with feces, rolls of toilet paper, and tents. They are then returned to the street with, and those empty beds are filled with those who are next on the list. Rinse and repeat. These hotels become a haven for locals to get and sell drugs in the vicinity, not just to the occupants and the locals, like school-aged kids. To that, I say the neighborhoods and residents' families will be left managing your irreversible mess. Once my brother was removed from a home, back on the street, breaking into cars, stores to get his next fix, this would real, would ultimately result in an arrest and back in jail sobriety, then back in the hotel, rinse and repeat. He's been in, in and out of 50-plus hotels, jail stays, and rarely left the town from which he was once located. The homeless masses and worsens, and worse for the residents both short, or worse for the residents both short and long term. How many children at the adjoining schools less than a mile away who will be negatively impacted and is it worth the risk? I can foresee this costing not only the residents, but the city and county more than the initial cost benefit as residents and business owners will group together to review and retain counsel and other concerned residents doing a mass exit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you have two minutes.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Brian McNamara. I've been a resident in the coast for 50 years. I run professional rental property for Mr. Joseph Kocchet. We were talking about this. The things that came up is, like I hear from almost everyone I've spoken today, everybody wants to do something to help the people who are homeless. That's a given. The question about what I'm hearing today is, is this the right location and is it being done correctly or is it too rushed? As Life Moves guy said, there's probably 150 people going to go through there in the first year. There are about 50 homeless people on the coast. Pacifica is not our community, so it's not really fair to talk about them as being coastal residents. If you put this near the schools, you will have ongoing problems with people complaining and protesting it. Half Moon Bay's infrastructure might support Half Moon Bay's infrastructure might support a purchase of a smaller facility. For instance, the Millrose Inn was for sale. It's about nine or 10 units. It has the kitchen. That would have been a more proper sized property to purchase. It would have been, could have been run by Half Moon Bay had they gotten together and done the Home Key project themselves. Now you're going to have a county project being run here with no end game. I implore the city council members to say, county, please don't do this. Let us do our own program. If you're going to put this in place, put it on the ballot three years from now to see if it's still working so the Half Moon Bay residents can put in their own input. Help the homeless, but work for your own constituents as well. 2,000 people almost have signed a petition. That's an enormous amount of people to get a petition signed in three days on a holiday weekend. It reflects the views and feelings of your local coast side constituents. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeff? Jeff, you have two minutes.
I think he's gone. Jeff, are you there? Yeah, cut him off. Next.
Okay, Megan Ray, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you guys for working late into the evening to listen to all of us. I'm Megan Ray. I live in El Cese, Lorraine, just a few blocks from the proposed site. I, I do think I want to kind of go back up to their 3,000-foot level. This is a county decision, and what the city council has to do is to fulfill its fiduciary duty to the city. And it has certain courses of action. One is to put as much pressure and leverage on the county to make this work, to do the things that the county has promised, to focus on the unhoused in Half Moon Bay first, to make sure that there's operational oversight, to make sure that there's input on the selection of the providers, to work on some kind of commitment on the financial impact, which is not insignificant, but it is not overwhelming. I, I love the idea of a community advisory committee. I think what I'm really hearing from people are the parade of horribles. There's a parade of horribles that we could all imagine in our minds as to what could happen, but there's literally people sleeping outside right now, and it's 41 degrees in our creeks. I love the environmental impact that one of the professors brought up. I love to hear from the students and the teachers about the compassion. So here's what I hear. There's a lack of trust with certain members of your community. It's very overblown because take with a grain of salt, as you all well know, polls online. And there's transparency issues. There's still a misunderstanding with respect to the rush because of the mandate under the CARES Act, which is going to disappear, and this community is not going to come up with $20 million probably in my lifetime. But there needs to be more transparency as you move forward, both with respect to the costs of what unhoused people mean to us today, which are very, very significant, as well as crime and safety today and going forward, success rates today and going forward, impact on the environment, et cetera. Finally, I would just say, please, listen to your city attorney. Do not waste any money on, on, you know, law, on lawsuits that are going to go nowhere. We're here to help, and I hope that this is a success, and I hope we can all come back together to make this work. You need transparency and trust. And finally, please look at your, your position on ADU units. It's probably not in compliance with state law. So that we, we still have to build a lot of affordable units in the coast. This is just the first phase because evictions and unemployment money running out, this crisis is just going to increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denton, you have two minutes.
Hi, thanks for taking the time. Can you hear me?
A little bit, yeah. It's a little low.
I'm a resident in the Miramar neighborhood, and my home value would have been destroyed by the conversion of the Quality Inn, as will the values of those people in El Cese, Lorraine. I realize my situation has changed, but I'm opposed to the homeless shelter on the coastal community for its lack of supportive and necessary recovery opportunities like jobs. Number one, Carly Bach gave a presentation on contact tracing at the beginning of this talk. It was well put together, articulate, cogent. Plans for positive COVID quarantine food health responses. Mike Callagie then gave a presentation on the homeless proposal with suggestions and ideas on how to manage his homeless, this homeless shelter. Don Horsley said he's been working on the homeless problem for 10 years. Yet the presentation was without concrete recommendations, hollow and comparable. 10 years of experience with homelessness versus nine months of experience with COVID made with professional precision, you all saw it. Number two, the city and county can fix things. The problems keep mounting, and we heard from Joaquin Jimenez and Kent Miller, who both called to identify a lethal drug addiction problem, opioids and fentanyl. The councilmen sat there stone-faced, people dying. You're going to solve a problem of homelessness that the entire state of California hasn't solved within the last decade. The state and most proximate, the city of San Francisco, has failed in a global fashion. I don't want to be negative, but I'm just pointing these are free. I have a child with special needs. The local community could not and would not compensate or help. We, my wife, spent 10 years driving over the hill to support, find supportive services. There was no quitting. There was no option for failure. It was incredibly expensive. It was painful and took outrageous commitment. But I would not expect a public servant to follow through on the needs of someone with special mental services. The services were not available on this side of the coast. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charles Nelson, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Charles Nelson. My wife and I are fortunate to live in a home at 141 Kelly Avenue in Half Moon Bay. Yes, around the corner from the Coastside Inn. I'm calling to say yes in my backyard. Thank you for considering this partial solution to this critical issue. I strongly support it. I urge my fellow citizens to consider people who would live in this hotel as their brothers and sisters and not as a threat. Homelessness is not a moral condition. Let's help them get out of the bushes in the middle of this winter, in the middle of this pandemic, and give them a roof over their heads and a roadmap back into society. I applaud you, our leaders in the county. You've had the courage to follow through with this. And I just wanted to be a cheerleader tonight and say thank you. And you'll back my time.
Caitlin Mack, you have two minutes.
Hi, yes, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I support this proposal and at the same time have a couple long-term requests that I believe the county needs to consider to assure a positive outcome for our city, as an earlier caller spoke to. Also, I want to say I was really moved by the words of Juan Gustilo, and hope you revisit and really let them soak in. One is that having moved here from over the hill, the realization that we do have inadequate coastal infrastructure when it comes to medical and public safety. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that's been taken about how to care and support our adults and young people who are living on the coast side without stable housing. Some of the rules that have been mentioned about what will allow people to stay on site means that residents who are using, have drug addiction will be pushed outside the immediate hotel grounds and potentially push them to use on trails and in the tunnels places that all of us have traveled, sometimes with our children. Guests from out of town over this past holiday weekend recently witnessed someone garnishing a small machete, cutting through the brush as they walked to downtown. And my, my real concern, and I think a concern that many people share, is that we begin to concentrate residents with addiction problems and that really need mental health treatment and medical treatment, and we have no anger hospital on the coast. I would like assurance that the county will provide easy access to medical treatment for addiction and be responsible outside of the immediate vicinity of the hotel. Lastly, I would like the county to think not just about the transient tax, but the opportunity cost of moving a hotel, of, of the cost of purchasing a hotel or supporting the development of a hotel, high-quality coast side hotel on the coast. While the Coastside Inn may not have been that, if the county purchases Coastside Inn, it should be required to put money toward a proper high-quality hotel development in a prime downtown commercial location.
Chris Cher, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I, I do, do support this program. I, I think the housing-first model has been a model that has shown success. So I, I think that's a good way to approach this. What I do not support is that this may possibly turn into a magnet for other homeless from other area, homeless from other areas of the county. I don't think that's an acceptable option for our small community. I, I would like to see it opened up to include families as well as individuals. We do have families who are dealing with housing issues. We do have families who lost their home during recent fires. And, and so I'd like to see this opened up to the families that we have here on the coast side. I believe in the notion of we, we take care of our own. I do apologize. I, I came in a little bit late, so I don't know if the lost revenue from this motel was, was spoken about. But I wonder how the city may recoup any of that lost revenue. And the last thing is I wonder how we as a community would be able to exit this program if if it proves to be unsuccessful. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Aisha Barrow, you have two minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Aisha Barrow, and I'm a longtime resident of Half Moon Bay and a leader with some coast side, coast side families taking action. I've been in Half Moon Bay for the last 11 years, and I live only a mile away from the proposed development. I'm also a mom, who just like everyone else here, is concerned about the safety and character of the town I love. I am originally from an underdeveloped country, and I find it pretty regrettable that in the richest nation in the world and on the richest corner of this nation, there has to be so much debate about whether or not we should be housing 52 homeless individuals or 0.004% of the 13,000 residents of Half Moon Bay. As if that 0.004% had the power to change the soul and character of this community. When I look at this problem, just strictly from a philosophical standpoint, there is not a single doubt in my mind, not a single hesitation that it's the right thing to do. But I'll also admit that I had fears like everybody else, because I'm human, and this is right in my backyard. And I have some questions about who is going to reside there, who is going to be in such close proximity to the schools that my daughter might be attending next year, whether I'm going to have to worry about the, her stepping on needles or encountering drug dealers. So these are legitimate questions that I have and that a lot of the members of the community have as well. So the, the county has addressed a lot of my concerns, but I have some outstanding questions as well that I would like to see the county address. Specifically, as many people have already said, I would like to ask them to consider housing families as well. There are many local farm workers who could benefit from this. I understand that the facilities may need to be retrofitted, but families should absolutely be a long-term goal, especially near schools, and I guarantee you that there is a need. I also urge the county to appropriately screen all the residents of this facility. I would like background checks to make sure that we don't have sex offenders or violent criminals near schools. So in the end, I'm in support of this development because it's not only the right thing to do for equity, but also housing and sheltered in our community makes us all safer. So with that, I would like to say that I know that all the people who oppose this, there is nothing that I can say, there is nothing that anybody else can say that is going to convince them otherwise. But I urge the county and the city to partner together to execute this well, because that is the only thing that is going to bring the community on board with this. And finally, I want to say thank you to the city of Half Moon Bay and to the council members. They have handled the community opposition with great grace and have been highly responsive. I ask the county to continue to keep them at the center of all decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aisha.
Maureen Fleming, you have two minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I am here tonight. Good evening, I will say. I am here tonight to express my opposition to any hotels being acquired to house the homeless. This proposal by the county is so short-sighted and not thought out well. COVID-19 is the excuse. The acquisition of these hotels has nothing to do with COVID, the virus. We are a small community with limited resources. To introduce more homeless people into this coast side would have devastating long-term effects. Our community already has its challenges with a high immigrant population. We already have people here who are mentally ill. Damaged brains are very difficult to cure or fix. A wooden structure such as a hotel does not cure mental illness or antisocial behavior. If homeless hotels are acquired, I envision a community with more tent cities, more needles on the beaches, more garbage waste and human feces, more drugs, more alcohol abuse, more shoplifting, more smashed car windows and petty crimes, more panhandling, more tourists being victimized, and a loss and a loss in property values. In short, I envision the diminution in the quality of coast side life. On the staff report, there is mention of the library in close proximity to the Coastside Inn. Has anyone on the council or at the county seen what the homeless have done to the beautiful San Francisco main library? They have, they have guards and policemen there at the entrances, in the halls, and by the restrooms. The beautifully upholstered chairs in that library where you may choose to sit on for research or reading are occupied by unclean, diseased, sleeping homeless people. We have co-aid bathrooms at the beautiful Half Moon Bay library. Do you want your little girls and boys to use that library now to encounter these people either inside the library or outside the library as they proceed to walk home? Job creating, profit-making, small and big enterprise on the coast needs to be encouraged and fostered. This includes hotels that provide jobs, generates profits, adds values to the tax base, and enhances a tourist experience here. The COVID and homeless hotel madness has got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Freeland, you have two minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brian Freeland. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. Thank you for taking my comment. For myself, I don't think it's so much a question of whether there should be a shelter or not. I believe with well-thought-out planning and preparation, with broad community input and education, this project could be successful and help those that stand in need to get back on their feet. I'm voicing my opposition to the manner in which this proposal is moving forward. This is a proposal done with minimal community input during a pandemic where we are reliant on an online forum. Not everyone in the community has the internet. Some of my neighbors are retirees without internet. Not everyone in the community has the internet. Some of my neighbors are retirees without internet access, and they have voiced their concerns to me about this proposal. I don't believe that because it's an abnormal time that due diligence should be rushed, nor do I believe that having money burning a hole in your pocket is a reason to push through proposals in a way that wouldn't otherwise be done. Given the recognition from the county that this is a controversial proposal, one would think that an extra measure of judiciousness and education to the broad community would be required. Not a couple of city council meetings where input consists of a tiny percentage of the voting population. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Beverly Garrity, you have two minutes.
Yes. Hello. Thank you, San Mateo County Representatives, Half Moon Bay City Representatives, and members of the coast side. I'm Beverly Garrity, Chair of the Coastal Design Review and a community member. This is certainly an effort with honorable intentions. The coastside homeless are members of our community. They are members in need. Matthew Childister has made a big promise by saying the city has found a way to cure the disease of homelessness versus just addressing the symptoms. I think the issue of transparency is is in the fore, and if there could be a plan articulated in these terms that it's a way to cure the disease of homelessness versus just addressing the symptoms, articulated, communicated to the public, this would be very helpful. I'd like to thank Ken Coles from the Office of Human Services for putting together the Frequently Asked Questions document. This was very helpful, and I think this strategic direction of presenting FAQs as the plan is developed would be very helpful for the community. Members of Life Moves, Brian Greenberg and Bruce Ives have talked about the proven track record. I think it's in their best interest and
Thirty seconds.
of our community that we understand the specific data that demonstrates this efficacy and not just good marketing on the part of Life Moves. I would also like to know if pets would be allowed in the shelter program, and I am encouraged to see that the feasibility of this program may also be able to serve families. Mental health has been emphasized. I think that's an important wraparound service to emphasize for the mental safety, security, dignity that would allow our homeless population through this vehicle to become contributing members of our community. One more very quick question would be, is it possible, when the valuation of this property becomes known, for these funds to be paid to the seller, but then in a deal where there might be overage for the seller to then redistribute these funds back to the county slash city for the wraparound services? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elena, you have two minutes.
Elena, you're still on mute.
Elena?
Give her 10 seconds. Elena, you're still on mute. Can you unmute her, Jessica? Do you have the ability?
It doesn't work.
Doesn't work, okay. Done, move on.
Okay.
I think she just got off. Go ahead, Elena.
Elena?
Good, good. We got you. Go for it.
So I would like to address a couple of points that's already come in my mind. Number one, first, nobody who opposes this project thinks all homeless is bad people. No way. We know it's different. We have wonderful people who wanted to go back to their life. But statistic is statistic. Math is the science. So even in our Half Moon Bay, nine people of 100 are only willing to move. It's about 10% willing to move to a new life and willing to follow the rules. So in this case, it's come to my mind, we're going to bring another homeless people. So in ideal world, yes, all the people who are going to be bringing, it's wonderful people who are going to work hard and give a better life. But look, realistic statistics, a lot of people actually violate rules and were evicted and kicked out of program. Where do we go? We go camping around hotels, around shelters. We saw this in San Francisco, we saw this in Santa Cruz, we saw this in LA. We just begin to increase in home population, not on the creek behind Safeway. We increase in home population in the middle of Half Moon Bay and the middle of Half Moon Bay and the close to school. So my question to city and county, what's the process to how to deal with people who
Thirty seconds.
for who violate program and kick out from this shelter? It's any law enforce them to move out of town? Can we move? Or we're going to stay in and out of town? And also, very short, we read the CARE Act. And on page 862, actually, this state, this is funding can be extended to September 2020. Page 862, September 2022. We read this CARE Act. It's a kind of funding going to be extended September 2022. Where do we get this number? December 4, 2020. Can you point us this source? I found this CARE Act in the internet. It's public. September 2022. Why it's rushed?
Very, very good. Thanks, Elena, and we will be addressing that in the answer session. You will hear some answers to that.
Yes, two questions. How to deal with people who are going to be kicked out of program? Do we have any law enforced to remove them from the city? Are we going to stay in the city around this shelter in camping around the shelter?
We got the questions. We got you. We got you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Jessica had to step away, so I'll be taking over clerking duties for a few minutes. Next up is Mateo Seaton. You're able to talk now?
He's actually in bed. He's in bed now.
Do you want to talk or done?
Yeah, I can. I have my own. So what I was going to say specifically is I think that if you look at this, I love seeing the passion on both sides. I'm completely undecided. I've gone back and forth as different people have brought up different points, and I think it really comes down to, that's the essence of this project. If it's done wrong, it's going to be the biggest disaster in the history of the coast. If it's done right, it has the potential to be great. It comes down to the specifics of it, and I think that like defending a great athlete, you can't stop him, but you can hope to contain him. I think it kind of sounds like the city of Half Moon Bay can't stop this. They can hope to contain some of the moral hazard that can come from this. You can put together a list of requests and asks and structure a good faith agreement with the county of demands that our community is asking for. Because I think there is a track record that you could see as a coast. We do feel like we get left in the dark. We're the only community where people have to paint on sidewalks. And in order to get the mail, you list one city and put in a different one. Our schools are some of the most underfunded. We have affordable housing issues. How do we expect the county to all of a sudden go to bat and say, we are going to do a better job treating your homeless than we've done in any other community? But yet, when there's a hospital emergency, your only chance is you have to pray, because there's no nearby emergency room. If we get stuck in traffic on a weekend, we are dead if there's a fire or other emergency. There's so many issues that as coastside residents, we get forgotten about. And so I think you've got to understand there is this distrust
Thirty seconds.
that how could we assume that all of a sudden, this is going to be the catalyst and the opportunity that the county is going to really go to bat for us and think like coastsiders? And I think at the end of the day, it is an offer that is too good to refuse, you know, for both the county, the hotel owner. I think as the city council, I urge you guys, you might not have the, you know, ability to stop this, but you can contain the moral hazard that comes from this. And I think that, you know, within the next couple of days, that this is going to happen. It would be nice to see a list of demands, starting with why not families? Why not fire victims? What type of accountability is going to be in place? How do we know, just like the senior center, where we were promised, our local seniors were going to get all the benefits of it, but then when it broke ground, everyone from other communities all around the Bay Area confirmed all the reservation lists and the targeted population that it was intended for was left in the dark? And so you've got to understand, if we play out what's been happened in the past and we play it forward, there's a lot of people that want to see something happen, but there's just distrust that it's going to be done the right way, and then all of a sudden, the county is going to come to bat for the coast like has never happened before. And so I think if you, you know, if anyone is listening on the city council, I think you do have the power to put together a good faith agreement that everyone in our community can get behind in terms of a list of demands that this is going to happen, what we want to see, so we do have some sense of control, so we're not left paying for this year to come, both financially and, you know, with some of the other issues that we might have to deal with. And so, you know, I would just like to end it with that. I think that it's great to see the viewpoints on both sides. I think that there is a bigger issue of affordable housing. I get calls all the time from people that move out of our community, and it's heartbreaking when they call you back and say, "We will do anything to move back to the coast, but we just can't afford it. What can we do?" And it's like, we have so many issues that we need to address. And I think that, you know, I think that maybe this is the start of it, but I think that it would be nice to see the city of Half Moon Bay do what they can to put some meat together with an agreement that at least the community can get behind and say, "You know what? We have some skin in this game in terms of some say." The county's already put some of that on.
Okay, next up is Elena. Unmute your mic, please.
Oh, I believe I already talked.
Perfect.
Can I talk again?
No.
No.
This is not being good at Jessica's job. Sorry about that. Donald Page, go ahead, Donald.
Yes, I just had a couple of questions here. One, how will we accommodate the existing RV living homeless? They're all over the coast, and they are part of this homeless community. What are we going to do with them? Next to that, when we get back and I read the CARES Act, it's very specific about this timing factor. So we're living under the gun put upon us by the governor, Newsom. There's got to be a way to get around that. And I think most importantly, you might not want to believe it, but the homeless are still living behind Safeway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lauren, please unmute yourself.
Lauren, you're still muted.
Oh, hi, sorry. It's late, and I appreciate you taking my call. My issue, I guess, that we keep kind of glossing over is that the money for this, the project room key, is really for COVID, getting the homeless off to flatten the curve for COVID. And I guess that's the main point that I want to drive, is that it seems like this is just a killing two birds with one stone opportunity. But if we were looking at this as the opportunity to get the homeless off the street to flatten the curve, which I haven't heard since March, but we, you know, when do we come out of this? If they're not moving in until March, and I would assume a vaccine would come out around then, what happens then? And just to entertain, like, the idea, because I'm definitely not anti-homeless. I definitely like the fact that we want to support them. But what is the transition plan exactly to get them on their feet? Like, are they supposed to say, you know, or show proof of working and all of that? Like, what's the plan there? And speaking from a family who has a family member who is an addict, I think that homelessness is the rock bottom that gets people to motivate to change, and we're taking that away. So that was just another point that I had. But the main question for me is, are we in the authority to use the money for the federal government getting us for getting the homeless off the street for COVID purposes only? I feel like this conversation has really just been about homeless shelter in the future, but talking about, like, actually what the funds were for. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Seaton? Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I think I was on mute when I was speaking, but what I was saying is that this is, you know, obviously, an offer that you can't refuse from the, you know, the county's perspective, the hotel's owner.
Mayor, he has already spoken.
David, were you the one that spoke on the Mateo?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure if I got muted off, because I turned it back on.
No, you did. You were well over your two minutes, so we're going to move on. Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Kathy Catalano?
My name is Kathy Catalano. I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay for over 30 years. On June 30th, I retired from San Mateo County Office of Education as a teacher in the court schools at Camp Glenwood, which is now gone, and Hillcrest Juvenile Hall and Daytop, the drug rehab we had 20 years ago. I can tell you, I don't trust the county, period. We have that monstrosity up there at 92 and 280 that has an occupancy for over, well over 100. There are, at any one time in the last year, there are about 14 boys living there, period. So two sections are completely and absolutely closed. So what happens with this hotel or motel or whatever it is? I don't trust the county not to bring people from over the hill. That one man mentioned the seniors. I know seniors that have had to move because they couldn't afford to live here, and they had to move elsewhere. Tracy, I worked with teachers in the county schools that could not live in San Mateo County, and they had to move. They would commute from Tracy and Stockton. And it seems to me that we need to put this money, figure out a way, COVID, whatever, put it in schools. I guess another question, a comment I have is, the homeless people don't want to go over the hill? What makes you think that some of these teachers and paraeducators want to go over the hill, and there's no place for them to live? Why do the homeless get provided to go, because they don't want to go over the hill? We are not set up for this. Somebody mentioned dogs. I wondered if dogs will be allowed. Anyway, there's so many concerns that are... I looked at the field today. The farm workers are out there picking the Brussels sprouts. They are three and four families in a house. Why aren't we providing housing for the people who work here? What about some of these? I know for a fact, one of these homeless people is a convicted felon for child molesting. I see him around town all the time. I talk to him. I'm not afraid of the homeless at all, but I see him all the time. So he'll be living there, close to the schools. He was a student of mine at Hillcrest Juvenile Hall for a long time. He's a convicted sex offender and a felon. What about other felons? Are they allowed to live there too? You know? I mean, I saw too much, and I see our teachers not having places to live, so...
Let me wrap it up.
Thank you. Mr. Harsley, I wrote to you. You did not Thank you. Mr. Horsley, I wrote to you. You did not respond to me.
And next we have Tama. Tama, you have two minutes.
Um, hi, I would like to address, uh, Mr. Horsley. Uh, Mr. Horsley, I'm a business owner in, and my business alone is at least 35% down. My business is down. That means that, uh, the county business is down too. With all due respect, you are failing to acknowledge that, um, the state, the county, the city will, will not have enough revenue to run any extra program next year. Uh, the reality is that you already have, will be facing a deeper budget cuts. So really, your premise of providing service 360, 365 days around the clock, extra police and clinic, when you won't have any money, doesn't really make any sense and sketch reality really. Um, on the top that you're going to have, um, Republican held summit, so verb funds are not going to be as available as you wish. Um, another point you probably need to reconsider, consider is that, um, the AGB economy is based mostly on tourists. There is no big industry around, and if you let the only source of income go, you have, you will kill the few jobs we have available and through you're going to actually increase the homeless population. So, um, and then lastly, I think you should consider that how positive would it be for you to just ignore 60% of the population? Um, you know, uh, Novaro, um, they were opposed to that and the county of Marin County actually took their look at that and said, you know what, it does not positive to just, just ignore 60% of the population. Uh, I think that, um, I would respectfully ask you to think about a little bit more, think about your budget, how much money you're going to have. Uh, how you were going to maybe kill the tourist mean town and, uh, what are you really going to do if we go down? All right. Thank you so much.
Matt Nichols, Matt, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Matt Nichols. I live downtown in Half Moon Bay. Um, and I'd like to say that I'm in favor of this proposal. Um, I like the idea of treating our less fortunate neighbors with dignity and respect. Um, it's cold outside this winter. Um, I think it's good to give them a place to stay. A couple of concerns and questions I have are, um, would it be possible for the county to offset some of the loss in TOT by funding our police or some other services? And then also can we have some sort of agreement between the county and the city? It gets the city a seat at the table in terms of operations of this facility and the ability to review the success of this project on like a yearly basis. Thank you. That's all.
Nice. Succinct. Thank you.
Robin Camozzi, you have two minutes.
Hi, I oppose the purchase of the hotels. I believe the purchase will cause, will have a negative effect on businesses in our community for many years to come. The idea of bringing in a constant stream of homeless people will cause more damage to the already struggling businesses in Half Moon Bay. If this plan goes through, the lack of hotel space will cut down on tourist and tourist revenue that we so desperately need to recover from the effects of COVID-19 loss to businesses as well as adding to a mixture of other issues. Take, for instance, the back of Half Moon Bay Feeding Fuel on Johnson Street, where it is not uncommon for our parking area behind the store to have homeless gather, fights occur, drunks and druggies sleep on, off their high, all of which leave trash, toilet paper and human feces. And to add to all that, the incurred loss of product due to theft. I do not see how this plan will make a long-term positive change to our homeless problem. 120 days to six months will not help anyone save enough money to pay rent in any available rental on the coast. What is the long-term plan to place these people? We already do not have the resources and manpower to maintain the amount of homeless we have in our town. The impact of more, of more businesses experiencing the issues at their storefronts would be devastating to our community. I do not support program, I do support programs like Abundant Grace where my business
Thirty seconds.
Where my business and others can help people down on their luck and reap benefits of hiring one of their program people. For over a year, I've employed one of their program graduates and to date he is still working for us and doing well. There are so many ways I can see spending taxpayers' hard-earned money for the affordable housing for teachers, teaching our kids for less pay than is necessary to live in our town or a much-needed medical facility. Please do not replicate a proven failed plan or bring more functional burdens to an already overtaxed, high cost of living area without a clear pan, plan or path of what it will do to our town for years to come. Thank you.
Paul Gregoriev, you have two minutes.
Paul, you're still on mute. Give Paul 10 seconds.
A sec. There we go. How's that? Better?
Hey, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh, well, let's see. Uh, you've got, uh, Mariah and Paul Gregoriev here, two Half Moon Bay residents who at least want to ring in and register strong support for this program. The work you're doing is impressive under, uh, challenging time deadlines. I think it might be a good idea for you to consider trying to grab on to 100% of the occupancy of this facility. In other words, if we, uh, take Pacifica out of the mixture, I think with the homeless we have now, plus the soon-to-be homeless who will run out of rental support and income support very, very soon and are suffering under the COVID crisis, we've got, we could fill this place up uh, easily. And I think reserving part of it, as we discussed on the 19th, for families makes a lot of sense. We're going to have a lot of homeless families here, uh, and not too long. And the other couple of points that we've been thinking about and heard other, other residents, uh, uh, opine on, uh, it's true that we have very few or no health services, particularly ambulatory, ambulatory healthcare for this income group on the coast side. Uh, it's hard to see how we're going to be able to care for this population. I think the county could do something great by increasing the capacity of the coast side clinic in conjunction with this program. Uh, and I think, um, it would be very good to try to get a, a commitment in writing uh, from the county to reserve these spots. To reserve the spots for the people on the coast side. It would be great, uh, also, um, if we could find, as, as has been mentioned, uh, some compensation support for the loss in TOT that we're going to experience by letting one of the motels in town, uh, of operation. Thank you.
Paul. Thank you, Mariah.
Marina Balakina. Marina, can you unmute yourself?
Marina, we're going to give you five seconds. We don't hear you yet. You're still on mute. One, two, three, up. I saw you take yourself off mute for a second. Do you want to talk? All right, we'll come if you do. Next.
Uh, the phone number nine, three, six, two, seven, eight. You have two minutes.
Six, one, eight, seven. You're on, uh, you're on mute.
Monica, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to share, I've been living here on the coast for 20 years now and living and working. And, um, I have to, I have to turn me down so I don't hear me. Um, but I've been living here for 20 years, a business owner, working, spending money and trying to support my small community. And I would really love to support this project. However, I'm really concerned about its location, um, our infrastructure. I live in Montero. We see all the accidents. We see double slide, highway ones closing all the time. So bringing more people into our infrastructure, I'm concerned about. I'm really concerned about our education and if we have this kind of financial resource to put into the community, if we could give it to our future, our children, our teachers, our infrastructure and then, and maybe revisit this in another couple of years. Um, and I'm also concerned about the people who are supporting the project, that they are not going to be here after a period of time. And so who then will come in and will they have the same passion for the projects that you have? That will be supporting these people and doing all the hard work that once you guys transition out and somebody else transitions in, what happens then? If they don't have the passion, if the project falls apart, then where is our community? Like people have spoken in the past, you know, we've brought in all these other people from outside and then they have no resources to get off of the community on top of affordable housing and jobs. So those are my concerns. So with that, I would like to see the project go. I just wouldn't like to see it go on where it's, where it's, where it's structured to go right now. I just don't think that that's a really appropriate location with the schools and the Boys and Girls Club. We already have a lot of people hanging around at, um, More for Less, which is kind of, you know, concerning. I don't, you know, won't go and, you know, I feel a little unsafe there sometimes, you know, as a female at night. Um, so bringing more people into that community and that area just, you know, creates concerns personally. Thank you.
Nancy Stern, you have two minutes. Nancy, are you there? Nancy? Chris Johnson?
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I want to say thank you to the council, supervisor Horsley and, um, county staff for sticking it out tonight. Long night. Um, and I, I just will start by saying uh, there but for the grace of God go I. And I know this and I'm humbled by this. And for this reason, I support this project as an act of human decency. The homeless are already here. We have, we have a homeless population. We know this from the county homeless census that I personally have participated in the last four years, the last time with Eric Debode. So I've seen the situation there firsthand and the homeless are there. And so when people are saying there's going to be an increase in crime and people and graffiti or whatever they're worried about, those people are here and this is a solution to, to provide some human decency for this and it can only help. I mean, that, that's, I guess I'm confused about some of the opposition. This, okay, we've got a problem and I think everybody acknowledges that, opponents and proponents. And so we're trying to offer a solution that can help. I don't think anybody is under any kind of, um, uh, you know, illusion that, that this is going to solve the homeless problem. This is not a solution to solve the homeless problem. This is to make it better, okay, for some people. And I think it will. And I also feel like the coast side inn is literally the perfect.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. The, the homeless population is living within a stone's throw of the coast side inn right now. And wouldn't it be good to bring them into shelter and then allow people to know where they are and provide services to them? I understand the timeline concerns people. It concerned me too, but I've pushed, pulled, begged and pleaded with the county to come up with a homeless solution for about 10 years now. Busing local homeless people over the hill is not a solution. The coast side means its own homeless shelter for its homeless people. And this is a great opportunity and I hope it can work out. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you again for the time that you put in on this.
Thanks, Chris.
Alan Straumeyer, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Good.
Yeah.
Uh, I got to tell you, I love Half Moon Bay. I've been here about 46 years. I pay a lot of attention to Half Moon Bay. I travel the entire city of Half Moon Bay on my bike. So I see what's going on and I watch what's going on. There's two things going on here. First of all, all I want to talk to right now is the city council. City council, I've, uh, highly invested in this, uh, community. I was one of the 13 to put the initial bond and got it passed for Cunha. I also sat on the Economic Development Committee years ago. I watched this city almost go bankrupt. You understand what that means, city? Almost bankrupt. I watched it. I know the people who were working for the staff and I watched them when they got laid off. It wasn't freaking fun. Now, reference economics. Now, people come into Half Moon Bay. We established this a long time ago that we are a visitor-serving community. What that means is when people come over here, they want to see, they want to see the coast. Now, I think, is this an opportunity? I don't believe it is. The coast side inn is an absolute wrong place to have homeless people. People come up there. Would you like to be on Shoreline Station? I got to tell you, make that a homeless community. I have a for sale sign in front of that, that shoreline station. How can I get out of there? Three amigos. My son comes up here from Arizona. The first thing he wants to do, go to Three Amigos. Now, I got to tell you, would homeless people right next door? I don't think so. And the same thing with the other Spanish restaurant right next there. And here again, I'm less than 500 yards by, as the crow flies from this particular facility. You see, um, Hat School, I've watched, I've watched Hat School. The problem is right there, you're going to have lots of problems when you have people homeless. It's going to cause disruption within the city. And as far as, uh, revenue is concerned, it's going to affect it. Now, going over to the people from, uh, uh, San Mateo, the county. You guys really shouldn't be involved here in the city. You shouldn't be involved with pity, uh, with, uh, people and this sort of thing. This COVID-19 or this Chinese plague is going to diminish. It's going to go away. It's going to go away slowly, but it's going to go away. Now, don't involve this money for COVID-19. It should be invested in what used to be the church activities. The church used to have this. Why don't you take the money, give it to the Catholic Church, the Lutheran Church, the Abundant Grace and let them figure out how to spend it if you can hold on to the money. I bet you they'll do a better job. One thing I've always seen in my 75 years on this earth, government does not know how to spend money and they love spending taxpayers' money and they don't do a very good job about it. So I think this is better put in the hands of the local people and we are the most wonderful compassionate community that I've ever been involved in. It's a wonderful community. I want to keep it that way. And on the front door of the community, you don't want to put a homeless center. It's going to, people are going to come over here. That's not what they want to see.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Pedro Cantano, you have two minutes.
Hello, good evening, mayor and also to the council. I live on Kelly Avenue in the, in the heart of beautiful town of downtown Half Moon Bay. I support the proposal. I asked my neighbors, um, who are on this call, who are here, just turn down the heat. Um, right now, I think right now we have a seat at the table and we might not have the first bite at making this, this decision in regards to accepting this, uh, a shelter for a COVID patient or for people experiencing homelessness. But you know, these are, we've heard some really great ideas. We have heard some really great proposals. Um, I asked that all my, my residents and also the neighbors that live around me to just stay active and engage on this issue and to make sure that, uh, we're making sure that the county is, uh, following up on the promises to, um, they've made to the city council and also to the residents here. Um, and also to the last comment, uh, the person with the last comment, the idea that we have to decide on being a tourist town or a family community. I, I don't think, I think we should be both. We can definitely be a hybrid town where we do support our community, but also, also provide a, um, a tourist option for them. The coast is for everybody. Everyone can enjoy the coast. So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent Miller, you have two minutes.
Kent, you're still on mute if you're there.
Kent?
Wow, thank you guys.
Okay.
So I'm vehemently opposed to this. And I want to know one question. Who's liable for this? For this decision? Who's liable? If my daughter gets raped in a park? Ocean View Park, who's liable? Do I want to know? Um, thank you.
Thank you. And back to the phone number, go ahead, Jessica, sorry.
It's actually one number more than a phone number. So someone ending in six one eight seven, if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself.
All right, done. Public comment.
Well done.
Well done, well done. All right. Do, uh, Mike, Don and Ken, do you need a few minutes to consolidate or you want to just go straight into some answers? I mean, should we take like a forty five minute break?
I think we're ready to go if you are, Mr. Mayor.
I'm ready, let's go.
Did, did you want us to go to, trying to answer some of those questions, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely. Yeah, I figured let's get into all the answers first and we can get into the rest of it afterwards. But people want to, if people are still here, we still got a hundred people on. They want to hear what, what, what the answers are, especially like that Kent Miller, yeah, who's liable, all the various pieces. Let's go through it all.
Okay. Who'd like to ask the questions?
Who took down the list of questions? I didn't.
Ken, I think you're, you're on mute. Ken, you're muted. Ken, you're muted.
Ken, you're muted.
Ken, you're muted.
Jessica, can you unmute Ken?
Let me deal with the liability one since that was the last one asked.
Deal with the liability one first and I'll start, I'll start asking some questions and we'll, we can start from back and forth.
Okay, so I have, I have audio now.
Here we go.
All right. Let me just start with the liability one, Ken, and then you can go through the questions. There's, there's no one that's liable for that. If somebody commits a criminal act. You know, that could happen any day, anywhere, anytime. We certainly hope it doesn't. There's a homeless population now to, to suggest that they would be doing this in a structured environment, any more than any, any place would be experiences. It's just not the case. So there is no liability on anyone. Obviously, we hope something like this never occurs to anyone. But it could happen anywhere.
I'd like our city attorney to address the li, the city's liability issue, please.
Yeah, and I'll, I guess add to that concur in terms of, you know, exposure to the city. I'm not seeing any additional exposure given that, you know, simply because a crime occurs, you know, within city limits, that doesn't make the city liable. Or the county for that matter. And of course, the city's had a homeless population for a number of years. I'm not aware of any claim that's been made against the city related to any homeless individual, much less a, you know, a lawsuit. You know, as a general matter, I will say, of course, the city is, is part of a self insurance pool such that if any any incident occurs typically, you know, a personal injury kind of, kind of thing on city property. Those kinds of claims are covered by our, by our self insurance pool. Actually, would I make one other statement, just a point about, about liability? And there was references to, well, you know, of course, we do have a homeless population and, and perhaps not all of those individuals will voluntarily want to be sheltered. You know, the city a few years ago went through a process to remove a homeless encampment at Positos Creek. And as part of that process, you know, homeless service, services and shelter was offered to all of those individuals. And that's was, of course, the, you know, best practice, but it's increasingly becoming the law. And, you know, unless shelter is offered and available, it is very, is becoming more and more difficult for jurisdictions to do encampment removals. So, you know, having a, you know, more, more shelter opportunities does actually enable, you know, jurisdictions to, to complete those encampment removals if necessary. So I'll hand it back over to the county. Is there any other questions along those lines?
So I jotted down some of the questions and I thought, I tried to write them down, maybe some that Mike, you need to respond to and then programmatically, I could respond to some of them. So one of the questions was compensation for loss, the T O T or sales tax.
Yeah, absolutely. I've indicated in the last meeting that we would sit down with the city manager and and work out some smoothing process and a way of compensation. We also hope that, you know, the other hotel rooms in, in Half Moon Bay are filled up and absorbed with, with people who want to stay there. And to the extent that there is a room to stay there, we hope that they're absorbed in those hotels. But we will sit down and work out a smoothing factor for the loss of T O T.
Okay. Then there were a number of questions regarding the process of selecting hotels throughout the county. Sort of, sort of the, how did we find the hotels? How did we ascertain a price?
Yeah, so we did put out an R F P for hotels. We, I think we sent it out to well over a hundred hotels in the county. We we did have response. I believe that this particular hotel was a late response. We were looking at a another hotel on the coast. The, the location was, was not the best in that, you know, there was some sea level rise issues that we were concerned with. And the capacity wasn't to the extent it is here. And this was somewhat more central and in close to services. So that's how we came about this. We are still in the process of doing inspections and getting the appraisal on this facility. Of course, if the appraisal came in less than the, the price we're in right now, that would be a negotiation between the county and the owner of the hotel. It's same with the inspection of the buildings, which is currently, I believe underway or shortly will be underway. Along with the environmental report that we'll receive on the building, the grounds of the building and so on. So all that is, is yet to be determined. And that's why we will push for a later closing date in the month to close escrow on this, but it would be within the month of December.
Yeah, Ken, Council, Councilwoman Ruddock, I think we're just gonna play off each other in some of these, yeah.
So just, I just want to have it clarified that the county may not pay more than fair market value for the property. Is that correct?
That's right.
Right.
That's absolutely right.
So would you consider, like, how, how do you bring the price down if it's too high in your negotiation?
Well, yeah, if there's an appraisal that, that comes in for less or if there is significant damage to the building that needs to be corrected, that would be part of the negotiation with the owner. To, to make sure the, the price reflects the, the appraisal or the necessity to, to correct some things that, that may be deficient in the building.
So I think it's important for the public to know that there is an appraisal being conducted and that the county cannot pay more than fair market value is determined by an appraisal. Is this an M A I certified appraisal? What are the specifications for appraisals in the county?
It would be a certified appraisal through a reputable company. The problem is right now is that a lot of them are busy and several weeks to, to get them out there to, to do the appraisal and then write it up. So, and that's certainly not only, you know, on commercial establishments, but on residential nowadays with refinancing.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Ken.
Okay, I heard another question as to, is this a done deal? Pay the complete.
Well, it, it still has to go back to the board. I believe we have it scheduled for the eighth, but to the extent that, you know, the appraisal came in lower and the owner failed to negotiate or we found significant issues with the building. That would certainly cause us to reflect back on the viability of accepting this. So those are the type of things that would still need to be worked out in the, in the upcoming weeks. So the period of time is really within the next thirty days. We have to decide all of this.
Okay, and
I have to ask a follow up to that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. When I, when I heard the question, is this a done deal? I know that could be interpreted in a few ways. So I thought a lot of people are asking, does it matter that, you know, eighteen hundred people signed a petition against it? You know, can this be successful with that kind of community pushback? So I was just wondering what you think about that. Cause I think that is part of maybe what that question is about.
It'll, Councilor, that'll be up to the Board of Supervisors to determine if they you know, want to accept the proposal on this, to purchase this motel. And that would come to the board on the eighth, I believe. Then with again, a long closing time to, a longer closing time to try to figure out if there's any issues with the building that we're missing.
Okay. How about the question of chasing the dollar?
Well, I mean, there's an opportunity here. Remember, this is an asset that, you know, is an asset that we're purchasing here and it's, it's a great deal of money. The, the money is available for this purpose. There's timing specifics associated with it. We think it's a great opportunity. We think it's an opportunity to to really help many of the homeless that are in Half Moon Bay and the surrounding area. Get off the streets and it's part of our plan to, to get to functional zero in this county. Look, to get to functional zero, we have to start putting people in environments where they can succeed. And we're trying to do that all over the county. We don't have anything on the coast. We've got them from the North County all the way to the, to the, to the very south end of the county and, and pretty much everywhere in between different elements, whether it's hotels or homeless shelters or affordable housing programs. So we do think it's important to, to have a place on the coast and we do understand that there's a homeless population. And this is near services. It really is something that we've thought about and we feel that the benefits certainly outweigh any detractors.
So along that topic, I, I seem to gather from the community that they are concerned about homelessness almost like increasing in Half Moon Bay. You know, I mean, because obviously we're gonna try to take care of as many people on the coast side as we can. But then there's gonna be people coming from other areas in the county. I, I just want to try to see what we can respond to that as, as I see that as a big concern is everybody's, you know, this fear that homelessness is going to increase in Half Moon Bay as more homeless people come from other areas, which is part of the program. How, how do we, how do we respond to that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I really, our, our focus is on, on dealing with the homelessness in Half Moon Bay and on the coast. And to the extent that, you know, I, I hear what people are saying, to the extent that somebody doesn't make it through the program, we don't expect everyone to make it through the program. It's just a matter of life that some people will choose to leave or will be evicted because they break the rules. And, you know, I don't think to the extent that they were homeless in Half Moon Bay, they may return to that. But to the extent that they were homeless somewhere else, typically that doesn't occur. And Ken, you can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. They typically like to go back to the areas where they're familiar with and, and they may have friends and they have lived before. So I think that those individuals would migrate back to the, to the Bayside. Or we'd certainly try to reacquaint them with services on the, on the Bayside if that's where they're originally from.
And I, I do want to just comment quickly that, because there were a number of questions in the program, sort of the program side that I was keeping notes on. About what do you do with people, either people that might be from another area coming in or people who are from this area in Half Moon Bay but got kicked out of the program somewhere down the line. So I just think that all, all of those aspects we will be responsible to informing the community as to what our results are. And if we were contributing to more homelessness, we would be adjusting our program. I mean, our solution, we, we want to be a part of the solution. We're not going to solve homelessness with a fifty two bed shelter. I'm sorry. It's the, the problem is much greater than that. It's a California problem. It's a national problem. And it's really a global problem. So we're not going to solve it with one shelter. But this is a really critical step in our countywide ability to serve the, the homeless in a, in a cohesive fashion. And it's, it's a huge hole not to have a shelter on the coast side. So I, I just think again that those very legitimate questions about what if this, what if that, we're going to have to explain how that works with the provider that we select to, to, to run the shelter and, and have, have the data about the outcomes as they develop.
And, and there was a question, if I can follow up on that also, Mr. Mayor, there was a question about the county's you know, commitment to, to the city. And, you know, we are very flexible in regard to that. If, if if the city said, hey, let's meet monthly about this and evaluate the program. If you want to meet quarterly, if you want to meet yearly, whatever it may be. We want to be good partners in this and, and we're willing to, to meet on, on any terms because we want this to be successful. We want it to be successful for the community. We want it to be successful for those that are experiencing homelessness.
Now, Mike, there were also questions specific, sounded like some people tried to read the CARES Act, which I really have to I wonder about, that, that's, that's quite an act to try to read, but we, could you comment on the deadline of December thirty first? Because there seems to be a lot of doubt about whether that's real or not.
Well, I mean, look, we have not heard anything to the contrary. We, we had all hoped, I think, that the CARES Act would be extended. And beyond that date, we're still in the process, quite frankly, of, of trying to figure out where we are with our budget and, and how much money needs to be expended by the end of the month. It is a very, very fluid situation. And, and that's something that I think every county or anyone with CARES funding is struggling with right now. So that remains very fluid and I have not heard of any extensions. We want an extension of the CARES Act.
Yeah, and, and the comment was made that, that the governor and the state, their interpretation of the CARES Act in regard to project room key and then project home key is dictating also that same timeline.
Well, I feel, I mean, project home, you know, you know, that was a problem we had on the Bayside. They wanted us to close by December second tomorrow. And we're trying to meet that deadline. I mean, it was a most unbelievable timeline we've ever seen. The timeline is what it is and it's, it's not a matter, you can be in negotiations. You have to own the location or take possession of anything you're purchasing by that deadline.
Okay. Great. So then those were some of the questions I thought, Mike, that you might need to respond to directly. A lot of the rest that I jotted down and I'm sure council members also jotted down questions were more on the program and the people's side. And I just wanted to comment quickly that I, I know that everyone on the council, everyone probably living in our county has had conversations with friends, neighbors that has gone along the line, so what are they going to do about the homeless? Or what are they doing? They being the government doing about people who are homeless? So this is a, this is a problem that's not new to the, the COVID nineteen situation. It has preceded and been, been very high on everyone's radar and it's a difficult problem to get your arms around. But, so, so I wanted to clarify that with the early part of the pandemic. People were demanding to know, why isn't the county getting people off the street? Because they could become contagious, they could potentially be part of the, of COVID spread. And we worked very quickly in the pandemic to get And we worked very quickly in the pandemic to get, first of all, to get the existing shelters to, to practice safe protocols within the shelter, which meant they needed more space and they could house less people. Then the state offered Project Room Key, which gave us the ability to get hotels open and get homeless off the street. And what we did was we moved people who were, you know, if you're homeless, you're very vulnerable to begin with. But if you're homeless and over sixty, or you're homeless and you have asthma or a chronic condition. In the COVID situation, you're even more vulnerable to, to, to becoming infected. So we, as, as has been mentioned, we now have over a hundred and eighty daily census in about four different hotel locations in the county. That's been funded through emergency COVID funding. And now we're having to look down the road as the, as the pandemic winds down, hopefully with vaccines. We've still got to have a soft landing with that hotel population. And that's what led the state to start talking about Project Home Key, which would be helping communities actually purchase hotels. Because at the moment, the hotel industry is suffering. So there is an opportunity to, to get some of this capacity. And as Mike has often mentioned, the per door cost of buying an existing building versus the county building something is, it's enormous. It's an enormous difference. So I know people are concerned about the cost effectiveness of what we're doing. But actually, purchasing a building is vastly cheaper than building something. And we're in the, our county's built a lot of affordable housing over the last ten years and, and it comes at a pretty penny. So I think there's a real cost effectiveness to what we're doing. Okay, so go ahead.
No, no, it's good. It's good, good information.
Okay. So a couple of other things that come up real quick on my list, background checks. Yes, absolutely. And, and we're, we're serious about an advisory committee and working closely with the city government here to, to have, to design the safety into this program that's appropriate for this community. And background checks would definitely be part of that. I, I have to say, and I don't mean to be rhetorical, but hotels don't do background checks per se. You have tourists in your community. Tourists sometimes get into fights. Tourists abuse drugs. Tourists have domestic violence. I'm sure, I'm sure our sheriff's office would tell us that. So I know there's concerns about, concerns about the homeless population, but the lack of, of, of hotel, hospital services is, is the same for a homeless person as it is for a tourist. So we, we share those same concerns about appropriate service levels in this community. And I really think this program, if it goes through, it could be a real add, value add to help define what the county needs to do to help strengthen the services on the coast side. Because we'll be fully engaged with the provider and the needs of these clients. So background checks, yes. The questions come up frequently about families. We entered into the concept for this program about serving single men and women. But we're not closed to the idea. If you tell us in your community that families are critically important, we can look again at designing a portion of the program to address family needs. So we're not closed to that.
So I have a follow up question to that. But so people want our local homeless to get priority. Single homeless by and large, aren't they like single men and women, not families?
Yes, I'd say that the homeless that we're most familiar, the people that we are most familiar with as needing shelter are single men and women. I think I certainly hear from providers on the coast side that there are families that, that end up doubling up or tripling up in housing that might avail themselves of, of emergency or transitional housing if it was available on the coast side. So you get back to coast side versus the other side. So I think we would, you know, definitely be, be open to considering families. The other, another issue, just before I forget it, is, is pets. Many people experiencing homelessness will say that they won't avail themselves of shelter because they have a pet. So we will address the issue of pets on site. We'd have to carefully wade into that with either, in some cases, well, first of all, service animals, of course, would be accept, would be acceptable. We'd have to look at, at the potential damage to the rooms or the agreement to the, the care of the pet in, in the interior or look at kennels on the outside. So other things that jumped up.
Before we go to that, can we add something? Dipra Ruddock asked about families. There are homeless families. And the reason you don't see homeless families is that the county for many years has always put them up in local hotels. We also have, with Life Force, have a special program in Menlo Park that is strictly for families. So families do end up in homeless, but we don't like to mix, you know, single men with families. And so that's why we have, we generally deal with them completely separate.
Yes. And from a program side, it's most typical to have a separation of a program for single men and women versus a program for, for families. That's most trip typical and best practice in, in shelters. But I don't think it's an absolute on the coast side because of the special situations here. A lot of kind of, go ahead.
Can I, can I address one of the financial issues that someone brought up? And that was, you know, we are in a deficit budget type of a situation with the county as many cities are, and they, they questioned why we would be doing this. And, and just let me just say that, that dealing with the homeless or those experiencing homelessness and providing service in the field and encampments is one of the least cost effective things that, that we could do. When we have them in a location, we're providing them with wraparound services and trying to exit them out of homelessness into permanent housing is one of the most cost effective things that we do with tax dollars. Because you don't continue to pay and have good money chase bad money. So it's, it's one of those situations that we hope will actually have a positive impact on the budget. And these dollars are, many of these dollars are federal and state pass through dollars that we get to deal with the homelessness in the county.
I think there were many questions or, or comments along a line of fear. Feeling that this was going to ruin Half Moon Bay or ruin the community. And I understand fear, but if you take the logic of fear, you won't have any programs anywhere. The, the, if you took that logic to the, across the county, we'd have no programs. So I'd say that the fear factor needs to be addressed. And I'm not here to, to sell you a beat up used car or, you know, put, put lipstick on a pig here. The, the fears have to be addressed. The security has to be addressed. And as I said in the last meeting, people experiencing homelessness are fearful oftentimes. They're often victims of crime. They're frequently more the victim of crime than a perpetrator of crime. And the, the fears need to be addressed. But that logic of using fear as a reason to say no just doesn't, it, it, it just doesn't work because you're, you're, if, if you, if you called the meeting of the Half Moon Bay community and you said your, your purpose was to solve homelessness or write a plan to address homelessness, I'd say you might attract twenty people. I'm just guessing. If you have a meeting where you say, I have a location to cite a shelter, you've got two hundred and fifty people. That's the fear factor. And it's in every community. And I, I spent fifteen years raising two daughters in Santa Cruz. So I know coastal communities and I know that, I know the special circumstances of coastal communities. And you pointed out, many of the speakers pointed out, healthcare as, you know, it's a real concern when you don't have that hospital right down the street, that trauma center right down the street. So there's special needs in coastal communities and we have to recognize that. And, and that'll be a factor for this program as well.
And Ken, if I may, just a related question to, to that theme of fear and the comments about crime and contention that there would be an increase in crime. The other question that we've heard is, is do, do we currently have the police capacity? Does our contract with the sheriff have the ability, the resources, the capacity to deal with this facility? And our answer to that is absolutely yes. The contract that we have currently with the sheriff's department, the terms of that contract, the service level that the sheriff provides us, right now, we are confident, and this is a conversation I had with our chief of police, Sal Lopez, we have the capacity for this facility to be full and as, as, as it's designed and how you guys are portraying it to be used after you make acquisitions. So we have the capacity to do that. And we'll, and, and the sheriff will respond as they will respond, would respond to any, anything that happens in the city.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and people have concerns about, again, sort of what would happen if someone broke the rules? So everybody's good with the fact that we have rules and they expect that. But what happens when you break the rules? So I just want to say, and, and, and I, I have a lot of personal experience in this arena that you work with people. First of all, human beings are the most complicated creatures around. So you can't, you can't simplify this. It's complicated. But in working with individual people, the leverage factor is if you have something that they really desire, you're in good circumstances to enforce your rules. And one of the things that a hotel based program does is it provides personal space. Most shelters are congregate. This, this is non-congregate. So you've got individual rooms and that's a huge advantage. Both to going out, our hot teams going out and, and saying to somebody that's been out in a creek bed for ten years, let me walk you over and show you what you could aspire to if you'll join this program, if you get into this program. It's a huge motivator. Then the motivator is to hold on to it. Work on your plan, work with your case manager. Deal honestly with your circumstances. And again, we can't guarantee the success. But I can tell you that your chances of success are so much higher if you get people indoors. If you're, if you're outreach into people out in the bush, when, when people get to that level, it's a profound psychological, sociological change to adjust to that level of living. And it's not easy to shake once you, once that becomes your norm, that your baseline. So this would be a huge benefit for our ability to work with the people in your community. Were there other questions that the council heard that I haven't touched on?
Ken, I've got a couple that you, you've really touched on, most of the ones I had written down. There were some questions about kind of the decision matrix or the process for evaluating who gets to come and participate. There was questions about kind of what are the metrics that will determine success or failure here? And then we heard lots of people ask, what, what happens if, if, you know, we, we look at those metrics and it just doesn't seem like this is working?
Right. Well, first of all, the selection of people, we, we've already explained that, that we would prioritize people in this, in the Half Moon Bay and coastal community. And in addition to that, I mean, first of all, I know you think that the, the sort of fifty plus rooms is a big number of rooms. I don't think it's a big number of rooms against the coastal homeless population. So I, I think we'll be looking for that first criteria of being on the coast, a second criteria of vulnerability. Because we have to still, especially in the COVID environment we're in right now, still be looking to house first people who are, or who are particularly vulnerable in the, in the COVID situation. But basically it just boils down to, are you, are you currently homeless and are you willing to avail yourself of a program now? Because it's not just a room. It's not, as it's been said, three hots and a cot. It's a program you're joining. It's going to be making goals, doing an honest assessment of where you're at and, and working with providers to get to better circumstances. And I, and I do want to say that I know that the availability of affordable housing, it's no joke. Anywhere in our county, but particularly on the coast. So we have, we do have special set aside units in our housing programs throughout the county that prioritize people coming out of shelters. So there are ways that we can advance their ability to get, to get into affordable housing through our network of projects throughout the county. So that's on the affordable housing side. And that's the goal. So they're not necessarily, you know, we may not be able to match people up to housing on the coast. They, they may be housing somewhere else once they're past the shelter stage. And that's really the nature of transitional housing. People asked about what is transitional housing? Typically, six months to thirteen months. Some of the better programs I've worked with are seeing, take those extra months to make sure people are stable and able to be housed successfully. And then you, you mentioned the metrics, Matthews, of success. I mean, the, whatever that plan is that each individual has would identify what are the, what, what is the success? You know, for some people, it might be reconnecting with their family and returning to family. Other people, it's good, it could be relocating to another state where they have some roots and it's a, and it's a more affordable community. Or it may be staying right where they are. And, and then we design the care plan around that. But you have to start with where people are and where they'd like, what, what are they aspiring to? Okay, anything else?
There was a question about what if this initiative, you're determined to be a failure? How do you, how do you, how do you move on from there? What, what's, what happens next?
Well, I'm so glad you also asked that because I failed to mention that I don't believe in any of the hotel acquisitions, we are necessarily writing in stone that it would always be a shelter. Because a lot of the concept of Project Home Key at the state level was actually to convert hotels into permanent housing. Because we, we are, we do believe in housing as the solution, affordable housing is the solution to homelessness. A lot of people need services along the way, but it's really homelessness is a housing problem. So this building in the future could at some point become, be retrofitted for permanent housing.
And, and we really look forward to that day. And that's, you know, our, our dream and hope for all of these hotels. We have one that's permanent housing now in, in Redwood Shores. We hope that the other one in Redwood City will become permanent housing someday. And we hope this one will become permanent housing for mixed encamps. And maybe some of those would be teachers that we, we heard about. That's a long term goal.
Well, why are we not turning this into units that have kitchens and can support that goal right away?
Well, why are we not turning this into units that have kitchens and can support that goal right away? Kind of, you know, in the process as, as we go through it?
Great, great question and the answer really is that. Because of the lack of affordable housing. And the time it takes to achieve affordable housing. We need shelter, we, we need transitional. Again, I'm afraid we throw terms around too much, but we need interim steps. Little steps that people can take because it's very hard to jump. Particularly from living in a creek bed. To full-blown affordable housing. So people typically need small steps. You know, the, the, the old concept of skid road. If you're familiar with that. That, that terminology of the poor part of town. Which largely doesn't exist in our county, we have a few, a few pockets that are still. Lower income neighborhoods. But this county lacks an infrastructure of low-end housing. So you've got, it's like a ladder, but you've cut off. Two or three of the bottom rungs and you're on the ground, you need to boost up. And that's what shelter, shelter or transitional housing becomes. So that's why we're not jumping right away. To converting this into permanent housing. Permanent housing does lock up the building. The comment was made. That we could serve up to 150 people in the first year, I don't, I don't see it that way at all. I think the length of stay is going to be much longer. Especially with people, the, the people that we hope to house here on the coast. I think it will take more time. To get them where they need to go, but, but they're not going to be living in a shelter program forever.
Okay, that's good. Are those generally the questions from the public?
I think so.
Mr. Mayor, I, I've been chatting offline with folks and I think what we'll do from this point is. We've also received a lot of emails and comments from a lot of different sources. We'll work with the county to update the frequently asked questions that have been provided so that we build upon. You know, that, that base of information. And try to address as many of the kind of broad categories of questions as possible. And then of course, if people want specific answers to specific questions, we'll try to address those as well after this meeting.
And, and I do, I do want to say just very quickly that. I know people feel rushed, this is not the way we would choose to do this. I mean, the, the most genuine statement I can make about how fast this is moving is. This isn't the way we would want to do this. This is not at all the way we'd like to do this. It's, it's, it's that care's money is forcing us into this situation. What we do have more time is to design the program. With an advisory board. And we don't have to rush into occupying. The building. Until the community is comfortable with the program design. So I'm looking forward to engaging with the community on the program design.
Smart, so maybe we should. You know, we haven't gotten to really the council questions yet per se. I'm almost wondering if we, do, do we do a round of those? Or do we just try to add those, we just say them out loud, add them to the FAQ sheet and we can look at them later? What, what's your general sense, council, how do you guys want to go about that? I've got about 10 questions here that I still want to get to.
I, I think most of my questions have been answered, I do have a couple. That I'd like to ask.
You know, we got all night.
So I, I did listen in on the Board of Supervisors meeting this afternoon. And one thing I noted that the county is doing is. You know, as part of the selection of the vendor to operate the facility, this is the facility in Redwood Shores. You mentioned that before inking a contract with the vendor, that the vendor would come to the community and make a presentation. It was being done for the HOA in Redwood Shores. I think if we could do something like that in addition to some of the other things we've asked for, I think that would be great.
That's, we're, we're happy to do that and, you know, someone mentioned putting some of these things in writing. I did that with the Redwood Shores community, I'm happy to do it with the Half Moon Bay community.
Yeah, I think, you know, people like to seek commitment, you know, in any way, shape or form, in addition to, you know. Outreach. And then. There was one more, I'm happy to hold my question, let somebody else ask a question while I find my other one.
If I might just say something about the providers, providers kind of really want to meet with the community. Because they're going to really want to have community support, they don't want to be. You know, the unwanted. And really, you know, they're really used to dealing with, you know, essentially neighborhoods and, you know, working effectively. So I can give you, there's a number of examples that the Mental Health Association put a couple of. Facilities for mentally ill or people who have long-term mental illness problems. And the community originally really opposed it. The, the Mental Health Association wanted the community and afterwards. Opposition just disappeared, so, so they, they're, they're going to want to be involved with the community.
Good. Let's see, I'll just go through our council members, Deborah?
I just want to say, you answered my other question, so I have no more questions.
I have no questions.
Perfect, Robert, oh, I'm sorry, Harvey?
Harvey's recused.
Harvey's, yeah.
Vice Mayor, Brownstone?
Yeah, you know, I think most of the questions have been answered. I think that. You know, I heard a lot of questions about trusting, trusting the county, et cetera. And I found that somewhat disturbing. I mean. I feel that, you know, from all my interactions over the last week. You know, we're working with people of goodwill. Don, Mike, Ken, others. Who want to see this successful. The county knows that Half Moon Bay is one of the jewels of San Mateo County. In terms of our tourist industry, et cetera, they don't want to see anything fail. And if they do see, see something that isn't working out. I trust the people I'm speaking with here, that they will. Either want to fix it or, you know, make a change of direction. So I, I trust that 100%. And. You know, some people said something about this is just a Band-Aid. And I don't know, my experience with Band-Aids is they do allow you to heal. Especially if you combine it with three square meals a day and a roof over your head and a full night's sleep. Without that, nothing is going to get better. So I found that metaphor actually worked for me, yeah, it's a, it's a good Band-Aid combined with a lot of other really good stuff. And, and frankly, it's the county folks sitting before us right now. Who said, yeah, let's have some memorandums of understanding. It wasn't like we insisted on it, they suggested it. So we all understand, you know, what we're getting from each other. And frankly, it's the county that suggested, you know, we really would like you to have an advisory board to work with us. On. The operational oversight. So every conversation I've had, you know, it, it feels like a partnership. And, you know, back to something that a Virginia tourism said earlier, you know, there's no perfect solution. And, you know, this is a chance to be a model community, working on some model solutions. And to problems that, you know, are tough. But I feel generally this is a community that. You know, really. Does reach out to help each other. And I know a lot of this caught folks by surprise, caught us by surprise. But. I'm trusting that it is an opportunity. And we're going to have some great resources and vendors. I've heard commitments to increase the capacity of our cosite clinics. To cover some off on our TOTs. Everything we've suggested, the county says, yeah, we can work with that. Every single idea we've put forward, the county says, yeah. You know, we can try and work with that and be flexible. So. You know, those are the kind of partners, and by the way, I'm a cynical New Yorker, I'm not naive. I'm not seeing these things out of rose-colored glass, rose-colored glasses, you know, I see what's in front of me and I hear what people say. And, you know, I can't go through life just simply not trusting people of goodwill and that's what I'm seeing here. So, wanted to say that.
Okay, very good, so, so to my questions, and these are kind of just yes, no questions, some of these at the start. And I'm just going to, some of these are from constituents that I, that I wrote down. And, you know, I think a memorandum of understanding, an MOU is, is a good way to go overall. So we can iron out as much of this stuff beforehand, so, you know. I really want the community to be able to trust the county on this one. And I feel like the more we spell it out, the better off everybody is. That's my personal opinion, but, so, let's, you know, so some of the things that I would like to be, have included in the memorandum of understanding. It's kind of like, will you commit 100% to zero tolerance of drug, alcohol abuse and housing convicted sex offenders? Yes or no? And I, I don't know if that's a hard question to answer, we read in your. In the, in, in the staff report that people may be excluded from the program. If they have drugs or alcohol or this and that, we're wondering, is there a zero tolerance towards that? And, or is that not recommended?
Yeah, I, I would say that the, the best approach is for us to select the vendor, I mean, to select the, the operator. And, and, and get to that philosophy and how hard, how black and white that is.
Okay.
But, but I think we can commit, given the location, that there's not going to be any convicted child molesters here.
Yeah, at least, at least that one. Yeah. Will you commit to the county reimbursing the city for five years of lost revenue from the tenant occupancy tax? I know you already talked about that you're going to be on that and all the various things. I'm just, you know, for me. As knowing the hotel industry the way I do, I know there's nights where we're, every hotel in the city sold out. And I know there's nights where there's not, I know there's months where there's higher occupancy, I know there's not, so. You know, kind of saying that we're going to get money. And it's going to be spread out through the hotels, I'm not necessarily like buying into that personally, knowing that. Occupancy flows and ebbs according to times of year and demand. And we don't always have demand in Half Moon Bay, so I'm not sure if that'll, if that'll be completely offset. So is a five-year commitment generally something that you guys are comfortable with?
I mean, I can, can certainly commit to some timeframe, I, I think that we need more time to, to look at that and really. Determine what that would be and what that cost would be and. And, and look at five years of the average TOT to see what that would be in the past. And given where we are right now, but I, I certainly committed, obviously it'll be up to the Board of Supervisors to approve it. That, that we will negotiate in good faith. With the, with the city of Half Moon Bay on the loss of TOT.
Okay, okay. And. Yeah, and that, this is a question from a constituent, will you commit to reimbursing the city for increased police and social service costs during the life of this project? Yes or no? And I mean, you've kind of already answered more or less that you will, but I'm just trying to get an answer on that one.
I, I think Supervisor Horsley indicated last time that if there was an increase in services. That we would, we would cover that, so.
We did, we did say that, yes.
Yeah, exactly, so these are all things I think that should be outlined in our memorandum, so everybody's. All, all, all in the same piece. And then. And then we're looking for again, for local vendors to have, you know. At least a shot at the RFP, if not. If not preference on top of it for both the food and any of the other nonprofit services that can be provided to help our local businesses. And our local nonprofits as well.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so those would be good things and then, you know, I keep getting this question, I don't know why, but people keep asking me. What do we do when people get sick? We have no hospital, you know, and the funny part is, I don't know what we do differently today about it. But I need to ask that question just to get it out there and make sure that people have that answer.
What do you do now?
Yeah, what do we do for? Yes, yeah, nothing, I guess, I guess the concern is, I, you know, I'm trying to read into this that maybe more people will be here. And then what do we do when people get sick? I, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I figure I need to ask it.
What do we do for ourselves or other, or other community members? Who might have, might not always have the resources, you know, to get to a hospital, we figure out ways to help them out. It's true for any of us living on the coast, isn't it?
I, I, I don't know, I don't go to a doctor. I'm too healthy.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, eventually that'll probably catch up to me.
Yeah, I, I would just say that programmatically, you know, we're going to be doing health assessments and working with. Local health clinic and, and other resources in the county to address the needs of the, of the. Of the residents of this program. I, I, I assume that there could be less health problems by addressing. You know, typically if you address health needs, you're going to spend, you're going to have less health interventions down the road. And again, if we're dealing with people here on the coast, I don't think it's going to generate more. Demand on the limited health services we have out here.
Yeah, and so, I mean, basically we have the health services already taking care of the homeless people. That come out and, you know, the hot team is more or less. We, we think that the proactive approach there will be what takes care, I mean, I think that's really the answer we're looking for. People don't understand that the hot team exists or anything like that.
We do have, we do have a street medical team that, that goes out to homeless encampments. But one of the things we would do with the facilities, we would want to get. Our, the people who are residents, they have to have them covered by Medicaut.
Yeah.
You know, and if, in that sense. It makes that more eligible for a variety of medical services that currently they don't have.
Brilliant, brilliant, so that would even provide the insurance that, that necessary to cover.
Yes, if they're not eligible for Medicaut, they would, we put them in a program called ACE, which is Access and Care for All. That the county does for everyone in San Mateo County, every, 96% of the people in San Mateo County have health insurance.
Right. You know, Adam, I had one more comment just for Mike and Don especially. You know, when it comes to helping us out with lost revenue for TOT. I think everyone on this council is also quite aware of the help that the county has given us. Especially during COVID. Other big projects where they've come in with helping us with. You know, long-term interest-free loans over the years. So, you know, I, I just want to say, we're not ungrateful and I recognize that there are in lieu ways. Of helping us out, even though it might not be directly handing out direct cash for lost TOT, that there's a lot of other ways the county has helped us out. And, but that the public might not be generally aware, you know, unless they really paid attention to our budgets. And certain debts that are put off for a while during COVID and things that are forgiven. So we are aware of that. Quite aware of that, so just wanted to know.
They've been great partners, you're, you're. Many options, many options. In terms of renovations for the facility, you know, and somebody mentioned this a little bit earlier, but it is not. So we are a tourist town and it is currently not the best looking of the facilities in the world as you, as you enter town. I'm still wondering if we're able to set aside money to be able to spruce the facility up and then going into almost a. Symbiotic relationship in terms of, you know, having some of the people that live there, you know, clean the facility, maybe do the gardening for the facility. Spruce it up a little bit, clean around the edges, like all the different ways, almost like how Eric de Bodes. Homeless people currently are working the beach and doing cleanup and, you know, getting that aspect of it. Is there a way to create almost like a symbiotic kind of helpful relationship? Because I don't, I don't really believe personally that people want things just for free, just as a handout. I think generally people want to participate in the services they're getting and I could be wrong about that. But it seems like the best way to do it is to create a way that people feel. But it seems like the best way to do it is to create a way that people feel invested in what they're getting. Um, I don't know if that makes, so like landscaping, you know, all the different aspects. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I definitely would concur from a, a, a psychosocial standpoint about you, you want people to invest in the housing. And if they're not able to invest monetarily, then, um, uh, uh, assisting in the upkeep of the landscape, uh, taking care of their own rooms, that, that'll become part of the program design. I think the, the other part of this is, is we'll be doing an assessment of the building uh, with, with our, our facilities, county facility staff. And we will also have to have, we, we're going to have to address the condition of the roof, the exterior paint, the, the basic, you know, plant aspects of the building so that we make sure we keep, have, have it budgeted to do the upkeep.
Yeah, because I'm almost trying to see if we could make it additive to Half Moon Bay as opposed to, uh, some people's vision of it being subtractive to Half Moon Bay. You know, it's like, let's, let, you know, if, if there's the possibility to do it that way, I don't know how the funding entirely works. Um, you know, but just, just kind of dealing with that. And then, I guess this goes into the programming and this is so minute, but you get into kind of like, you know, who's checking the rooms to make sure they're clean? What do we do with people's belongings? What if somebody gets unruly? Who, who's dealing with that? How are we dealing with it? What do we do to create the self-sustaining nature that I just talked about? Um, you know, and, and just those types of things. And that's maybe so micro that we get to it at some point. But there's so many people that want to see, myself included, like, kind of like the plan. So you feel, you know, so many people talked even in favor and they're kind of like, but we still have fears. It's like, how do we alleviate those fears with, with the, with the plan, basically? Uh, and then lastly, and then I'll, I'll leave my comments. What do we do about, you know, uh, a report out of how many people actually get placed in housing? And is it fair to say how many people are from Half Moon Bay that are in that facility versus how many people are from elsewhere in that facility? We have seen in our senior housing here in Half Moon Bay in particular, that a majority of the people in our senior housing are not from Half Moon Bay.
Okay. So let me, let me jump just quickly on that last part first. Uh, and I'm, I'm familiar with, with the housing that we're talking about. Um, when, when you have permanent housing, you have to follow fair housing law.
Interesting.
That, so you cannot, it's very difficult to target permanent housing to a specific community because fair housing law takes you the other direction. There's still little ways that you can nudge it, but, but that's the falling down there. In the case of a program, you don't have fair housing law.
Very good.
That's one of the benefits of having a program versus permanent housing. You can then fine tune how, how you want to enter people into the program, where they come from. And in terms of what you said about the report out, that's what we would be reporting out to the, um, uh, the provider would be reporting out both to the county and to the advisory board as to who, who entered the program, where did they come from, uh, what were their care plans? Uh, how successful were they? Where did they go? How many people were exited for behavioral problems? Where did they go? That would all be part of the, the operations.
Oh, excellent answer. Excellent answer. Thank you. Uh, very good. That, that kind of, and the minutia portion of what I asked, I think we can get to at some point and maybe in the FAQ, even of all the different pieces. Uh, but that, those are the general pieces that I have. And as long as those things can be satisfied, I think this can be, uh, a great win for the community.
And whoever was asking those detailed questions, let's get them on the advisory committee.
Yeah. You might not, you might not want them on there, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna put, Adam, we're gonna put you on the advisory committee.
Hey man, it's, you know.
Out of my mind.
I can't wait to participate.
Okay.
All right, good. Uh, well, at this point, what else do we need to do at this point? Um, I, I thought, at this point, I, I, I believe that we should, uh.
If I can just chime in, there, there is no necessary council action. You know, the recommendation was to receive the report. Of course, um, if the council wants to, um, take, you know, formal action, make a motion of, it, it could do so, but ultimately there is not, there is none required.
Yeah, I am okay with that. Is anybody?
I would just. I just want to say, um, that I am 100% in favor of this program. Um, many people put it more eloquently than I did. I had written up three or four pages that I was gonna read tonight, um, but I'm not going to. I don't need to. Uh, I'm excited about the program. I'm excited about the fact that we are now in a position where we are going to help our neighbors. Um, the people that live with us, the people that are Half Moon Bay residents that are most in need. And, um, I'd love to be on the advisory board. I think the advisory board doesn't necessarily need people like me, but I'd like to do it anyway. And besides, I'm going to be out of a job because I just said I was in favor of the program and nobody, those 2,000 people who signed that petition are never going to vote for me. So, I'm the job.
Oh, don't, don't be surprised if, uh, they will vote for you, but if you want to be on, you could be on.
Well, I, I thank you, Don, uh, Ken, Mike, and I'm the other person that you guys mentioned earlier. I don't know if they're still there that I'm missing. Uh, thank you. Um, I, I think you guys just, great report. Thank you for, uh, coming out twice, listening to our community, uh, and taking it all in. Um, I, I'm, I'm proud. Uh, and, you know, you, you didn't have to do it twi- twice. So I, I'm appreciative. Uh, because, uh, you know, it is a big deal to this community and, and we do need to get it right. And, you know, I, I feel like so many people have said throughout the evening, I, I, I do believe that if we can get this right, it's, it's a win. And if we, if we don't get it right, it, it could be not a win. And so it's really kind of, it's going to come down to, uh, to the details, uh, and all the different aspects involved. Um, and I hope that people have listened and have gained the trust of, uh, Ken, Mike and, and Don, uh, to pull us through this one, uh, and make sure that this is a success for, for this town and for the county. Uh, so, um, you know, if it goes through and if it's deemed to go that direction. Uh, so thank you for your time and effort and we appreciate it. That's all I got.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, Peggy Jensen.
Yes, thank you, Peggy.
Nice to see your face.
Yeah.
Good day.
Night.
Bye.
Bye. Now, at this point, I would love to just continue every other item on the agenda to the next meeting. I'm not sure where, where you guys stand. I'm done.
I'm fine.
Mayor, we have one short item. I promised it's short, but it is of an urgent nature. And, and I do recommend that the council here tonight, it has to do with our financing for the Stone Pine Property Acquisition. And it, this is a necessary step. So I would advise that we take it. And I'm looking at, uh, Mr. Chittister, uh, to make it short for you all.
Okay, let's do it.
All right. Well, I don't know if anybody believes that I can make anything short, but I will do my best.
Matthew, can I interrupt you for one moment? I just want to make sure that we can get Harvey back. Um.
Yes. Harvey.
If he's listening or if someone could text him.
I'll text him now.
Thank you.
And I'll start with some background, which, um, you guys have. I'll keep that brief as well, but hopefully that's enough time for, uh, Harvey to join us. Do, do you see the presentation? All right. Um, so everybody knows where 880 Stone Pine is located. It's on Highway 92, two on the eastern entrance to town. If you're coming from the east, uh, this is the property. It's proper, approximately 20 acres, um, of open space, formerly, um, agricultural land, nursery mans exchanged. Um, we use it currently as our corporation yard and, uh, we've talked a lot about what that is and why that's important. Um, it's, it's really a key asset for the city to have a corporation yard for, uh, general maintenance, the projects that we do, emergency preparedness, uh, in, in response. Uh, and so this is really a crucial facility for any, any city. And we currently are, are located there and have been there since, uh, 2004. So, um, we acquired this property in 2004 with financing, uh, support from Post, uh, when the city, uh, ran into the lawsuit and other financial difficulties due to the financial downturn, uh, earlier, uh, in the 2000s, uh, with the city had to default on that loan. And, uh, under the terms of the financing, Post took title to it. Uh, sorry, Post is Peninsula Open Space Trust. They own and manage, uh, open, and preserve open space land, uh, throughout the county, but especially here on the coast side. Um, they've allowed the city to utilize this as our corporation yard since that time. Uh, in 2018, they expressed, uh, their intent to sell the property um, and, uh, requested that we enter into a lease agreement until such time that they sold the property. And, uh, when we expressed our, uh, interest in acquiring it, they, uh, dealt exclusively with us over the last two years to negotiate, uh, purchase and sale agreement under, uh, terms that were, uh, acceptable to both ourselves and Post. We entered into that agreement earlier this year. Um, the original purchase and sale agreement contemplating, contemplated us acquiring the property and closing escrow, uh, in, in this, the fall of this year. Um, they've, uh, entered into several amendments with us to give us the time we need to line up our financing and finalize the transaction. Uh, the current closing date, based on the most recent amendment, is, uh, later this month. And we are working very hard with I-Bank, which is the California Infrastructure Bank. Uh, it's a state-run agency that, um, sells bonds and uses those funds to help support local projects throughout the state. Uh, they can offer very favorable terms to the city. And, uh, and so we've been working very hard with them over the last several months to acquire that financing. Uh, just as a reminder, the, um, purchase price that was agreed upon and was based on an appraisal, as we've talked about earlier this evening, um, was $2.18 million. Um, that's significantly less than what, um, the county, uh, the city originally paid for it and Post financed back in 2004. Uh, but, um, under mutual agreement on the use and the future use of the property, uh, we were able to come to agreement on that amount. Um, working with I-Bank, the proposed terms of the financing, uh, which, uh, your, your, your council agreed to allow us to apply for earlier this year, um, have been, uh, settled pending, uh, board approval from I-Bank. Um, the financing amount is $3.2 million. So that would cover the acquisition cost plus approximately a million dollars in, um, needed repairs, maintenance and upgrades to the facility, mostly around health, safety and security. Um, and, uh, you know, we're, we're hanging by a thread out there. And so this will help us, uh, establish a much better yard out there and work towards, uh, more permanent improvements in the future. The term, uh, d- duration of the term would be 30 years, uh, at an interest rate of two and a half percent. Uh, we've, we've looked at the private lending market. This is the best rate that we've been able to find. Uh, there is an origination fee of $32,000, which would be paid out of the financing proceeds. So no, uh, immediate outlay from the city for that. There's also an annual fee of, uh, 0.3% of the currently outstanding principal balance. So that number will decrease as we pay down the balance of the loan. Uh, the initial year is approximately $9,000. The annual approximate financing cost for, um, paying down this loan, uh, including the, uh, annual fee is approximately $160,000 per year. Um, there is, uh, initially, uh, we, we have to make those payments uh, before we can prepay or, or pay down this loan earlier than 30 years. And there's kind of a graduated, uh, decreasing cost to do that. And it's, at a certain point, uh, we could pay off this loan without any penalties. Um, I think about 10, 10 years early. Um, and those details can be provided once, uh, we've gone through the board meeting process with I-Bank. So the proposed schedule right now is that the I-Bank board meeting that, um, they're, uh, planning to consider our financing is on December 16th. Uh, with Post as a great partner, we've negotiated a closed date of December 18th, which gives us a few days after that board meeting to determine how we want to proceed. Um, the I-Bank, this, the board decision is, uh, pretty final. But after that decision, we do have to work out the, the loan agreement with the state. And, you know, there's some dynamics there that we're going to have to consider as we work that out. And so one of the things that's built into the current extension is we can pay an extra $25,000, uh, good faith deposit that would be applied towards the purchase price. And that would buy us another month to finalize the, the financing with, uh, I-Bank and get us to a point of, uh, complete assurance that that, um, financing will close and that we'll get that funding. Um, so we expect the, if we do that, the loan documentation will take, uh, a little bit longer than normal because of the holidays, but could be completed by mid to late January, uh, at which point, uh, we would close escrow with Post on January 15th of this year, of, of next year. Um, the key to all this is the I-Bank loan is a reimbursement. So we would need to close escrow using our cash on hand. And so to mitigate any risk associated with making that capital outlay, uh, we'd want to have everything worked out with I-Bank or as close as possible so that we would be assured that very quickly we could, uh, reimburse ourselves from those loan proceeds. Um, the expectation is that the, if, if we can work things out by mid-January, I-Bank would reimburse us by late January of next year. The initial improvements, which are already being planned, uh, would be constructed, um, likely during fiscal year 2021, 22 and be included in the CIP for next year. And then, um, reimbursement, uh, from I-Bank would actually, um, take place as we outlay capital for those improvements. And so any, any capital outlay would, uh, only be a short period of time before we can re- reimburse ourselves from loan proceeds. So what we're seeking is, uh, several pieces of authority here from you so that we can complete this transaction and, uh, finalize this project that we've been working on for several years and assure ourselves that we have a, a permanent, uh, corporation yard here at the city. So what we're seeking is, uh, adoption of a resolution related to this purchase. Um, authorizing first and foremost, um, the ability to make that $25,000 additional deposit to Post, uh, to extend the escrow period. Again, that's a mitigation of risk so that we can work things out with I-Bank before we make our, our final outlay of, uh, the $2.1 million, uh, needed to close the, close escrow. Um, authorize the use of up to $2.18 million in operating reserves to close escrow, uh, around January 15th. Uh, and then receipt of the financing proceeds based on the terms that I've shared with you tonight. And then authorizing, uh, Mr. Nisbet, the city manager, to take any required actions to complete the transaction, including accepting any non-substantial changes to the terms and conditions that we've shared tonight around the acquisition or the financing. So we're, we're, uh, aware of the need to protect our cash on hand. And we believe that this process we've laid out, um, allows us to make decisions along the way based on, um, best case information and, uh, working out as many of the details as possible before we finalize anything with Post. Happy to take any questions from you?
Yeah, I have a question, Matthew. Am I, um, you know, uh? So we close, we would need to use over $2 million of the operating reserves to close the escrow by January 15th. But the board, I-Bank board will make a decision in December. But are you saying that we don't receive reimbursement until a year later?
No, I'm sorry if that was unclear. Um, if, if, if the board approves the financing, uh, on December 16th, that all but assures us that we'll get the financing. Uh, but we do have to work with their staff to finalize a loan agreement document that we can sign and, and execute. Once that's executed and once we've made the capital outlay, uh, it's probably a matter of weeks before we start getting reimbursement. So the $2 million initial outlay, we would, um, ideally have back by the end of January of next year, uh, just a few weeks after we make that, um, payment into escrow to close the transaction with Post.
Say January, you mean January 2021?
Yeah, next year.
Got it. That's what threw me off because you said next year and I said, this is coming year.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we're still at 2020 for, you know, maybe till the end of this meeting and then.
Right. And we've run this by whoever needs to be run by to say that there's then therefore no risk as soon as I-Bank approves. There's no way this can screw up and we're stuck with having we shelled out over $2 million of our reserves. Is that right?
The, the idea behind this process is to have, uh, the, the. The, the idea behind this process is to have the, the Ts crossed and the Is dotted before. We ever actually put that remaining two million dollars into escrow to close us, you know, close the transaction.
All right.
Back to, back, can you just real quickly explain to me the cash on hand? I guess I'm gonna say problem that could be. That could come up with this. So I mean, basically, basically, we're gonna be depleting our reserves. And then we're gonna be reimbursed for it over time. But I mean, for temporarily, we're gonna be pretty cash poor as a city.
Well, and the key is if, if we can get the, the documentation lined up before we actually make the purchase. There's probably a, a two week to month long period before we get the reimbursement of all of that cash. And working with our finance staff, and I know they're on the, on the call tonight and can provide any additional details. We have the ability to, with our cash on hand and our cash flow, continue to operate and not have any issues. For a time before we would need that reimbursement. So being able to get it within two weeks to a month is, is plenty of time. To make that happen without causing any financial issues to the city.
Yeah. And there's no way that could be extended?
Again, I, that's something we would work out in the loan documentation before we actually outlay the cash for the, for the close of escrow.
Okay. Cause I mean, based on my projections of where we're gonna be like, and then taking that out, we're gonna be pretty close to zero.
If I may, we made the quarterly report, financial report last time, and my recollection, Ken, Ken or Lisa can jump in. Our reserves are at fifty percent and, and on top of that, we have an additional, I think it was two point three million. So I think it totaled around, and that's unaudited and our audit's being done right now and it'd be completed by the end of the year. But I think that totaled just around seven million. So this is, is maybe thirty percent of, of those reserves that we have as, as of this moment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's gonna happen in January twenty twenty one, though?
Yeah, that's a month, two, a month and a half. Yes, we're talking about this being finalized in the next two months. There is another piece, which is the, the improvements. There's another million dollars for improvements. And that'll be done over the next fiscal year. But again, it's not like we would spend a million dollars at one time on improvements and then have to get reimbursement for that. It'll be piecemeal. It'll be. Security fencing for the property and, you know, a certain dollar amount for that. Building improvements to secure our vehicles and protect them, those types of things. And so there, there will be piecemeal work done over time. And we can immediately seek reimbursement as soon as we outlay the cash for those improvements.
That seems like it all works. Yeah, no worries. Yep. Just need to get it through.
I just wanted to confirm with the city manager Bob. With his statements that financially in this cash flow, she's not a particular problem.
Doesn't seem like it's a problem. Good. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I, yeah, yeah. Very good.
Well, I, I think that there's a key question there or a statement there. If anything changes over the next month as we're working with I Bank, we will come back to you to, to discuss and develop a new plan if needed. We, we will not make any, any big steps here outside of what we've discussed tonight without consulting with you.
Yeah, no, it seems like she'll be fine. Okay. Any other questions from council? Make a motion? Robert?
Sure. I move that we adopt a resolution in relation to the acquisition of.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Was there any public comment on this?
Oh, good point.
One hand raised.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Oh, thanks, Adam.
Hi.
Did you wish to speak on this item?
Definitely do. I just want to tell you that I'm not sure about how I Bank does things, but. If they have underwriters, which you do on a normal loan. Then sometimes at the very ultimate last minute, they, they discover something. Now I heard, I don't know if it's true, but it was sun, some posting somewhere that you guys missed your payment on the library. So if that's true, they may not know that yet, but they will discover it if, when it goes to final underwriting. That's the last time they look everything over. And it's usually the way I call it, some guy with really thick coke. Coke bottle glasses that sits in the corner, doesn't even own property and he, he's got the power to turn down your loan. And that's his job is to underwrite and make sure everything, all the Is are dotted and the Ts are crossed. So I don't know. I mean, it's.
Sid, Sid, I'm glad you asked.
Really risky for you guys to be putting money out before you.
Sid, I'm glad you asked. Yes, that's misinformation.
Okay.
We did not default on any library payment.
Okay.
Had a agreement, you know, with the county. You know, we asked if we could. Make a payment a year later due to COVID and stuff. We didn't even have to just like, you know, just to keep every penny in our, in, in, in our laps.
Like I said, I didn't hear that it was true. I just heard the rumor.
No, no, I think it was a good question. No, I saw that same comment somewhere and I had to. Control myself not to respond publicly.
I don't know who put it out there, but it's out there.
No, no, I know. I, I saw that comment. I think it was either on a newspaper article that one person keeps mentioning that we defaulted on the library loan.
And that's. Well, if they saw, if you had, or if you'd even had to ask forgiveness to pay it later, they might find that out and they may just say no. So that, that means that you may have either delayed your escrow. And then you are putting your reserves at risk if you're tight. I don't know. Maybe it sounded like you're not so tight, but Adam seemed to think you were. But I'm just saying, I just had the whole thing happen to me where the buyer didn't even tell me they missed a payment on some little tiny loan. And now it, their whole, there's, we had to go back and get a, a not as. Stabbery of a loan rate for them and everything. So and it still hasn't closed. It was supposed to close in October. So because banks are busy this time of year, you know, we're waiting and holding our breath. But I'm just saying, these things happen a lot in the traditional real estate market. It may not be true with I Bank. But I don't know how they work. So I just wanted to put that out there to give you a little bit of a warning. You know, it sounds like you have to put money out before you really get them loaned. So. Another thing they often do is check your reserves to see if you've made any big, big purchases lately. If suddenly your reserves drop by two point one million dollars, they might say, whoa, what happened here? So I'm just telling you that I, it's up to you. It's your guys' money, but.
Jacuzzi and City Hall, no major expenses, I think.
Right. Yeah, it's the super duper deluxe corporation yard of twenty acres. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll butt out now. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
If I could actually just jump into, just. Sorry, this is Brian here. Yeah, I just, a, a lot of this, the discussion that we've had. In regards to the, the way we're doing the loan, putting out some of the, the capital as well. All of that's been done with discussion with I Bank directly. So we've been completely transparent in that process. And so they're completely aware of, of the methods that we're looking to. Pay for the loan, the timing, all of that. And so it's really been a collaborative effort with them. And, you know, so there, there shouldn't be really any surprises on this one.
Good, good. Yeah. My, my concern more, and then we'll get to Virginia is, you know, when we went through the budget for twenty, for this year, which, and, you know, fiscal year. We ramped up, we expected there to be more T O T. You know, we took it down early and then we expected at this point for it to be coming back was the way we did it. So. You know, I, I'm assuming that we're gonna come out of the summer hot still with money. And then we're gonna go into a, a, a more severe protracted time period than we expected. As we hit what would be the third quarter and fourth quarter of our budget, the next two quarters coming up. Cause I, I, you know, I think we're going into another lockdown. Go ahead, Virginia.
Sorry, have to unmute. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I, I agree with the, with the last speaker. I think, you know, the danger that you run. I, I don't know if I read it in the Half Moon Bay Review or somebody mentioned it again today with respect to the default on the library loan. And, and typically, you know, with these loans. You know, there's always an individual or a group that is independent and looks at things very differently and, and very. You know, as she mentioned, you know, with kind of dark, you know, thick glasses sitting in a room. And so it's not as rational as you would think. And you're dealing with the front end, I would consider more salespeople. And on the back end are the due diligence people. And those two groups are not necessarily. You know, copacetic or aligned with each other. They're independent. And so you do run the risk when there are rumors out there, wherever they may be. As well as, I just think it would be very dangerous to put any money, any cash out if you're not certain of getting a loan. Not, not to the order of magnitude of two point two million dollars. You know, you might have to back out of the deal somehow if possible, or you certainly should get an extension. Of a month before you pay any proceeds to them. You, you know, look, I mean, I mentioned. You know, I, I think, you know, nine months ago that, you know, we weren't fast enough on the trigger to, it's kind of wind down some costs. And I thought that the budget estimates were, were too high, that these things generally take a lot longer than you think. In terms of, you know, a return to normalcy. And, you know, the way I look at it, I don't think a vaccine is gonna be in the hands of most of us until. You know, they say now the summer of next year, which I always extend three to six months. So I, I think you need to be taking a very hard look at cash outflow when you don't have cash inflow overall. It's, it's never as good as you think. And, you know, you don't want to ever get in a situation where you deplete the reserves.
No, that's definitely true. No, thank you for that. And I trust, I trust Matthew will bring it back to us if anything changes. I think he's doing a great job with this. So. Go ahead, next speaker.
V Sopnet? Yes, this is Virginia Sopnet. I'm just curious, as I was listening, has this property been appraised? Has it valued already?
Yes.
Okay. And so this is just a delay in providing information to the underwriters? For the, for the funding from the bank so that you guys don't have to deplete the reserves or take a two point one million dollars from the reserves?
Matthew, you want to talk to, I don't think there's any.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I follow the question completely, but to, to all the speakers' points. The schedule that we've laid out, it was anticipating exactly what they're speaking to. I think they're exactly right. And, and we, we've laid out this process to mitigate the risk, to have the underwriters approve and sign all the documentation. Before we actually put the cash out. And then we, all, all we're seeking is reimbursement on a, on a financing that's already been signed off. So, so yeah, that's the whole point. We, ultimately, we have to pay cash to Post to close escrow. And so our, our goal for all of this is to have everything finalized with I Bank before that happens. So that once we make that payment into escrow, now all we're doing is seeking reimbursement on, on an approved loan.
Yeah, yeah. Cause it sounds like you're buying at cash right now and just refinancing basically. I'm a real estate agent too. So I was just trying to listen to see what you guys.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that, that's not what we're doing. Again, this, this is not a conventional commercial loan. This is, this I Bank is an agency of the state of California. So it's, it's a lot different. And as we've said, they have a board that meets monthly. They meet on December sixteenth. At that point, they either, they're, they're gonna approve the loan for the city. If they do not approve it, if some, God forbid, something happens and they do not approve it on December sixteenth. We, we, we will have not put up the two point one million dollars in cash. We then have the opportunity to come back to your council, go back to Post. Extend the escrow and look for different financing. We could then look for commercial financing if we wanted to. But this, this was a better deal because it's government financing. It's tax exempt financing.
No, it's the way to go. Let's move it forward. Thank you for all the work on it. My only concern with it, I think you guys are well, you're well ahead of where you're gonna need to be from a budgetary standpoint regardless. But it always makes me nervous when we're outlaying money and we're already bleeding money and using reserves as is. But I, I think we're gonna be well, well situated to easily make this happen. So let's do it. Back to it. I'm ready now. Sorry, Robert. Can we entertain a motion?
Yes, I move that. In relation to the acquisition of eight eighty Stone Pine Road from the Peninsula Open Space Trust for use as the city's corporation yard. That we authorize an additional deposit of twenty five thousand to Post if the city chooses to exercise an extension of the escrow period. B, the use of no more than two million one hundred eighty thousand dollars in operating reserves to close escrow on the acquisition. C, receipt of I Bank financing proceeds for reimbursement of expenses related to the acquisition. And potential improvements to the property. And D, authorizing the city manager to take any required actions to complete the transaction. Including accepting any non-substantive changes to the terms and conditions of the acquisition and financing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jessica, we kindly do the honors?
Councilmember Penrose? Councilmember Penrose?
I'm gonna say yes on her behalf.
I need her to say yes on her behalf. Deborah, you're muted.
Where are you, Deborah? Come on.
Is every on mute?
Can you give us a thumbs up, thumbs down? There we go.
Councilmember Reddick?
Hi.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I just unmuted.
Hey, there we go. Hey, great, great work on this one, Matthew. Thanks for making this happen. And thanks for making those two things happen in such concert to make sure we're, 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 we're making that. Making it work really well. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you also trailed, you might recall, you, at the very beginning of this meeting, which was a long time ago, you trailed item one E from the consent calendar.
Yeah, can we push it?
That to January, if you like, but I will just say that we have had a relationship with, with. With this vendor for IT services since two thousand. We get great value for them. And actually, the contract's going down by nine percent. So that really answers the speaker's questions that made the point of the value of the contract. If you want to continue it to January, we can certainly do that.
Well, I'll let. Figure out what they want to do with that. But I mean, from my perspective, did we do an RFP for?
No, we're continuing with the same vendor we've used.
Pre-existing contract.
Sorry, if I could just jump in real quick on this too. So we actually previously agreed, or there was a, a contract that was agreed upon. By council for actually for three years. And what we did actually this last year is we, we went back to Stepford and we decided to. Work with them to see if we could make some adjustments to that contract to create a better value. And so not only did it actually decrease for their services directly. But they actually also brought in additional services, both software and other services that we used to actually have to pay for in addition. And they would bill us for it. But now it's actually included in that cost, in that contract cost. So it's, it's a pretty substantial additional value.
Are you comfortable if I move that we, at this point, then approve it as part of the consent calendar?
Sounds like that's what, that's what, that's what staff wants, very much so. So, I mean, and I'm, I'm okay with it. I just. I do, you know, yeah.
I do think it's good periodically that we issue RFPs. You know?
And, and once the contract is up in two thousand twenty two, that is the plan. We are revisiting everything in admin services and, you know, looking at a lot of different areas in our department where we are going to be doing RFPs. For new contracts, but Stepford was, we entered into a three, three-year contract. So when that is up in two thousand twenty two, we more than we have talked about internally going out for bid.
All right. Well, I can support it. For now.
Let's do it. Make a motion, Robert. Let's go.
Oh, where the hell was it? Well, I move that pursuant to the consent calendar one E, we. We ask that. we ask that city manager pay the extra amount for the next two years. What was 189,000 or 129?
Robert, if I, I'll, I'll clarify the motion for you. It would be to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a revision to the three-year contract agreement with Stepford for fiscal years 2019 through 2022. Revisions would cover the remaining two years of the agreement, beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2022 for the continuation of information technology services at a cost of $180,180 for you.
Thank you, Jessica. I move that we adopt as slated by Jessica.
Second.
Councilmember Penrose? You muted yourself again.
Second.
Well, you have to vote.
She was dying. Yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Right. Beat the one o'clock.
We ended it at 1:00 a.m. It's quite an evening.
And 24 people are still here to the bitter end. Thank you. Thank you. Participating in democracy, participator democracy.
I appreciate 24 people. I think they just fell asleep and they just have their monitors on. Either way, this meeting, let's finish it. Let me just see what we have to do. Is there anything else we need to do to end it? It is commission updates. And we'll let that go. Future discussion items, city count of none. Oh, Deborah? Oh, okay.
He's just believing.
Adjournment. Your time.
On the 15th for the last meeting of the year.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.